Buddy, it is October 6th, Tuesday night, 6:00 PM. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council. If I get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Nierenheim. I don't think. Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember Grand.
Here.
Councilmember MD.
Here.
Mayor Brand.
Here. Thank you, Eleanor. Yeah, and there's the flag. So why don't we all rise and salute the flag and take a moment of silence? Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, thank you. So, first up, let's do this presentation with the Beach Cities Health District. It's a presentation of Safe in the South Bay COVID-19 Recovery Program. I believe Tom Backley is gonna do this for us, Joe or Christine?
Yeah, that's right. Tom Backley and his staff are on the call. This relates to an item that we will cover later in the agenda, but we thought, given the importance and the fact that it lent itself to being a presentation, that we would go first with that. So, Jaclyn and Tom?
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be with you tonight. We're just gonna give a quick update on some of the numbers and then we'll talk a little bit about our Safe in the South Bay program and how that affects Redondo Beach. So Jaclyn's gonna start off with some numbers.
Thank you, Tom, and good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be able to present some of this data that we've been tracking. And I'll present some of the graphs and charts and kick it back over to Tom, but I'll start with a situational update on where we are with COVID-19. So in the U.S., there are 211,000 deaths and 7.52 million cases in L.A. County. These numbers, the county numbers just came out about five minutes ago, so I was not able to update this slide, but there are an additional 990 cases and 30 deaths, bringing the total case count in L.A. County to 275,856 and the total death count to 6,681. This is some of the images that we keep and track on our dashboard, which you can find at bchd.org/covidnumbers, and it's updated daily. We see some of the trends here from the county, from the length of the pandemic, and as we experienced, obviously, this big spike in July and now a pretty steady decrease and stabilizing of new cases of about, close to about 1,000 a day. And thankfully, the death rate has, the reported deaths have also declined over time. And you'll see the number of cases we also track in the beach cities. So this should be familiar to you. This is the governor's blueprint for a safer economy, the different tiers in which the governor has laid out for our recovery. The county's fallen one of four tiers based on their new case rate and their positivity rate on their tests. And so long as the county can meet these metrics for the following, for the next tier for two consecutive weeks, they can move forward, and that dictates what can be opened at what percentage for indoor operations. So these numbers are updated every Tuesday, so these are new from today. So our adjusted daily new case rate in L.A. County, 7.4. Last week it was 7.3, so we did see a little bit of an increase. Positivity rate is 2.8%. Last week it was 2.9, I believe. And there's now a third metric for counties over, I believe it's 160,000 in population, where it's an equity metric. So this is a positivity rate for those most disadvantaged communities in the county, and so that's at 4.4%. And so in order to move to the next tier, both your positivity rate and your health equity metric, that positivity rate needs to fall within those tiers. And you see that, though, we have 2.8% around in the county as a whole and 4.4 for the most disadvantaged communities. We see a little bit of a disparity between those positivity rates, but both those numbers fall actually into tier three. So that equity metric is not necessarily holding us back from recovery. It's really just a daily adjusted case rate. So this is just a sample of some of the sectors and what can open when. As I said, we're still in the purple in tier one, and we'll continue to be until we can get that case rate down. But despite this, I think the county is still moving with some of the reopenings that are allowed in tier one that weren't available before. So just this week, card rooms were able to open outdoor operations at 25%. Playground, as we know, are now in the state available to reopen based on the city's discretion. Indoor malls open at 25% capacity. I think that goes into effect tomorrow. Nail salons are able to operate at 25% capacity indoors. And as you all know, the waiver program has also opened for schools for TK through second grade, so applications for that became available on Monday, where schools can apply for a waiver to be able to reopen those schools based on the reopening protocols and the cohorts that the county requires. So here's just another chart of how we are doing in the beach cities in the South Bay relative to the county as a whole. This is the cumulative cases per 100,000, so this is over time, the cumulative number of cases. The case rate here allows us to compare cities regardless of their size, population size. So you see the black line is L.A. County, and the South Bay is doing relatively better in terms of cumulative cases. You see orange is Inglewood, yellow is Hawthorne, so those numbers are still much higher, but the rest in the beach cities, Torrance and El Segundo, have remained much lower and pretty steady. So we have green is Hermosa, red is Manhattan, gray is Torrance, Redondo is in blue, just about at the same rate of El Segundo, which is in that purple color. So this is a more chaotic chart, but I also wanted to show just some of the other metrics that we are tracking on our dashboard. This is the daily new cases per 100,000 this past seven-day average. So this is the same metric that the state is using so that we can see how we're performing in the beach cities in the South Bay relative to the county. These numbers are not going to be exact just because the county and the state does some adjustments, and there's a seven-day lag, but I think it shows a nice picture of how we're tracking. And I think the story of this chart is that at the height and the peak of the pandemic in July, there was, the South Bay was still performing relatively well relative to the county, and now the rates in the beach cities in the South Bay have remained relatively low and stable, but we're seeing that close in the gaps between the county, the rest of the county and our beach cities in South Bay as a whole. So I think I'll turn it over to Tom now to talk about the rest of these slides.
Great. As you can see from my background, we're pushing flu shots. And so in talking with our chief medical advisor, William Kim, he's saying, you know, one of the best things you can do if you haven't gotten your flu shot is go ahead and do that. And so that's something that we're urging people to do through messaging, and then we're also collaborating with your staff on some community events regarding flu vaccines. So we just wanted to get the word out about shots, of course. Go with the next. The Safe in the South Bay program, we've talked a little bit about this. This started off with businesses where we worked with the Three Chambers, and then we had El Segundo and some other chambers come onboard. This was a way to really, obviously, get the word out about what was required for businesses to reopen, but also build consumer confidence. And so this was a page that we borrowed out of Blue Zones where we have the businesses take a pledge and pledge that they're gonna display the county guidelines at their business like is required. And if they do that, then we double-check that and then we give them the sticker that they can put on their window. We have, I think, over 150 businesses in the three beach cities that are participating in this program. And really a change from when we started to reopen in May, the county came out in May and saw that there was maybe 50% compliance. Our compliance is much better after the surge that we saw in July. And so we're getting the word out with the businesses, and they're participating. And so that got us thinking of, hey, is there a way where we can maybe expand this messaging of Safe in the South Bay beyond simply the businesses, but really have that be something that the community looks at. And so we're looking to expand that program, and that's what we'd like to talk to you about tonight. And so one thing that we've looked at and wanted to have you consider is whether there could be a city or mayor's pledge around, you know, wearing a mask. I know you all have adopted a resolution urging people to do that. This is an example of some mayors that got together in Orange County, and so we think this would be a great idea, if this was something that either the mayors or the city councils of the three cities would like to do. Basically, there would be a campaign that would have united messaging around wearing face coverings. Cities would take a Safe in the South Bay pledge, and that we would then promote a citizen pledge. Those would be the things that we would be looking to do as it relates to behavior. I think, as we all know, this is a kind of a rare occurrence that is impacted by the way in which we behave. It's not which way the wind's blowing with a fire or what's happening with a flood. This emergency is based upon people's behavior. And so we've done a lot of work around that with health and behavior and had a lot of success in the Blue Zones, and that concept of a pledge is something that we've had success with. And so that's something that we would like to try in the community and would like you all to consider that. I think you're gonna have an opportunity to discuss that tonight, or maybe ask for your staff to return in a couple of weeks with perhaps a resolution around taking a pledge or promoting a South Bay citizens' pledge, and be our hope that you consider that, along with your neighbors of Hermosa and Manhattan Beach. We're talking to them about that as well.
Okay. Some good ideas, Tom, and Mayor Redondo certainly participated in that. I like what you showed there and what they did. I'd seen that in the paper, so just to encourage people to wear masks. I got, I read in the news today, and it's important to get your flu shot. The mayor got his flu shot, didn't hurt, and I didn't have any reaction. And I was reading today that they had a mild flu season down the southern hemisphere, which is, flu season runs, I think, from, I don't know, March to October or something, or April to October, and they had a very mild season. And they said, because the record numbers of people got the flu vaccine, and of course, the COVID practices they're experiencing, and, you know, the experts are saying you do not want to have a bad flu season in conjunction with what's happening with COVID. It could be devastating, frankly. And personally, if you got the flu and you got COVID, or right after one or the other, you know, it makes survival much more difficult, and it's a much more difficult road. So it's really important to get your flu vaccine and hope that we, you can't always translate what happened in the southern hemisphere to the northern hemisphere, but it's an indicator, and that's what I've been reading and found very interesting, that they've already had a flu season during this COVID crisis. So, and I'll point out that on your chart, Redondo Beach has the lowest infection rate in the South Bay, regardless that we don't have mask ordinance or enforcing as in the other cities. So that was encouraging, and I'll also fill in that we had a disaster council meeting last week, and Dr. Marian Gachal was on, the Director of Emergency Services for L.A. County, I believe is her title, and she always gives wonderful updates on facts and figures and metrics. And we were in very good shape in the South Bay, as well as in discussions with the hospital CEOs. We were in very good shape. The first-time Torrance did not have anyone in their ICU with COVID. So, and they all said, now, don't get too excited. This is not over. We're coming into a cold time, and if you look around the country and around the world, frankly, the colder climes are seeing a resurgence in COVID. And here we are in the middle of an Indian summer. So we have to be cautious. We're doing well because of what we've been doing, and we have to continue to wear our masks, social distance, and, you know, practice proper hygiene and be careful. So, yeah, and now our president has it. Now our president has it, and they had a little spreader event introducing the new Supreme Court nominee. So that's a good example of how, you know, careful you have to be, even in an environment where everybody felt safe, of what happened. So let's just continue to be careful. And the other thing Dr. Gachal said was they're expecting to have a vaccine by the end of this year. They're hopeful that they will, which was more optimistic than I had heard. So, you know, we may have a vaccine and be able to get it distributed and be through this largely by, let's say, next spring, get back to normal. But until then, you know, we need to be careful and continue to encourage people. I mean, just look what's happening in Wisconsin. I can't believe it, the surges they're having in Wisconsin right now. Anyway, I've already talked a lot. Anybody else who wants to comment on this? Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, Councilmember MD.
Yes, hi. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. And one clarification, you mentioned about the schools being requested to open, but can we make sure we clarify and don't get Redondo too excited? It's gonna be a while before we're gonna get those waivers. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if I understood it, it was 30, 30 were gonna be approved a week, and they were gonna start with the schools with the highest free and reduced lunches at kids in there. And although Redondo, believe it or not, does have a high free and reduced lunch, it's not quite as high as a lot of the other schools. And so we just, parents, just be a little cautious when you hear that. It's gonna be a while before Redondo's gonna be allowed to open, correct?
Yes, all that is correct. And in addition, the county is, you know, after those applications do get processed, there's still a little bit of a waiting period just for the county to review, and also need to confer with the state. So you're right that those, it's 30 per week, and they're prioritizing those more vulnerable populations because those populations have had, are probably less able to successfully do distance learning and have the resources to do that than others. That was the reason behind it.
And I love the idea that you're, the program that you're doing in order to build up the consumer confidence to get our people back to the levels that they were pre-COVID. That's a wonderful idea, and I'm definitely open to the mask up, to open up campaign. Perhaps could we work on getting JPGs that are good for both Instagram stories, Instagram posts, and Facebook and Twitter so that we make sure we get, well, Twitter wouldn't be the same, but to get them all out, just easily to share, just everybody share all that stuff. And Mayor, you're right, that Supreme Court event was a prime example how quickly it can spread, even though precautions are taken. So, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Okay, Councilmember Nierenheim.
You're on mute.
Doesn't show him on mute. Are you there, Nums?
Is that better?
Yeah, we hear you now.
Um, that's weird. All right. Thank you, Mayor Brand. Yeah, to the Beach Cities Health District, quick question regarding, I've got the Espinade in my district, and it's heavily trafficked by both residents and a lot of outsiders. So people that have to drive their car down to go down there and enjoy the area. Now, when I say outsiders, that could be somebody who lives two blocks or three blocks away, four blocks away, somebody who lives 10 miles away, 20 miles away. And so you get a lot of influence from outside of the direct residents that live there. Is there any thought, I mean, and Mayor Brand talked about a minute ago, Hermosa has a mask ordinance for the Pier Avenue area of Manhattan has, I believe it's citywide mask ordinance. Do you have any thoughts on, you know, providing volunteers or staff and handing out educational flyers and masks at, like, places like the Espinade, where there are somebody who are milling about, walking around? Do you have any thoughts on that, providing?
Well, I think anything we can do to get more people wearing masks, we would support that. So if that was something that the city wanted to do in partnership with us, we would be interested in having those discussions about distributing masks or working with people on messaging. We don't want to be the mask police, but we're willing to assist with getting the message out. That is something that we would be willing to discuss with the city if you were interested in that.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't have necessarily have to come from the city as a whole. I mean, maybe I'll have to reach out to you and get you guys, you have Kiki Desma, a beautiful group, you know, they're very active on the Espinade down there, and they got a lot of volunteers. And my point has always been education and handing out resources and supplies and making sure that everyone's there. I mean, people are very good with social distancing, but there is, are large crowds, especially around sunset times on the Espinade. It's a huge attractor from around the South Bay. So that, to me, is important and it's vital, especially for that area. So that's all I have, and I'll reach out to you guys and separately. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I watched Michael Osterholm, who's a pretty well-known epidemiologist, comment last night that that super-spreeder event at the White House, very likely the spread actually happened indoors at meetings, small meetings they had before the ceremony, not outdoors. So to that effect, I'm wondering, as the weather turns cooler, do we know if a lot of restaurants are still gonna have outdoor dining? Because a lot of places, for example, Eat at Joe's, other places, have set up tables outdoors. What's gonna happen December, January, when the weather is cool? People won't be as excited to eat outdoors. Have you heard anything, Tom or Jaclyn, about any of the restaurants, what they're planning on doing?
At the Health District, we sit on the Board of Directors of the Three Chambers for all three cities. I happen to be the representative or ad hoc representative for the Redondo Chamber. I think generally, businesses would like to extend that into the winter. I know that your staff is working with them on logistically how that would work and technically how that would work, because they weren't really built for that or built for the long haul. But I think there is an interest from businesses, and not sure with these numbers how quickly we're gonna see indoor opportunities open up.
Maybe tents and heat lamps and things like that outdoors rather than just folding shop, right?
Yeah, I think tents, you know, that would be something that we'd have to think about as far as, because that may enclose, you know, that may be considered an enclosed space by the county, but I think it's something to be thinking about, obviously, and I know that the businesses are interested in continuing if possible.
Well, one of the good things is I know that some of the county has opened up some of the microbreweries, which, you know, while we've been very cautious, they have pretty much, a lot of them have the same setup that restaurants do that serve food and, and they serve alcohol, but they were prohibited because they didn't have a permanent kitchen. So I know that some of our businesses in town have been really hurt by that in the neighboring cities. So, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember MD, did you mean to have your hand back up? You're muted. You did. You're muted. I guess that means you didn't mean to have your hand back up. Okay, thank you. Great, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Jaclyn. Really appreciate that information.
Thank you.
See you later on.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have someone from the public that would like to speak on this item.
Oh, great, go ahead.
Okay, and just to remind the public, if you would like to speak, just raise your hand. If you're on a computer, if you're on phone, star nine, and you have three minutes to speak for each agenda section. There we go. Okay, so we have Zane Obaji Jr.
Hi, Zane Obaji here. Quick comment on the flu shots. L.A. County is providing free flu shots. The closest ones to Redondo Beach, October 14th at the Angelo Acubian Library in Lakewood from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and October 21st at the Culver City Julian Library from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. Anybody who is six months or older can get these free flu shots. They just ask that you stay, obviously, six feet away from one another, and you wear a mask. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah, well, that's good to know for some, I'm sure, get a free one. It's a bit of a drive, though. Okay, anything else, Eleanor?
That's it, and then no ecomments. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Again, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Jaclyn. I guess we'll just go to council announcements. Councilmember Nierenheim, do you have any announcements?
I do. I do. I got a couple here. First of all, as everyone's probably noticed, I think we're all wearing t-shirts tonight with our pink badges on here, Breast Cancer Awareness for the Month, and it's very special, near and dear to my heart. I've had very close relatives pass away from breast cancer, so bringing this out to the public and getting awareness is very important. My family's been afflicted by this as well. So, you know, we all want to show our support and get the fundraising, get the money out there. And that's really what it's about for the research and development of cancers or cures and preventing it from happening. So that's the first thing. And I want to thank the firefighters, actually, for providing the shirts. Huge, huge plus for them. It's big kudos when they do things like this for the community and for ourselves. And it's really awesome to see them involved on a deep level to the community. So really, really cool. Thank you, guys, out there. And real quick, I've got my community meeting this Saturday, same place, Alta Vista Park, 9:30 a.m. Social distancing in full effect. I've had it the last two months, it's been great. We had about 20 people there. Bring your own chairs. We've got some water to give out if you need it. It worked really well. I'm gonna have a online meeting as well, probably next week, probably next week, Wednesday or around, but I'll send out an invitation for that. I want to be able to do both for everyone that feels comfortable in either environment, because both environments provide different platforms, be able to speak freely and openly, honestly, and I want to be able to give that to everyone. The last thing I want to give out is a big thanks to this council for voting and approving the letter to the L.A. County Supervisors to reopen the breweries, as Councilman Lowenstein was just talking about, because the supervisors voted 3-2. Not only has vote to open up the breweries, and three of our districts, 1, 2, and 4, or 5, excuse me, 5, 4, 4, right on the border there, gets King Harbor Brewing. And tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., we're gonna have a ribbon cutting in the Riviera Village, and I want to invite everyone down for the reopening of the King Harbor Brewing down in Riviera Village. And it'll be cool. We got Supervisor Hans' office coming down. Jennifer Lamarck will be there, and there'll be a bunch of people. So it's the last business in the village to kind of really open up its doors and get things going again. So it's the last business in the village to kind of really open up its doors and get things going again. And it's just, it's really good to see. We have a great patio platform, garden dining out there, and it's really vibrant. A lot of work is happening behind the scenes with the staff. We'll be talking about that later tonight. Some stuff came through, and it really represents the community coming together. Now, really enjoying a huge benefit, kind of a silver lining, a lemonade out of the lemon that we're squeezing right now. So come on down tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m. to King Harbor Brewing for the ribbon cutting ceremony, the grand opening. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Longstein.
Uh, no, thank you. I have none.
Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, a community meeting will be next Thursday. I believe that's October 15th. We'll be doing it virtually again, and our conversation and topic is going to be reimagining North Redondo. We'll be talking about what it would mean to take down Edison power lines, what it would mean to create more linear parks on streets, municipal broadband, just what can we do in the next 20 to 30 years to actually change how North Redondo functions and looks as it does right now? That's it.
Great. Councilmember Grant.
Hello, everyone. I have my community meeting this Saturday, 9:00 to 10:30. I'll be sending out invites and the whole Zoom virtual environment. And topics will be pretty much the same that we talked about before, but it's mostly the homelessness issue, North Redondo, some of the plans that are going on, Galleria, and a couple of other cool things that are going on, including what we're going to be talking about is the aviation and Arquesia corridor. Second is we need serious, serious, big kudos for Joy Abicen and her, and Mike Webb. I got to see Joy in her natural habitat. She was in court and she was helping to enforce and/or do a couple of things with regards to an illegal cannabis church in my district. And she has been working with the residents to be able to mitigate this as well as put in things to help. And we're looking to get this shut down. But she's doing a fantastic job as far as behind the scenes, as well as getting a number of the resources. Mike Webb, his team, and Joy Abicen in particular have been doing a fantastic job. And we're making progress. And so we're in North Redondo, and thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to watch you all work. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Grant. Councilmember Mandy.
To piggyback on Nils' comment about the board of supervisors meeting, they also voted in that exact same meeting to do a notice of the public to purchase eight motels. They're going to be purchasing eight motels, and two of them were in Compton and one of them in Harbor City. And as you know, Project Room Key, one of the concerns was that the Lomita site was closing. And so that's a good news item. They plan on going forward with that, possibly with the public hearing on October 24th, I believe it is. And so that's something to be watching for as well. And to piggyback, October, as I said, is Breast Cancer Awareness. So make sure that if you're 40 or over to go get your screening. Because the sooner they find it, the more likely they'll be able to treat it. And the good news is that the Redondo Beach Fire Association will donate 100% to the cancer support community of Redondo Beach. Their motto is basically to empower people with knowledge, strengthened by action, and sustained by community so that no one faces cancer alone. So if you want to buy it, you just use the Cash App, which is like the competitor Venmo Cash App, and it's at Fire Station Number Two. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and thank you. Thank you to everybody for wearing the shirts and showing unity on it.
It was Laura's idea. It worked. I found it for her. Found it. Proud of me.
I'm very proud of you.
I had it for two days, I'd already lost. Anyway. Speaking of the fire, I really want to take a special time to point out that most of you know this is the worst fire season in California. Four million acres have burned around the state. And we're being deployed. Our fire department's being deployed all throughout. It's a rigorous deployment. They're gone for 14 days. And while they're gone, we got to fill our holes with overtime in Area G. One group just came back, another group just went back out in the creek fire. So I want to give a huge, huge thank you to them. And a shout out to not only them, but to their families who are suffering and having to deal with, you know, their loved ones being gone for a long time or having to work unexpected overtime. You know, it really deserves a special thank you for our firefighters who are enduring something that really kind of we don't realize until we speak with them personally and they talk about the pressure they're under. And it doesn't seem to be letting up anytime soon. And yet they still find time to, you know, make t-shirts and get contributions to the cancer support community. So many thanks to the fire department and probably ought to do something special for them when this is all over. If the fire season ever is over, is there a season anymore? It just seems to go on all the time. So let's hope that there isn't end to this sooner rather than later. So anyway, with that, geez, guess we'll move on to the agenda. Next up, I guess we have our regular meeting of the community. Well, I see approval of order of agenda. Stipped right over that. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Longstein, second by Councilmember Narenheim. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Longstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mandy?
Aye.
Okay, now to our regular meeting of the Community Financing Authority. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Community Financing Order, Financing District. Roll call, please.
Member Narenheim?
Here.
Member Lowenstein?
Here.
Member Horvath?
Here.
Member Grant?
Here.
Member Mandy?
Here.
Chairman Brand?
Here. Thank you, Eleanor.
You're welcome.
First up, I guess, approval of order of agenda. Any objection to the order of agenda? Okay, so ordered. Any blue folder items for this?
No, Mayor, not for this item.
Okay, we have four items on the consent calendar. Again, this is for the Redondo Beach Community Financing Authority. Anyone can comment on any consent calendar items? Or any council member can pull in? Is there any public comments on this consent calendar?
No ecomments or Zoom comments.
Great. Anybody like to pull anything or anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Mandy, second by Councilmember Horvath. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Longstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mandy?
Aye.
Okay, you don't need to read anything, do you, Eleanor?
No, Mayor.
Okay, public participation on non-agenda items. Again, this is Redondo Beach Community Financing Authority. Are there any public comments under non-agenda items for this?
No comments, Mayor, for the record.
Okay, great. So at this point, we don't have any old or new business. Any referrals to staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Horvath, seconded by who?
It was a mishmash. Go with Councilmember Narenheim and Councilmember Grant.
Well, I heard you make the motion. We'll go with Councilmember Narenheim, seconded. And any objections to adjourning? Okay, so ordered. There you go. That's the end of our Community Financing Authority. So next up, we're back to regular city council movement. Can I do a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Narenheim?
Here.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Horvath?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Mandy?
Here.
Mayor Brand?
Here. Blue folder items. Eleanor, Vicki, you want to list those?
Yeah, I have those. H1, a correction to the Resolution Amendment Exhibit C. J1, public comments. L1, public comments, or, excuse me, a PowerPoint presentation. P3, articles and comments, public comments. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion to admit those to the record?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Another roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mandy?
Aye.
Okay, great. So next up is our consent calendar. Tonight, we have 15 items on the consent calendar. Happy to take comments on any item on the consent calendar from the public. Any member or a member of the public would like to pull it, certainly ask. And we're going to have a full discussion. Otherwise, we will pass the consent calendar as a whole. So I'll go through the council and see if anybody wants to pull any item. Councilmember Narenheim?
Uh, I do not have anything to pull. No.
Okay, Councilmember Lowenstein?
H10, please.
H10. Is that it?
That's it.
Councilmember Horvath?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
No, thank you.
And Councilmember Mandy?
No, thank you.
Okay, are there any public comments on the rest of the consent calendar?
I have nobody with their hand raised and... Second, and it looks like there are no ecomments.
Okay.
Any of them.
With that, I'm allowing to pay a motion to approve the consent calendar except for item H10.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Horvath, second by Councilmember Lowenstein. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Longstein? Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mandy?
Aye.
Okay, do you need to read some things there, Eleanor?
Yes, I need to read H11, Adopt By Title Only Resolution Number CC-20-073, a resolution of City Council, State of Redondo Beach, California, adopting the City of Redondo Beach's Conflict of Interest Code and repealing all other Conflict of Interest Codes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item H10, Councilmember Longstein, you pulled that?
I did, yeah. Thank you. Hi, Ted. Real briefly, can you talk a little bit about this in terms of what this relates to in terms of the Bicycle Plan A? But the reason I pulled it was I was expecting to see on the agenda either this week or sometime in October, a discussion on implementation of perhaps elements of the Bike Plan, because we did get a couple of letters today. And I know we asked, I asked about that a month or two ago. Is that on track as well too, related to this? So could you address either or both of those things?
Sure, I'll address the latter part first. And yes, you do have an item coming on the 20th of October, at which time we will be talking about the status of the implementation of the South Bay Bike Master Plan. That was actually taken to the Public Works Commission a couple of weeks ago at their meeting at the end of September. So we will be bringing that to you on October the 20th. To the first part of your question, this is really a continuation of a strategic plan objective, to continue the existing bike path, the North Redondo Bike Path, and make the connection between Philan and Inglewood, or Felton and Inglewood. We had, the council had actually set some monies aside in order to create or to initiate the studies on this. At the same time, we had applied for Measure M funding to actually do the extension of the bike path itself. We received those funding as the Metro Board approved the additional monies to come out of Measure M in August, at their board meeting in August. And those funds will become available to us partially this year, but predominantly in the year after. So now that we have funds available, we'd rather amend the contract with Hershen Associates to do a little bit more design elements themselves in order to complete that design and be able to do the implementation with the Measure M funds as they become available. The second part, we've articulated in the item itself, is the electrical component. We're going to be installing lighting along the new bike path as well. And that required some extensive electrical work or design work from Edison. And we have a $7,500 allocation for an electrical engineer to do those plans for the Edison Submittal.
Okay, so do any of these, obviously not this one, but any of the other allocations to the Bicycle Plan, do they have sunset dates that we have to complete this side? Because I know it's been since, what, 2011, '12, that timeframe?
Well, for this particular project, the Measure M funds have just begun with us.
Right.
The agreement has yet to be developed by the Metro staff. And that will have a three-year life to it. And then we can get extensions on an annual basis after that. But we're not in jeopardy of losing any of the funds related to this particular project.
Great. And we'll discuss that on the 20th. Okay, and then I'd like to make a motion to approve H10, please.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from the public?
No comments from Zoom. And I don't see any hands raised from the public.
Okay, great. There's a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath?
Aye.
Councilmember Grant?
Big aye.
And Councilmember Mandy?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. And you need to read that.
Yes, I do. Adopt by For Fis Foe and by Title Only Resolution Number CC-2010-070, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach, California, authorizing 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget modifications to appropriate $21,500 in available subdivision park trust funds to the Bicycle Transportation Plan Implementation Project, Job Number 40510. Also for H11, the resolution I read, that's as amended per the blue folder item. Thank you. For the break.
Thank you, Eleanor. Okay, moving right along. We are now at public participation on non-agenda items. This is the opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Three minutes to speak. Yeah.
Okay.
Great opportunity. Who do we have, Eleanor, wants to speak?
Okay, Zane Obaji Jr.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor. So I had a resident reach out to me just because he's seen I've gotten pretty active running to the editor and the like, expressing their concern about the study for a homeless shelter up in North Redondo. And the concern, and this resident was an attorney, he did the research on the constitutional limits on a city's ability to engage in anti-camping enforcement. And the concern is that you put a homeless shelter there and you attract homeless from across Los Angeles County because we're the only city in the South Bay doing it. And that alarmed me, and I looked into it a bit. And I realized you're just engaging in a study. And we will all, you know, always support a study of issues. And I know staff's going to do a diligent job. And I know that you, we are compassionate as a city, Redondo Beach, and that we want to ensure that we provide for our homeless especially. But there is also another way to enforce our anti-camping laws. And it's other than, it's not necessary to build a shelter in North Redondo and attract the homeless there. We can provide a space, follow the San Clemente model, to let a space where people can set up their tents and camp there as long as there's a restroom, water, hand washing stations, and then be able to enforce the anti-camping laws in other areas. So I hope that staff will look at those options, look at the San Clemente model, and not, you know, that the city council will very cautiously think about making Redondo the Mecca for Los Angeles County's homeless.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any more comments, Eleanor?
Yes, I have Sarah Kleenhaw?
Uh, yes. Hi. Hi, hi, Council. My name is Sarah Kleenhaw, and I'm a resident of Redondo Beach District Five. And I also wanted to comment on the recent pallet housing proposal. District Five, and I also wanted to comment on the recent pallet housing proposal, I know it's not on the agenda, but, um, I'm sure the city is still working hard on this project, so I just wanted to bring up a few points to the council. Um, I'm a volunteer with Streetwatch LA, and our organization has been doing outreach with unhoused folks in Redondo Beach. Uh, I want to say that I am fully supportive of Redondo Beach bringing temporary housing resources to our unhoused neighbors, and I think it is very much needed here. However, I am asking the council to prioritize care over criminalization when it comes to our unhoused neighbors. Um, you know, the strategy would include moving forward on the shelter proposal without the harsh, harsh enforcement of anti-camping, anti-loitering ordinances that serve to criminalize our unhoused neighbors when they really need resources and support. Um, I've heard from both city officials and unhoused folks that the relationship between the unhoused and the city is among the strongest in the area here, and I'm sure you all know that trust is crucial in getting people connected to services and into housing. So I'm just concerned that, um, you know, enforcing these ordinances will erode the trust that the community has already built between the unhoused and the housed people. Um, housing should be available for folks who want it, but there are many reasons someone might refuse housing, and those people still need to be treated with respect, dignity, and compassion. Um, additionally, I just wanted to bring up some immediate needs on behalf of the unhoused people around Veterans Park. Currently, they have limited access to showers and limited access to restrooms at night. Um, if the city could provide these resources, um, I think for the folks in that area, I think it would be a really great improvement to the hygiene of the unhoused people living in Veterans Park, as well as for the park in general. Um, that is my comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, those detailed comments.
Okay, uh, let's see, Ruben Molina.
Hi, my name is Ruben, um, I would like to, um, make a comment on, um, I wanted to, um, I'd like to mention as we move forward with the plan to provide pallet houses for the unhoused, that we consider the concerns and comments of the unhoused people in Redondo. Uh, since the pandemic, many unhoused individuals find it difficult to access these meetings online, and I'm here to express a few of their concerns, uh, near the Redondo Beach Pier. First off, many are grateful for the churches that provide food around the city, but find it extremely difficult not having restrooms in the late hours of the night. So can the city provide restrooms at all times of the day? Also, can, um, the city provide showers? In my opinion, these requests are not difficult and should be addressed immediately. Um, as, also, many unhoused that I spoke with seem optimistic with the city pallet shelter plan, but did not like the idea of being criminalized with city ordinance, and if they would to refute, if they would refuse, since some expressed negative experiences with shelters in the past. So as we move forward, we can, it, we need to consider the concerns of the unhoused, and must act on providing restrooms and sanitation stations till we decide how we move forward with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ruben.
Okay, I have, uh, Holly Osborne.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff, this is Holly, District Five. Um, I have recently become aware of two separate efforts dealing with RENA and local control, and RENA has to do with the housing allocations. The first effort is on the total RENA allocation for all of California. California is divided into subregions, and Redondo is in one of those regions called SCAG, and SCAG has six Southern California counties, I think you all know that. But there is a new report that just came out in September from the Embarcadero Institute, which has found errors in the way that the total housing need numbers were calculated. In part, this was due to some double counting. All of the California regions received allocations that were too high. These are detailed in the report that I sent to our planning department about two weeks ago. The bottom line is that the one-point-three-four-million RENA assigned to the SCAG area is too high by five-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand units. For the SCAG region, the counties most affected would be LA and Orange Counties, but all six counties in the region would have their allocations reduced if the correct RENA allocation number were used. And this effort was made known to me by my contacts in Orange County, and Orange County has already written a single appeal on the SCAG RENA total allocation, signed by mayors of thirty-four Orange County cities. So, as I said, I sent a copy of this to our planning department, and I would hope that Redondo could draft a similar letter, signed by all mayors of, maybe if just a subset of the LA County, the South Bay Cog, so we could do it in a manageable section, and that we, as a council, could be united in this effort. Okay, and this would be in addition to any errors in the data that the planning department is finding in the database concerning Redondo. Now, the second effort I want to talk about is a resolution that a council member in Torrance started, this resolution does not deal with numbers, is an objection to Sacramento trying to use a one-size-fits-all approach to micromanage each side city zoning, and SP eleven-twenty is an example of that. And I obtained one such resolution from Torrance, he happened to send me the Beverly Hills resolution as a template, and I would hope that Redondo would consider drafting and signing a similar document by the mayor. I sent that template to the mayor this afternoon. So whatever we decide, we should join our neighbors in uniting on one or both of these efforts and not sit passively back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Holly, that important information. Anything else?
Yes, we have, um, Mark Gaynor.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're loud and clear.
Great, uh, I'd also like to echo the calls to have our policy concerning the unhoused informed by principles of care rather than criminalization. A lot of the people who are unhoused, become unhoused for reasons entirely outside of their control, and a lot of them would very much like to, they understand the sort of concerns about, like, cleanliness, and I think that they'd be happy to oblige and work with the city in combating those issues if they have more easy access to restrooms, to hygiene stations, to waste disposal. I think also if we look at the way in which, like, other cities and countries have dealt with housing problems, like, for instance, Sweden has managed to, like, largely resolve any, have problems of homelessness by providing housing, and it's also had, like, widespread economic benefits, because when people are able to, like, find places where they can get a good night's sleep, where they can shelter well, they are also able to develop their abilities better, they're able to become productive members of society, and I think that if we could accomplish that, if we actually dedicated the resources to providing care for our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have some ecomments, I have the Chief Deputy City Clerk, um, Vicky Karrenberger, to read those, um, ecomments. Go ahead, Vicky.
Thank you, the first comment is submitted by Mark Robinson. Dear Redondo Beach Mayor and Council, I would like to bring your attention to issues pertaining to the hand-launched dock in King Harbor, Eastside Lagoon. This dock is currently used by rental companies and watercraft owners to launch crafts by hand. These primarily include kayaks and stand-up paddleboards, SUP, which have been very popular during the pandemic. The current actual dock usage poses hazards for all users of the dock. The primary issues are not with rental companies, who generally do a good job of keeping the dock clear of rental watercraft, allowing watercraft owners to launch and exit the water. However, the dock and areas immediately surrounding the dock are heavily utilized by swimmers who jump and dive off of the dock, as well as crowd and hold on to the dock from the water, preventing those wanting to launch watercraft or return them from the water to wait for space on and around the dock. The profess, the potential for boaters coming into contact with bathers utilizing the dock is very high and could result in significant bodily injury. The questions that I would like to pose to the council are the following. One, are loitering on and diving from the hand-launched dock currently permitted? Two, is it currently permitted to congregate in the water in the immediate vicinity of the dock, blocking access and to and from the dock by boaters? Three, if the answer is no to all or some of the above questions, is there adequate signage regarding proper and/or improper usage of the docks? Four, if these dock uses are improper, how can enforcement be achieved to protect, protect the swimming and boating public, and allow for reasonable access to the harbor and ocean by boaters? Thank you for your consideration, Mark Robinson, Redondo Beach resident. Second comment is submitted by Matthew Zarro. Dear Redondo Beach City Council, I am writing this comment as a resident of the South Bay and member of Streetwatch LA South Bay. I am writing in support of the proposed pallet housing project, as we support all forms of services that are useful to our unhoused neighbors. It is heartening to hear that Redondo Beach is stepping up as leaders in the South Bay and actually proposing housing solutions for the unhoused. We discourage the city from resuming any forms of criminalization of poverty or houselessness. People are complex and are sore their needs, unhoused people are no different. Not all services work for everyone. I personally know two unhoused people whose jobs make it so traditional shelters with their nighttime curfews are unusable for them. These pallet houses would un, will undoubtedly improve the lives of many people who are suffering in your city tonight, but this should not be seen as an excuse to resume the criminalization of unhoused people's existence, who they aren't helpful for. Please know there are many people in your community who care deeply about our unhoused neighbors, and who want to live in cities that help them with services and not sweep them away or criminalize their poverty. Next comment is submitted by Melanie Cohen. Please house our Redondo Beach homeless, we need to take, uh, we need to take, I'm sorry, I'm going to read that again, there's an extra word in there, we need to take of the most vulnerable of our population. Please listen to the groups talking to you this evening to do so in an appropriate manner. Thank you, we are only as strong as our most vulnerable. Fourth comment is submitted by Emily Mason. Dear councilmembers, please stand with the people of this city to defend equality under our constitution and reject State Measure Sixteen. State Measure Sixteen would amend our constitution and allow the state government to discriminate between Californians based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. Californians overwhelmingly reject State Measure Sixteen. A poll of seventeen-hundred-four California residents released on September sixteenth by the Public Policy Institute of California showed voters opposed to State Measure Sixteen by huge margins. Eighty percent of voters have decided how to vote, and sixty percent of voters who have decided are opposed to State Measure Sixteen. Californians in every area of the state reject State Measure Sixteen. In Los Angeles, fifty-three percent of voters who have decided how to vote are opposed to State Measure Sixteen. Please join us in defending Californians' unity and equality. Don't divide us, don't amend our constitution to allow the state government to discriminate between Californians based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. Signed, Emily Mason. You'll have just a moment to refresh, just to make sure I don't have any new, uh, new, um, speakers. Nope, that's it, sir, our ecomment is completed.
Uh, great, uh, on that voting, Eleanor, um, when's the last day to register to vote?
October nineteenth.
Okay, so everybody knows ballots are out, there's my ballot, I got my ballot, can you see that?
There it is.
Anyway.
There it goes.
Um, I received my ballot actually on Saturday, so, um, ballots are in the mail, everybody's getting one, there's ballot drop-off boxes in Riviera Village, as well as, um, the two libraries, so, um, you got some time, but it's a lot on it, so I just want to encourage everybody to, uh, make sure they get a ballot, and that they get out there and vote.
Do I need to? Okay, so the vote centers in Redondo, we have, um, they will, these will open on October thirtieth from ten AM to seven PM, and that's, um, in North Redondo, Perry Park and Aviation Gym, and then, uh, South Redondo, the Catalina Room, and, uh, the Portofino Hotel, and then on October twenty-fifth, the Riviera United Methodist Church, uh, we have the information on our website, and then also, they will all be open on Election Day from seven AM to eight PM, so you can actually physically vote there or turn in your, um, ballot.
Okay, great, thank you, Eleanor, for that. All right, um, any more public comments on non-agenda items?
No.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to our public hearing, item L one, to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to amend Title Ten, Chapter Two of our zoning of the municipal code and local coastal plan pertaining to accelerated dwelling units, better known as ADUs, in residential zones.
So Mayor, we need to do the ex parte communications first?
I'm sorry, that's correct, this is a public hearing, uh, let's do the ex parte communications, uh, first for, uh, item L one, so, um, or I guess we can, yeah, let's just do L one. Go ahead, Councilmember Narenheim.
I've had conversations with staff, I've had conversations, uh, with the public, uh, no one on council, uh, and I think I briefly said something, may have ran about it, but, uh, that's about it.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
On L one, uh, just the public, no staff, no other council members, nothing there.
Councilmember Horvath.
Uh, staff and, uh, and public when we originally discussed this, but not since.
Okay, Councilmember Grant.
Um, same as myself, um, this, uh, public, but not since our last, and I spoke with staff, uh, during that time as well.
Okay, Councilmember MD.
When ADUs first came up, I was pushing it out to the public, I talked to a few residents extensively with Holly Osborne, and, uh, but, um, and, uh, I don't think I talked anybody on council about it, definitely not about this public hearing.
Uh, this particular item, I had a brief conversation with, uh, Councilmember Narenheim about it. That's it, very brief. So with that, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Horvath, second by Councilmember Grant, and any objection to opening the public hearing? Okay, so ordered, um, Randy, you gonna do this presentation for us?
I sure will, I'm gonna share my screen, um, this is the same, uh, presentation document that was in the blue folder items. Uh, so can you see the screen okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you recall, we discussed the latest state legislation regarding accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, uh, briefly at the first city council meeting in January. The community development staff worked with the city attorney's office to have the ordinances prepared, um, and, but due to the limit, the limitations of the public input with virtual meetings due to COVID, uh, the review, uh, that was going to be scheduled with the Planning Commission in April was postponed until we could get a more robust option for public participation. Um, so those ordinances did go before the Planning Commission last month. And we'll go to the next slide, in, in twenty-nineteen, the state senate and assembly adopted several bills pertaining to housing and specifically to ADUs. The governor signed the bill into law in October of last year, and the new regulations became effective on January first of this year. On January tenth, uh, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, uh, provided a summary of changes in adopted legislation, uh, and what the adopted legislation was related to ADUs, um, which, those were included in your agenda packet. Since there were several bills that were adopted, uh, that revised the state regulations, it was important to evaluate the sequence of when those were signed into law, and that's why we were waiting for the HCD's, um, memo back in January, um, before we move forward. And once that summary was issued, the city attorney's office was able to gain further information, um, through HCD's, uh, attorneys and, um, different webinars that they held, uh, for the appropriate implementation of the regulations. Most specifically, the designation of streamlined ADUs versus non-streamlined ADUs, uh, was a part of, uh, what was adopted, and that distinction has been incorporated into the city's proposed ADU ordinances, and as well, I'll go through, um, you're gonna hear streamlined and non-streamlined quite a bit in my presentation today. The Planning Commission public hearing regarding these ordinances was held on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty, and the commission adopted resolutions recommending the adoption of the ADU ordinances. And if you recall, we have, um, both the inland ordinance and then our coastal ordinance, so that's why there are two ordinances. Uh, some of the basic key changes to the legislation include that cities must allow ADUs in all areas zoned to allow residential, including multifamily and mixed use. Junior ADUs must be allowed in certain streamlined condi, conditions, if you recall previously, that was optional. Uh, the minimum lot size requirements cannot be required by municipalities. Owner occupancy restrictions are not permitted, although that will sunset in twenty-twenty-five, so in twenty-twenty-five, um, the, the owner occupancy restrictions can be in place. We have in the ordinance, um, uh, language that, that brings that back and makes that effective in twenty-twenty-five, so we don't have to then come back and revise the ordinances. Jurisdictions may prohibit rentals of less than thirty days in all ADUs, so prohibiting that, um, Airbnb type of, um, rental. Setbacks, heights, unit sizes, and parking all vary based on whether they are streamlined or non-streamlined, um, so I'm gonna go through that. Um, there are four categories of streamlined ADUs. For reference, um, those four types of, of ADUs are in the California Government Code Section six-five-eight-five-two-point-two subsection E, so it's that subsection E that addresses all the streamlined. Uh, regardless of any other provisions, if a streamlined ADU meets those very basic required standards in that subsection E stated in the state regulations as being streamlined... stated in the state regulations as being streamlined, the city must approve the application and may not impose any other standards. Um, just for reference, the city did, so I'm gonna take a little step back and explain, um, what we had in place, what's in place now. Um, the city did adopt ADU ordinances in April of twenty nineteen. The inland ordinance became effective thirty days after adoption, so in mid-May of last year. Uh, as for the coastal zoning ordinance, um, technically the city adopts coastal zoning changes and then it's not effective until the Coastal Commission officially certifies it. The ADU coastal ordinance that was adopted in April was not certified by the Coastal Commission because by the time the Coastal Commission was going to hear those, um, the new bills had already been adopted and the, signed by the governor, um, and thus making our ordinances, uh, null and void. So, um, our ordinance is null and void, so, as of January first, twenty twenty. Uh, so the cities, um, the, the one issue is though that the city's codification consultant didn't realize that the Coastal Commission hadn't certified it and updated the municipal code. So, and I'm, I'm bringing that up just so that if you're looking at that coastal, um, ordinance, um, that's, uh, before you today, section three of that ordinance is just acknowledging that that code section was certified, is what is certified and needs to be rescinded. And sections four through eight of the ordinance are, uh, show the amendments to the code sections that had been codified. So it's really, um, it, it's the long way of saying that sections four through eight of the ordinance, of the, for the coastal ordinance reflects what is being proposed in the underlying strike-through, uh, version as the amendments. Um, and then in, um, in the inland, it's sections three and four. The proposed regulations that pertain to all ADUs fall under, um, the, what will be the Redondo Beach, uh, municipal code section ten dash two point one five oh six A. So that's for, um, regulations that would pertain to all ADUs. And then there's the streamlined ADUs, which would be that subsection B, and for non, non-streamlined is subsection C. So when you're looking at it, um, you'll understand that what, the, the first part is, is for all ADUs, then streamlined, then non-streamlined. And for, for streamlined, um, again, there are four streamlined categories. There are two streamlined categories that are for single family and two that are multifamily. Um, as I mentioned, uh, the streamlined ADU, if it meets the, all those basic requirements in the state regulations as being streamlined, the city must approve the application and cannot impose any additional standards. For the streamlined single family, we'll start with the first single family option, and this will be wholly within. So it's wholly within the existing single family structure. One ADU or JADU is allowed. Um, just to, to go, uh, explain a little bit more about junior ADUs because we didn't, um, adopt that last go-round. The junior ADU or JADU is defined in the draft ordinances based on the definition of the state regulations. A, a JADU shall mean a unit that is no more than five hundred square feet in size and is contained entirely within a single-family residence. A junior accessory dwelling unit may include separate sanitation facilities or it may share the sanitation facilities with existing structures. Um, the provision of the JADU is now a requirement, um, of the new state regulations in the streamlined, um, uh, section. The ADU or JADU is to be on a lot with an existing or proposed single-family residence. The ADU or JADU must be wholly within the existing proposed single, existing or proposed single-family residence or an existing attached accessory structure. Um, and that's attached, not detached. With an expansion of up to a hundred and fifty square feet, if the expansion is solely just for, uh, accommodating ingress and egress. Uh, it must have direct exterior access and side and rear yard setbacks, uh, must be sufficient for fire safety, but basically are gonna be within what the existing structure are. The, uh, no ADU size limit can be imposed, but again, it's within the existing single-family residence with only up to a hundred and fifty square feet for ingress egress. So if there was a thousand square foot single-family residence, um, they could choose to have the ADU as seven hundred square feet and the single-family is three hundred square feet because it's not gonna impact the exterior of the structure. The junior ADU limits, uh, uh, the junior ADU may have limits imposed. Um, the, the limits are the five hundred square foot maximum size. And again, remember the ju- junior ADU, um, can only be within that single-family, um, structure. Uh, a recorded deed restriction prohibiting separate sale, limiting size, allowing the rental of, um, only one of the units, uh, can be in place. And an owner occupancy requirement can be required for a JADU situation. Um, it can't for the ADU, but if it's a JADU, which is gonna be within the, um, the single-family structure, um, you can impose, and we put that in the, the draft ordinance for it to, um, require occupants, uh, owner occupancy of one of those units. So going on to the second streamlined category. This is, um, the other single-family, um, uh, streamlined, and it's for new detached, uh, structures. So one ADU is allowed. An ADU under this section may be combined with one JADU under that wholly within category. Um, and we, we don't get a choice. That is what the, the county is requiring. And, um, and let me just say, I'm, I'm the messenger, so I'm just sharing, um, what the requirements are. The one thing to note though is if there were those three units, the, the main structure, the JADU within, and the ADU, um, because the JADU would require that owner occupancy, at least there would be the requirement of owner occupancy, um, for, for either the main, you know, the main, uh, single-family dwelling or the JADU. It must be on a lot with, um, within existing, uh, or for the, the new detached, it must be on a lot with existing or proposed single-family residential. It must allow, um, we must allow thi- this type of ADU in residential or mixed-use zoning if there's a single-family residence on that site. Must, uh, it must be detached from the single-family residence, and it must be new construction. So conversion of an existing detached structure would constitute non-streamlined. But replacement of an existing detached, uh, accessory structure would fall under, um, this streamlined category. For this, uh, four-foot side, because it's new construction, four-foot side and rear yard setbacks would be required. Um, the maximum size that you can limit it to is eight hundred square feet. Um, there is a sixteen-foot height limit. Uh, we have in- included in their, uh, requirement of a five-foot minimum distance between structures for fire protection or otherwise meet the fire code. Again, we're not allowed to, um, do anything more than allow it to, uh, to meet the, the building codes, but we're trying to push for that five-foot, um, distance between structures. For, um, streamlined category number three, this is for multifamily. Um, and this is for the non-livable space conversion, uh, within the existing structure. So we must allow at least one ADU and up to twenty-five percent of the existing units in the multifamily dwelling unit. So, um, if there were, if there were twenty units, you have to allow up to five accessory dwelling units to, to be, um, uh, on that, that property. However, they have to be on a lot with an existing multifamily development. The ADUs are to be a conversion of non-livable space of the existing structure, which is storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways, attics, basements, and garages. But it must be wholly within the existing multifamily dwelling in it. It can't be a conversion, and, and it can only be a conversion of non-livable space. So it's not an add-on. It's gotta be within the, the structure. Uh, no ADU size limit can be imposed for this category, um, similar to that wholly within in the single-family streamline because it's within the existing structure. And then the fourth streamlined category is for multifamily new detached. Um, so not more than two detached ADUs are allowed for multifamily. It must be on a lot with existing multifamily. And it's, it must be detached from the multifamily, um, dwellings. It can be in combination or in addition to the conversion of the non-livable space streamlined ADUs that I just mentioned. So in that example I gave where there's, there could be five within this, uh, the non-livable space conversion, they could also then have another two, um, detached ADUs if there's the, the space on the site. With that, no ADU size limit can be imposed. However, we can, uh, we, we limit the, the side and rear yard setbacks of four feet and a sixteen-foot height limit. Again, we put a five-foot minimum distance between structures for fire protection or otherwise meet the fire code. And then for all streamlined, we'll go through, um, parking. The inland zone, in the inland zoning, the city cannot require parking for streamlined ADUs or JADUs, period. In the coastal zone, there's a possibility that one parking space per ADU or JADU provided on that same lot could be required. Um, we are proposing that, but just bear in mind, um, this has gone to Coastal Commission and HCD, and they have to agree to allow that parking. But you'll see in that coastal ordinance and, and the, the recitals up front that there's a lot explaining that access to the coast is very, very important. It's important to the Coastal Commission, to the city. So by requiring that parking space for the ADU, you're not now, um, depleting the resource that's on street. And then for, um, coastal development permits, currently a CDP is required. Similar to the ordinances that we, um, approved last year, um, a sea, uh, the coastal development permit in public hearing would, um, would not be required if it's, uh, an ADU with an existing, uh, single-family residence where it does not affect the major structural components of that structure. Um, and then in the cases where the ADU is not wholly within the existing single-family residence, um, we, uh, can, it, it's, it's, the public hearing is then wa- can be waived if it meets these requirements. It's got to meet the development standards for streamlined. Um, it has to have no potential, um, to adversely impact coastal resources. The project is consistent with our local coastal program. The ADU is not adverse, does not adversely affect, um, access to the coast, and the city does not receive a request for a public hearing. Um, so those are, uh, components in that street, for the streamlined section. So going to the non-streamlined, and bear with me, I just wanna make sure that you understand the, the distinctions be- between these. For the ADU applications that do not meet those standards for streamlining, those four different, um, types, the city can impose some standards such as parking, height setback, landscaping, architectural review, minimum size. But those standards still have limits per the, the state regulations. So what we have, have put into our ordinance is trying to, um, capture as mu- as much as we can standard-wise that the state code allows us to. Uh, the city is, um, proposing that non-streamlined standards apply to lots with existing or proposed single-family residential only. So not including multifamilies. So to get that multifamily ADU, you're gonna have to hit the streamlined conditions. Um, and then as well, um, we did not in- include junior ADUs within the non-streamlined, um, cases, uh, in the draft ordinances. As proposed for all non-streamlined ADUs, the ADUs are limited to single-family residential. Again, no minimum lot size can be imposed. The city cannot require owner occupancy of the ADU or main unit. Um, again, that sunsets in twenty twenty-five, so we have that in there. That, this will become effective again in twenty twenty-five. The ADU may be within, attached to or detached from the existing single-family residence. So you'd be talking about that conversion of a garage space or an addition onto the house to create the ADU. That's what, what, uh, those are examples of the non-streamlined. The city is proposing to, or the city's ordinances are proposing to limit it so that the ADU can only be on the lot with an existing or proposed single-family residential. Um, can require that, um, no existing ADU or JADU be located on the site already, um, which is what we've proposed. And the city can require the ADU to comply with building height, setback, site coverage, floor area ratio, building envelope, and payment of any applicable fees. Again, there are limits to those standards, so I'll go through what those dimensions are that we can put into place. For size, the maximums, um, that we can put in place would be, uh, an eight hundred fifty square foot, uh, limit for a studio or one-bedroom or a thousand square foot if it's greater than a one-bedroom. Currently, under the state regulations, an ADU, a non-streamlined ADU could go up to twelve hundred square feet. So here's that opportunity for the city regulations to be, um, slightly lower than the state's. Uh, as well, um, uh, we must still allow for efficiency units. So if somebody came in with a hundred and fifty square foot unit, we couldn't say that that's, um, too small. We can't have a, a minimum, um, size that's higher than a hundred and fifty. The height limit, sixteen-foot maximum height for detached can be imposed, but we can't go below that. Um, we can limit the detached ADU to a one-story for non-streamlined, and we put that in there. If you recall, in our ordinances that we adopted last year, we didn't wanna have above the garage in streamlined. Technically, if they were building a new garage and new ADU on top of it, they could do it, but it's gotta hit the sixteen-foot height limit. Here, we're just saying, just if it's non-streamlined, just having it one story, not having a, a second story over a garage. So, um, for entrances and setbacks, we can, we can restrict the attached ADUs to have direct exterior access. Um, we can restrict the attached ADU to gain access from, so this is the attached, that they have to gain access from the rear or side only. And then we can restrict ac- access for detached ADUs to be at least ten feet from the property line. So if you recall, if they can go, well, we'll get to the setbacks, but if they can go up to four feet from the property line, you don't want them going, you know, having, gaining access in that little strip of four feet, um, alongside, you wanna make sure that it's, it's further away from that property line to access the, the unit. So for setbacks, if they are replacing, um, if they're converting or replacing a structure, say a garage, and that garage doesn't have setbacks, you can't require additional setbacks. Um, but for new, uh, for new construction that may not meet the, um, streamlined, a four-foot minimum side or rear yard, um, setback is required. And if they were converting that garage and expanding on it, that expansion area then has to meet the, the four-foot setbacks. Um, and then here is where we can require the five-foot minimum distance between structures, regardless if they wanna put other fire protection measures into place. For parking, again, this is for the non-streamlined. In the coastal zone, there's a possibility that we could require one parking space per ADU provided on the same lot as that ADU, regardless of the waivers that are in the inland zoning, and I'll get to those waivers in a moment. We are proposing this. We put that into the ordinance. But again, the Coastal Commission and HCD must authorize that. Uh, the inland zone, one space can be required per ADU to be, be provided on the same lot. Unless, and these are all the waivers, um, the site is within half-mile of public transit, which per the definition of public transit in the state regulations is basically any bus stop. Um, so right there, that ends up, um, including most of our municipality except for maybe a handful of blocks. Um, and then there are the other waivers listed here, but let's just, you know, recognize that most of the, um, the city is going to fall within that and, and have a waiver for the, um, the parking spaces on inland. Parking can be in tandem or in the setbacks. The city must allow any configuration. That's not anything new. That was, um, what they had previously in the state regs. The city has, um, proposed a requirement of replacement spaces for garage or carport demolition or conversion in a coastal zone. And that the, uh, that, that replacement cannot be required in the inland zone. So again, this is gonna be subject to that Coastal Commission and HCD approval. And then similar coastal development permit, um, revisions. And And since our conflicting local provisions are rendered null and void, leaving the state regulations to govern, the city staff, um, prepared these ADU ordinances uh, that meet the state regulations and implement what local controls that, um, are allowed. The ordinances were forwarded to both the coastal commission and HCD on September third, and then again on September twenty-fourth. We have not received comments from either entity to date, although they are aware of the public hearing tonight. Um, if we do receive those comments and there are any required revisions, we would have to revise the ordinances and bring those amendments back to you. Um, on this slide are the procedures and recommendation, you know, the recommendation of, um, introducing and then adopting the resolution to forward it to coastal commission. Um, right now, just so you're aware, uh, what is in place? Because our ordinances null and void on January first is, um, the state regulations. So, you know, for example, that twelve hundred square foot, um, uh, you know, having two stories and, and, and such in the, the non streamlined um, are what's in effect right now. With that, I'll stop sharing and turn it over for any questions. I know that's a lot of information, but I wanted you to understand, uh, what the state has put in place.
Um, thank you, Brandy. That was a, a lot of detail there and, um, you followed it. I mean, in, in total, folks, this is what's going on in Sacramento. We had spent a lot of time developing our own ADU ordinance that allowed for ADUs. And, um, we spent a lot of time on it. We had a hearing about it, took a lot of comment, made a lot of, uh, compromises and changes. Um, and implemented it in ordinance and people began applying and, and such. And meanwhile, Sacramento was rewriting all the laws. It undid everything we did. Undid everything we did. And then now our planning staff has to go back and redo the, redo the ordinances. You saw the detail here, talked to the coastal commission, they got to engage in all this. And it's just a ridiculous overreach from Sacramento where they're now rezoning eh, the entire state from Sacramento. So you've got legislators from Yolo County, from, uh, Marin, from Imperial County, from you name it, deciding, uh, how we're going to develop our town. And, and that's ultimately because they blame the local control for the housing, uh, crisis quote unquote in California. So the way they're going to fix it, they're not providing any funding and there's no affordability requirements in any of this, is they're just going to take away our control. And this is a good example of it. And, uh, it's going to continue. Uh, we've been fighting SB eight two seven. Now we find out there's mistakes in eight two eight and there was SB fifty. Last year there were ten bills and we had to fight those. And next year there'll be ten more. And there'll probably be some amendment to this ADU ordinance. So, uh, it's ridiculous. And your state Senator Ben Allen needs to know that, uh, you don't approve of this. I think most residents do not approve of Sacramento uh, dictating, uh, where and how much development occurs in our town. And State Senator Ben Allen needs to hear from you as does State Assembly Member Almarad Sujie, because they're up there voting. So, uh, unfortunately, that's what's going on here. And, and you gotta love how they say there's no fiscal impact to any of these laws they're imparting. Yet here, uh, our planning staff is spending hours and hours and hours and hours of responding to a previous state requirement for ADUs. And now they've got a new requirement for ADUs. But somehow, uh, they don't see any fiscal impact to our staff hours and money out of our pockets to comply with it. So a couple of questions, uh, Brandy, how many more residents of Redondo Beach do you think these new state laws will allow to go up? I know that's a complicated question, but you know, you might, maybe you have some idea how many units.
Yeah, I, I think we see, um, we've, we've seen, you know, this year it's under the state regulations. We've seen, we'll probably see about twenty-five a year, um, of the accessory dwelling units. I don't, we haven't seen the multifamily really come through, but that doesn't mean that it won't. Um, you know, so if you're, if you're looking at, you know, an, an additional, it could, it, I mean, it's because one unit could be up to a thousand square feet, right? So, and it could be multi, uh, multi, um, bedrooms. So it can be more than one person living in one of these, uh, dwelling units. So you could be increasing an additional, you know, twenty-five to fifty people per year. And that's if we're just staying at the, you know, the status quo of, of applications that we're seeing come through. Um, I, you know, we've had a lot of inquiries and maybe, you know, those will start coming through as applications. Um, but I'd say last year we had more because a lot came in right before we adopted our ordinance. Um, but I'd say probably around that twenty-five to fifty, um, uh, population increase per year.
Um, the, um, allowance for multifamily units, uh, let's say there's six units in a multifamily area. And I think you said you could add two ADUs to that multifamily area, but a lot of those multifamily areas have CCNRs and they're condo complexes. So, uh, um, uh, what if it conflicts with the CCNRs?
Um, right. So they would have to, um, approve that, you know, as, as a condo association. Um, but right there with just a sixth unit, if they said, well, you know what, we want to have, you know, we've have this, uh, attack, you know, in, in part of one of the units or one of the areas, we have like this extra parking space nobody uses and we're going to convert that. So that's the one um, conversion of that internal space. And then if they have extra room on the site for two more, they may look at it as, hey, let's make this income for our condo association. I don't know how, you know, all that inner workings would be. But if they want, if they chose to, they could do, um, one internal unit and then two detached units in that.
What if they don't vote to allow any of this?
Well, they, if they chose not to, and that's probably where we're, we haven't seen a lot of that multifamily come in. Um, then yeah, if they're not, if they're not choosing to, if, if.
Doesn't, doesn't that conflict with the state law or that was not a requirement? That was just.
That was not anything in the state law requiring that.
Oh, okay. All right. I was misunderstanding. And do any of these new units, uh, account towards our arena numbers?
Um, they will, they will. Um, what, what we are doing, uh, is annually, we're doing a survey to find out what the, the rent levels are, to see if those are in that, like an affordable level. And once we have that established year over year, we'll have like what percentage of those can meet, say, you know, that we could have go towards, uh, you know, the affordable that we have available. Um, so yeah, it can go to, at least, you know, it will go towards the arena numbers. Um, and there may be a portion of them that can go towards the affordable.
So would the city have to determine whether or not the rent being charged at a ADU is affordable or not?
No, what, what, what we're doing is we're taking that survey and so, um, we're, we're saying, okay, of the, the units, this is the percentage of them that are in this, um, more affordable rent level. And then we're saying that's generally what we're expecting for our ADUs will be that this percentage is affordable and that this percentage is, uh, market rate.
So when we go to do our certified housing element, we'll be able to say, of course, they'll raise those numbers again too, but we'll be able to say that, um, uh, we're meeting that with these eight new ADU orders.
Yeah. And we have, like, that's why we're doing the survey is so we can justify the affordable. If we weren't doing that, we may not be able to count them towards affordable. We could count them towards the market rate, but by having that doing, you know, taking the initiative as a municipality, which we started last year, um, taking that initiative is going to help us so that we can justify, um, a portion being affordable.
Can we do it on existing ADUs as well?
We, we are, yeah. So what we're doing is the existing and then any additional. So that way we know what percentage is, and, and, you know, so in some cases it might be a family member. So they're not charging rent. So that can help us. Um, you know, really go towards that affordability.
So once you do this calculation, you're agreement, we may, uh, make progress on our affordable housing.
A little bit, yeah.
You and Matt.
That silver lining, the tiny silver lining of, of these regulations.
That's new to me. Okay. Well, thank you again for the presentation. Uh, Councilmember Grant.
And thank you. Wow, Brandy. Thank you to you and your team. That was, uh, quite a lot to digest, but, uh, thank you. It was very thorough. Um, I, I, two points that I wanted to make. And first, kind of what Mayor Brand was talking about was that if we have a multifamily unit or a multifamily location that's looking to do this, there has to be a desire for them to do that. And they have to be able to kind of come together and say, hey, we really want to do this. Like you said, it might be, they share the profits. It might be a, um, a little business that they put together or something like that. We're also talking about then is if a developer comes in and buys the entire property as is and kicks everybody out or does that and then wants to put in more units. So we're, is that kind of what we're talking about then?
Yeah, I think, um, I would say the bigger concern is going to be for any of those rental structures. Um, because, you know, that is where they, you know, they could say, well, you know, we're going to convert these parking spaces. You know, each unit had two parking spaces designated to it previously. We don't feel like we're going to need all of that. So we're going to, you know, transition these into ADUs. And they're not, um, if it's that conversion, actually for multifamily, whether it's conversion or detached, there's no, um, we can't have a maximum unit size. So they could make them whatever sizes. They could make them the size of what the, the, um, apartments are that are already there and call them an ADU.
Wow. So, so really the, the reality is we're going to get a little bit tighter here in our, our zone.
A little, the hard part is that streamlined. The streamlined is where, and that's why I, uh, we really look to put that, um, that restriction on the non streamlined to not be multifamily. Cause if you're going to do it as multifamily, you got to find a way to make it work with the streamlined.
Well, and so that, that's my second question that I have is, so if I'm doing this, which I live in a three and a lot, so I'm not really going to do that, but, uh, why would I not ever do a streamlined? It just sounds like it just, if you get it to conform, it just comes through.
Well, it depends because if, um, say you have a garage structure and you want to convert it, um, that's going to, that conversion of that, you know, you don't want to have to redo the, the, the foundation of it and the walls. You want to keep it. That conversion makes it non streamlined because it's not new construction. Um, you know, they, if they want to go size wise, more than eight hundred square feet on a, a detached new construction. Um, so they could still do that new construction and say, I want to go to the thousand square feet and put a two bedroom out here because I'm going to have, you know, my, my, my adult child and his family come and live here. Um, you know, that, that's another, so there's, that's, those are some of the reasons where it might fall under that, that, um, non streamlined is, you know, like what the extra that they're looking to get.
Well, thanks. That, that's all I had. But, uh, again, well done. Uh, great presentation.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Narenaut.
Thank you, Mayor Brad. Um, yeah, there's a lot here. Um, so, uh, real quick, I didn't see the minutes of the planning commission meeting in here. I take it because there hasn't been a kind of, kind of planning commission meeting number one, um, since they reviewed it. That's correct. Um, I caught some of what they had to say, but what was some of the things that they, what, what did they have to say? What, what did they concentrate on?
Um, I think probably some of this, the, the same just concern of this is the, you know, state mandating, uh, you know, taking away the local control. It was like that bigger picture, uh, I'm trying to think, Sean, do you, Paul, I got Sean Scully, our planning manager, and he was at that meeting. I, I think that was, you know, mainly just, you know, some of those basic questions, but, you know, not.
So that, that's fine. So, um, it, it seems like we're using a broad brush right now to paint the entire residential in Redondo R one, R two, or three, or four with this old ADU. And, uh, it seems like if you're in R two area, you're have, you have the same rules as an R one, correct?
It's, yeah. So it's any of the, any area where residential is allowed for the streamlined. So doesn't matter, you know, we didn't put the districts because the state doesn't allow you to like, oh, we can only do it in these districts. Um, we did do it for, it has to be a single family for that non streamlined. That's where we had the limit.
Good. And what I'm going, driving at is say in an R two, R three neighborhood, if someone has a current R one and they want to preserve that R one and they just wanted to have an ADU, um, you know, they're in a R three lot, hey, it's big, but, or, you know, wherever they're at, um, but they don't necessarily want to do a, um, uh, a second unit there, right? Um, but they're surrounded or maybe they, they and their neighbors want to keep, keep the conformity of where they're at. They just want to do a, uh, just a small backyard thing. Um, but that's a little bit outside of the scope of the current ADU orders that we have. Can we fine tune that for the R two, R three area?
Um, you can't for streamlined. The streamlined is that for.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the non streamlined version.
Um, for non, like here's, here's the concern is like, if you wanted to give them more flexibility, because they, this question was raised at the planning commission from, uh, um, uh, somebody from the public, not what the commissioners raised. The point is, uh, like they, the, the question was, could we have something that's, um, that's the ADU instead of, well, we can't put a deed restriction on the ADU. So the problem isn't necessarily what their intention is and what they might have is they keep it. But if they sell that lot, somebody else can come on that property and build that second unit and have the ADU that may have like more, um, leniency because you wanted to give it leniency.
So what, what you're saying is they'll be able to squeeze on R two lots. They'll be able to squeeze a second unit and an ADU. So essentially three units on an R two lot.
Yep.
Um, I mean, that was one of the things that was fought so hard over the last bill that we just, uh, stopped, which was SB, uh, I forgot what that was.
Eleven twenty.
Eleven twenty. Thank you, Mayor. Um, exactly. So, okay. So that's a concern there for that. Um.
By the way, we didn't win that. It passed the assembly and it's on its way back to the senate, which is why everybody needs to write Ben Allen and tell him to vote no when it comes back next year.
I like that. Um, so, okay. So currently our ADU ordinance is null and void, right?
Correct.
So we're essentially redoing this ADU ordinance from the beginning again.
Yeah, we have to make it comply with the state regulations.
Right. And then, uh, I, I definitely like having the parking onsite parking because it's a huge issue. Um, especially in the summer months and in the coastal zone. Um, what about, uh, so if there's, if there's current applications in or somebody not, or putting, about to put an application in, what's the process in terms of what they're allowed to do? When do they have to have something in place? Uh, I know we spoke about regarding a building permit, but I mean, being quite frank with you, Brandy, it, it's like, if somebody puts in an application and it could take them a year to get their building permit just because it takes so long to get back from our building department because there's so much happening in our building department right now. Um, that it just takes a long time and then going through all, not just building part, but it's public works and it's fire and everything else. The whole city is busy doing other things. So what, what do we, uh, getting a building permit is different than you're putting your final complete application in.
Yeah. So there's, there's two, two ans- two, I have two things that I can address with that. The first one is we did this evaluation last year when we were, um, looking to adopt our ordinances. And the concern was, well, what about the people who got their application in? And, um, now we're going to change the ordinance and they put all this money into it. So we, what we, what we determined or, or found was um, per law, uh, it's, um, vested at the time that the, the building permit is issued. Um, so we extended, um, we went an additional month before we actually adopted those ordinances. So we gave a little bit of that room for people to get their, um, if, if they needed to do a survey for their property or get their plans all together and get everything into, um, plan check. With this, uh, the second, uh, component, and I didn't go into these details because, um, in the presentation, it's in the, um, the ordinances themselves. Uh, and I believe in the staff report about the timing. So once there's a. So once there's a completed application, we have to move on, like, we have to move on that application in a short turnaround period. So it's, we have to respond on that. So they, they're going to know what they need to get to us. We are working with applicants. If it's in the coastal, it won't become effective. Our ordinance won't become effective until the coastal commission certifies it. That could be months from now, you know, so, or months from the adoption. For inland, it is something that's, that would become effective within 30 days of the adoption of the ordinance. And so that's, they'd have to have that permit. So anything that's in the application process right now, we have been letting them know this is what we're doing. But this is a little different than last year because we are, we had to be so in line with the state regulations. We didn't have like that wiggle room. It's really only in that non-streamlined that we had any say. But it's that four-foot setback, the 16-foot height. That's all right now in the state regulations. And we can't go beyond that. We can't go lower than 16-foot height or greater than four-foot setback requirements. So whether it's streamlined or non-streamlined. So really, most applications that have come forward have been in line or we've explained to them where they might have to make an adjustment to, to come in line with what the, the state's regulations are and then as well what we're proposing. So we looked at some of that, the, the size of unit limitation on that non-streamlined as well.
Okay. And I'm, I, I like the idea of, you know, if somebody wants to go through a non-streamlined process and build a little bit differently, we should be able to give them that leeway and, and go down that path, even though it's going to take a little bit longer. I mean, it's a state-driven thing, but that's fine. Okay, so, so what are the rules regarding the housing design guidelines? How much is, are the housing guidelines going to be affected by, by all of this? Because, you know, I, I've, I've had so many people coming to me regarding getting, they're trying to get their building permits regarding outdoor stairs, indoor stairs, what it looks like, materials, this, that. And it just creates this massive timeframe and design issues. How does this affect?
Streamlined, we cannot, we cannot require the residential design guidelines. If you recall, I said, if they meet the streamlined conditions, we must approve it. We can't put more conditions on it. So if they meet that four-foot, 16-foot, if it's detached or if it's wholly within for a single family or, you know, all of those different, those four different streamlined options. If they meet that, there's no residential design guidelines that are imposed. It's that non-streamlined, the example I gave you about the entrance needing to be 10 feet from a property line, that's something that we're looking to have, that's the one little piece that we could have there. Or requiring that, that the, any detached accessory unit has to have similar materials to the main structure. We can't even require that in streamlined.
Okay.
Streamlined, they could come in with a whole different architectural style than the, the, the main unit, and we don't have anything. So we're trying to get little pieces in there. But, but with that, it's not, they're not going to the residential design guidelines. It's just that they'd have to, that 10-foot, you know, from a, a property line for the entrance or the, these, the materials having to match the main unit.
Okay. And I mean, I'm fine if somebody wants to build their second property on the back or it's an ADU garage, whatever it is, totally different than the first. That, they're kind of their choice. And I hear that a lot from residents that are getting, trying to get building permits that the city is not allowing them trying to get certain material or whatever it may be. And they're like, well, we don't want to go down that path. So I, I'm fine with that. You know, it's their property, it's their building, as long as, yeah, so. So. When is, okay, so this is going to go, okay, we asked the answer, question, when is going to affect current applications? How many current applications do we have in, in planning right now regarding ADUs roughly? Do we know?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Sean, do you know?
Yeah, I think we've got about three or four right now.
Yeah.
They're in various stages of the process.
But don't have their, you know, there are several that have had permits already issued, but those are the ones without permits.
But currently in process, about three or four.
And, and we have currently in the ADU, I think I saw that on there on the screen, parking onsite for the ADU, one parking spot for the ADU.
In coastal.
Realizing HCD and California Coastal have not.
In coastal. We could not require that in inland with.
So what happens if coastal comes back and says, yes, we want it. HCD says, no, we don't want it in coastal?
We'll maybe push back to HCD a little bit. We put, if you look at those whereas clauses at the beginning of the coastal and the number of them that are about the coastal access.
Right.
Like, we put some serious justification in there. We did not go whole hog and say, you know, for the multifamily, we need to have replacement of any, you know, converted part. Because we knew that that would maybe not go. But for sure that the, a parking space for the ADU that's being created is what we put there. So that's in the coastal.
So currently, HCD is, is essentially the master rulemaker for us right now. So if, if somebody is abiding by the HCD rules, we're letting it in? Okay.
We have, we have to. We have to.
We have to, as long as it's binding by the HCD rules.
Yeah, so right now, if there's an application in coastal and they're not looking at replacing the parking, you know, or providing a parking space, we can't require that until we adopt and get our ordinance certified.
Right, right. But and then, and then the coastal, it's, we can't get anything done or approved. Well, I shouldn't say, we can't enforce anything until the coastal actually approves. RLCP, certify, certifies RLCP amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're starting from anew on that because the old one is, has been essentially thrown out. Everything's been thrown out, right?
Correct.
So I believe July or August, we just got the Mellow Act approved for the coastal. So that took about a year?
That was actually approved, I want to say, they had a, their first virtual meeting. I think it was in April and that's when that was approved.
Oh, okay.
And I think we got that to them in January. But, you know, it's, it's all going to be on their schedule.
Right, I mean, they have a minimum.
We'll get this to them as soon as it's adopted so that they can get it on whatever quickest agenda is possible. And they will have had time to review the ordinance.
Are we going to include, I mean, I'm concerned that we don't have the planning commission minutes as part of this. Do we, that as part of public comment?
We can get those to you. We'll be able to get those to you before the, the adoption. So we'll have that in those packets.
What, what do you mean, you're going to have those to, to us, like, as a separate after tonight?
Yeah. So it'll be in your, it'll be in your, because remember, this is your introduction of these ordinances. So before you adopt them, you will.
That's right. It'll come back in 30 days again.
You'll have, you'll have inland here in, in two weeks. And then it's like, I think the, the meeting in November for the coastal. Because that.
But they won't be full public hearings. It'll be H on content calendar items.
It will be. But if you, if there's something that you had a question about those planning commission minutes.
Okay. And you can, you can attach those minutes to, to those.
The staff report. Yeah, we'll have it on the staff report.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, there's, there's 900 something pages in here. And there was a fantastic thing by Michael Arnold, our state consultant lobbyist, who adds a great breakout of all the bills that passed. And I was going through those and I was like, holy cow, this is awesome. But, I mean, 900 pages, I only have so much time in my life.
No, I get it.
Everything else. So, okay, let me think here. I have a bunch of notes I've written down. But let's see, have we amended, okay, ordinance ratified, going to affect coastal zone ratified. HCD is master, R1, R2. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. I'm sure I'll remember something in a few minutes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, the mayor asked most of my questions. So I just have a, kind of a follow-up to, to the last question related to Rena as it relates to ADU, JADU. And my thinking here, and, and so I just want to have some clarification from you. The vast majority of people are going to create an ADU or a JADU to absorb some type of family member. And, and in my opinion, all of this comes as a, as a result of the affordability prices, you know? So whether you're absorbing a, a parent or an adult child, right? You are trying to, to meet an unmet need, right? They can't afford to live on their own anymore. Maybe they're unable to, they're on a fixed income, whatever. So when you mentioned, you, you were talking a little bit with the mayor about like the renting of an ADU and when we're, you know, evaluating those, those applications coming in. But in the situation, say, like myself, right, where we've, we've absorbed an in-law and if we wanted to create, you know, an ADU in the garage, right? Would that as part of our application automatically trigger us to evaluate? You know, is, is that individual on a fixed income? Do they meet, you know, a Rena affordability?
Yeah, there's, there's no specific affordability level. Like, we don't require you to have to do an income, you know, certification of that, the person renting. What we're asking in our survey that we send out is, what are you charging for rent? If you're not charging for rent, $0, you know? So, and I think Sean does it ask about if it's a family member or?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we include that.
That way we have an understanding of, of really, you know, what are, what are, is the magnitude of what, you know, what we've got here and how much is it really getting? You know, if there's zero rent, that's an affordable unit.
Okay. And I guess that's what I'm trying to really wrap my head around. You know, is it a subjective matter, you know, where you guys administratively are just calling that? You know, this is an affordable situation and it's moderate or, or less than moderate, you know?
What we're, what we're doing, Sean, I think that you submitted it with the annual reporting.
Correct, yes.
For the housing element?
So we just get the results from the survey and it's, you know, identify if it's zero rent with a family member, you know, that's zero rent. So that's a low, low income unit that we put in the low-income category in the housing survey table. It goes to HCD.
Okay.
But even with that rent level, there's, there's some rent level. It's not like we're just saying, oh, we think this is affordable. There's, there are metrics.
Right, yes.
What the household income is, what 30% of that is that could go towards. You know, so, so it's really looking at other metrics on whether or not the rent that's being charged, you know, where it falls into those different categories.
Correct.
Median.
Okay. And then as part of that survey, are we ascertaining how many individuals may be living in, in ADU? So like you used an example of like, you know, hey, am I building an ADU and absorbing, you know, an adult child and their family, right? Very different than just a, a single person. And, and so I, I think that, you know, I, I don't know if that helps us in our cause here with, with HCD and SCAG. But, you know, I, I'm just wondering if, if that does or if, if it's even germane and we're just focused on the unit.
Yeah, we are just focused on the unit. We're trying to avoid getting too deep into questions. But there's an aversion from the public, I think, to answer, you know, what they. Hopefully get as many affordable units out of our ADUs that we're issuing as possible.
Okay. That was it. I, I just wanted the clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember MD.
I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Lowenstein was first.
You're right. That's my mistake. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lauren. Go ahead, councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, mine, mine's not going to be long anyway because a lot of my answers, my questions were unanswered. Brandy, getting to parking. So we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we have parking spaces in coastal zone. But inland, you said it's not possible for us to require it because of these unless things? Or is it because of, you know, everything is within a half mile of the public transit? Is that why?
Yeah, so for streamlined, you cannot require inland at all. Cannot require the parking for, for inland. For non-streamlined, there's the, the listed waiver. And you know what? I can, let me just pull it up real quick.
Yeah, I was going to say if you can do that because I see the different points.
Let me see where I have that. There we go.
So it's 14.
For, for the, for the, what do you call it? The, the bus stops as well?
Yeah. So I can, let me get that, pull up that definition from the state.
Yeah, because I was wondering, the reason I was asking that was because I think in one of the housing bills, it said, you know, they have to run every 15 minutes or something like that to be considered.
Yeah, not, not for this. So, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
You get one once a day and all of a sudden you have public transit, right?
Right. So that was the SB 50. Under, the definitions under the ADU section of the state regulations, public transit means a location, including but not limited to, a bus stop or train station where the public may access buses, trains, subways, and other forms of transportation that charge set fares, run on fixed routes, and are available to the public. That's it. That's.
Oh, my gosh. That's like.
Right. That's why, that's why I said, you know, it's, we, we did a whole map of it to look and see. And it's just this teeny tiny little triangle of maybe a couple blocks in each direction.
So we don't have it necessarily historic district necessarily.
Yeah. Oh, no, if it's in the historic district, that's waived. So.
Right, right.
Can't require, yeah, right. So.
Right. And the car, and the car sharing vehicle, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I don't know that we have car sharing in town.
We do, but, I mean, you mean like Uber or any, we have car share apps, but we don't necessarily have whatever the, the car sharing.
I think it's, it's like Zipcar where.
Yeah, Zip, right.
Yeah, so you're a member and you go and you, like, you rent that car for a certain period of time.
But even then, I mean, they're left in different places. So I don't know how you measure that.
Yeah.
This is so ridiculous. This is so ridiculous.
I, I think we're okay because, I mean, I mean, not okay, but I think that the half-mile public transit hits most everything anyway.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
I'm sorry, again, I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, but.
No, they've really hemmed us in. And as Mayor Brandon said, this is ridiculous. So, okay. That's, you know, all the other questions. Thank you for all this work. There's a ton of work in here and I appreciate you doing that. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember MD.
Let me just start off with saying this sucks big. All right, I can't, I mean, I, I understand how the state is looking at it. Let, let, let's try to be, seem reasonable. When you look at it through the state's eyes, they have this big housing deficit. They're blaming it on NIMBYs, that they're not allowing people to come into their city, that they're protecting their way of life. And I, I can get that. I do. I get that for a lot of the cities. The problem is, is Redondo isn't one of them. We did a lot to build, to build in housing in our area. We've already went from single-family homes to multifamily homes. We've already done a lot of it. We, when we, when we had the call, Pat, this is long before any of us were here, we already answered that call. And to just put us in this box and make us do more is, is just beyond ridiculous. When you have, and it's, and the key, the key to the language is wherever you have it zoned residential. So El Segundo, where you can't, they don't have it zoned for residential east of, east of PCH. They don't have to put any residential, even though they have two green line stops, even though they have 45,000 jobs and only 15,000 residents, they don't have to do it. The fact that they're pigeonholist in there is, is beyond ridiculous. And whenever I mention this to a YIMBY, they say to me, oh, you're just being a YIMBY. No, this isn't fair. It's just right out isn't fair. So, sorry. Needed to rant that for a second because I was just getting more and more angry as I was reading your presentation.
There's no shortage of housing. There's a shortage of housing in desirable places.
Sorry, oh, I don't know, there's a lot of shortage, but okay. But, I mean, and what's desirable, close to, close to jobs, all right? So they, so if you have 45,000 jobs in El Segundo, you have 75,000 jobs in Beverly Hills, and you only have 15,000 residents, perhaps you should put some housing where those jobs are. That's what I'm saying. So, anyway. The, what I'm concerned with as far, as Neil's brought up, the residential guidelines. So what I'm hearing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you, if you have a house, let's go with just single-family zoning because the multifamily is just blowing my mind. The single-family zoning, right now, we have a 65% bar, unless you can, unless you can, you've satisfied some bonuses, you can make it even bigger. If you have one of those maxed-out houses, you can now put an ADU on. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, the ADU, you can't count, it's in the regulation that the municipality can't count that ADU towards the FAR.
So we could end up with, with, with the, all the way maxing out to all the setbacks the entire area. We can't require any yards, we can't require any green space at all.
No, not for, especially not for streamlined.
Okay, and then, um. So the whole rule of why we're trying to not have houses on top of the garage is just kind of thrown out the window because you can go all the way out to the maximum of your lot if you cover them with ADUs.
You still have to have that, if you're detached, you have to have that four-foot setback side and rear yard. And if it's part of your main structure, you do have to meet the setbacks for your main structure. Because it's either going to be wholly within what's existing, which already has its approvals, or if you're going to do an addition, now that's streamlined and you can require that it has to meet the requirements for that single family, for that main structure.
Okay, so it's not all the way out. So, and in, in one part, it says you, the setbacks are only for what fire allows for fire safety.
In streamlined.
Only in streamlined, so what is that? What are we determining that?
So right now, if they had, if both structures then have like windows, five-foot setback is required. So we put that five foot in there, so they're thinking, okay, let me just meet it that way. They could do it by no windows and then they can bring it to three feet. And if they do these other components, that's per the building code, there are ways that they can get closer, bring those structures closer to each other. We can't, all we can do is say that they have to comply with the building code for streamlined. That we can require and we have in our ordinance, but what we can't do is say you have to have a five, you have to meet that fire code by doing the five-foot setback. If they can meet it in some other way, then they are allowed to, but we're putting that in there to really make it clear, we'd really like to see the five foot and have you meet it that way, but we recognize that we can't require it if you're going to meet the fire code in a different way. And that's just for the streamline, we require the five-foot period for the non-streamline.
Okay, yeah.
And that's what, and that's what we have in our regulations for any accessory structure has to be five feet from the main structure. So that's why we're, you know, wanting to keep that standard in the non-streamline.
Okay, that clarifies it, thank you.
Uh, so, my hand is up next.
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
That's right, I think, um, so is there any way we could massage some of these? I see what you're, what you're saying, Brandy, with R2 and R3, if you have this current, if you have an existing non-conforming use on your property and somebody wants to put an ADU on their property. I mean, if they put a garage and then an ADU next to that garage, there's only so much square footage that someone can build on their lot. So does the second unit, could we put restrictions on that second unit so that they can't, in fact, in terms of minimum size, so that they can't put in a second unit on that lot? So we're not deed restricting, but we are in effect deed restricting? Does that make sense?
I don't think you can because if they can meet, you know, if they can meet the requirements of the zoning, I think that they're, I mean, I would turn that maybe over to the city attorneys. Like if you said, yeah, we're going to let you do the ADU and give some leniency on that because you don't want to build a, your second unit, and this is kind of in lieu of building a second unit where you're R2. And, well, we want to restrict it so then you can't build R2. Well, technically, they could come in and build the second unit and then build an ADU detached. So you're taking away their development, development rights if you say, well, if you're going to put the ADU in here and have a little bit more, then you can't later come back and build what your zoning is allowing you to do.
I mean, I'm trying to look here at the R2 standard, what are the R2 standards for what is considered an extra unit? I mean, or a second actual housing unit on a property? Do we, is there a standard on there?
Sean, what would the, for R2, I mean, there's going to be what your setbacks are, the five-foot setbacks between buildings?
As here's like lots 6,000 square feet or greater, not more than one dwelling unit per 2,984 square feet. So if you have a detached garage and then put either the ADU next to it, I guess, I mean, you really couldn't put, by, as per our ordinance, you couldn't put a second unit.
Probably not. I mean, what happens when you try to develop that second unit is then all the parking requirements come in, so, you know, you're really, that size lot, it's going to be extremely difficult to put an ADU somewhere in the rear part, let's say the rear yard, and then come in later and try to get a second unit in there. Because you'd have to have parking, you know, garage, a whole nother garage for that second unit, so. Just the development standards for the second unit in the R2 zone alone would, it'd be very difficult to meet those, and they'd have to meet them.
But they could. Depending, depending on how, like if they wanted to, you know, tear down the main unit that's there and build the two units, you know, they could, they could make it, you know, so instead of trying to, like, how do I configure it on this property when these things are already existing? Well, you could technically tear down the main unit and replace it.
Okay, so but then you would have to tear down the main unit, you have to, you have to go in reverse, you have to go and build the ADU next to the garage or on top of the garage, so we don't allow it on top of the garage, right? Well, it doesn't matter, no. Well, what's the new?
We, if it's non-streamlined, no.
If it's.
Be a single story.
If it's non-streamlined, we do.
We're going to, we're going to put, for non-streamlined, we're putting the single story, because that's the only place we can put limited, but still 16-foot in height.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because we can't go below the 16-foot in height in non-streamlined.
Right, okay. Okay, that takes care of, okay, I'm, I'm, because, you know, the problem is in my district, there's, we have everything. I mean, we literally have everything. So I'm, I'm seeing this in some like in the avenues and then lower avenues and upper avenues that we have these large lots and smaller lots with R1 and R2 mixed amongst each other. And then the parking, of course. So the parking is a huge deal and obviously you've got that set, so. Okay, and we can amend this minorly when we need, if we need to, moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, there are no more hands up. I guess, uh, probably any comments from the public? Any comments from the public, Eleanor or Vicky?
Eleanor, you are good.
Yeah, there you go.
Got that. Uh, there's no one, oh, here we go. Okay, so we have someone who, Holly Osborne would like to talk. There she goes. Okay, Holly.
Yes, I just want to say that, and I was not at this planning commission meeting when this first came up about the owner occupancy, but what they were worried about was, why they wanted owner occupancy was they didn't want somebody coming in from a richer district, buying a property, and then building a bunch of CRAP and cramming people into both of them, and they're not there, so they don't care. So, my question to you is, how many people from richer districts, and we all know where we meet, are coming in and buying up our older lots? And don't tell me you don't have any because I have people calling me up every day hoping I'm dead and will buy my house as is. Okay, that's the question.
As far as the applications that have come in, we have not seen that. But that doesn't prohibit somebody. Again, we, our hands are tied by the state on that until 2025. Again, we included that in the ordinance so that we don't have to come back and remember, oh, gosh, we were supposed to revise that. We can put that owner, that owner occupancy requirement that's already in there, but it becomes effective in 2025.
Okay, and I have no other person, or no one else in the public that would like to speak on Zoom. Vicky, I think we have two ecomments.
Yes, we do. The first comment is issued, comes in from David Waldner. I would hear some discussion regarding how the short-term rental aspect and less than 30-day rental restrictions in the proposed ordinance will be enforced. A quick look at Airbnb and BRBO rental opportunity in Redondo Beach clearly shows to me that there is already an active short-term rental market thriving in Redondo. This ordinance allowing ADUs to be added to the community with practically no lot size or parking requirements concerns me. I see the possibility of more degradation in the quality of life residence of Redondo. As proposed, the ordinance does not require parking for the ADU if the ADU is within a half, in, within a half of public transportation. That's not read, I'm sorry. That's probably 95% of properties in District 2, and almost nobody comes to Redondo or LA without a car. Additionally, Redondo has already proven to have an abysmal record of enforcing ordinances related to short-term rentals and many other ordinances. The second comment comes from Terry Gasparovitch. Thanks for this opportunity to participate in the consideration of this year's new ADU ordinance. I have some observations about City Council's review of the new ADU ordinance and have a few questions regarding the existing ordinance. From my observations on the new ordinance, I understand we have to accept ADUs in our city. The real question is how to decide where they make sense and where they should be restricted. In order to make that distinction, we need to see more data. Plans or petitions associated with ADU developments. Also, what has been the experience for neighboring cities? For example, Manhattan Beach and Torrance both put their new ADU ordinances in effect on December 17, 2019, before the state ADU ordinance went into effect. Fitted development by map location and restriction based on neighboring structures rather than a broad one-size-fits-all ordinance. I recommend that the City Council consider data from those cities to understand how many ADUs have been built since their new ordinances were passed and where they got built. Help the City Council to make a more informed judgment on the Redondo City ADU ordinance. Also, since many neighboring cities and other coastal cities in California have already passed their ordinances months ago, has the City Council reviewed a comparison of those ordinances to understand the approaches they took and why. For today, I have two questions. How many ADUs got built in Redondo Beach since the new ordinance went into effect on April 19, 2019? How was the planning department, how has the planning department been able to restrict residents from building the two-story ADUs over 16 feet without this ordinance since the beginning of the year? The HCD says the state code does not restrict the height or the number of stories. It does say that cities may impose height restrictions. How has that been done this year without an ordinance in place? Thanks for your time, as I look forward to answers to my questions. And that concludes the comments.
She brings up a couple of good questions. Let me ask you, Brandy, what did the city of Torrance and Manhattan Beach accomplish with the ordinances they did pass in December when they saw these bills coming? They rushed to pass something, and I was watching the City Council meeting at Torrance. I don't have enough council meetings to look at already, but it was interesting to see them rush to pass something. I couldn't quite figure out what they were accomplishing. Do you know?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure either, except for, I know with Torrance, they had, they had, I think, an area that's like a view area, and so they were able to institute, because of that, they could institute something specific. I'd have to go back and look at their ordinances to see if they addressed that non-streamlined versus streamlined, and then also, you know, what HCD, if they ended up approving those ordinances or made them go back and revise. But I don't know what, you know, I don't know what their experience with, what they were, you know, if they were seeing people gear up. We've had just a lot of inquiries, and some people have come in because they're like, well, it's going to be in line with the state code and it's going to be in line with what you're doing and it's what we want to do. So that's what we've seen, you know, otherwise, we would have maybe tried to find some other way back in April to really push, but at that point, we weren't really seeing anything that was coming in that wasn't going to comply with the state regs and what we were proposing. So.
So it's kind of a moot point because you really weren't getting the application.
Yeah, right, and I think maybe, if you recall, the year before, as we were getting ready to adopt our ordinance, a lot of people came in because they're like, oh, this is going to be my chance to get in XYZ, and, you know, to get above the garage and to get this size and whatever it was that, that, or my lot size is less than 6,000 square feet. Well, now those things are not things that we can limit, right? So, you know.
And that was effective January 1.
Yeah, yeah, and so I think it's just a little bit different of a dynamic than what we'd experienced the year before because we just don't have, our hands are so tied.
So do you know how many ADUs we've approved since last April of 2019?
Well, the question is, how many do we approve since then? Not as many as we approved before then, because of so many come in. I think we had probably close, you know, 35, 30 maybe, that came in before then and then maybe another 10 for the rest of the year.
Yeah, well, that's a good ballpark figure.
Yeah, yeah.
For the commenter. Did you hear any more questions in there? I, I'm sorry, those are what I remember.
I think those are kind of the main ones. I caught those two.
Yeah, you know, a lot of recommendations on what we should be doing, but we really, our hands are tied. We don't really have the ability to limit height, you know, less than 16 feet, where the, very, very specific and it's done on purpose, so. It's not like the city has a bunch of flexibility. Anyway, Councilmember Narina.
Yeah, one last quick question. Houses that have Mills Act under them or historic houses, we have historic zones, but if somebody has a historic house and they want to build ADU outside their historic house?
They, they do, they, I believe with that, they'll have to go, if they've got the Mills Act contract, I think that they have to go to get the certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission, which is basically going to be similar, like, to what we are requiring in the non-streamline, right? That the materials are in line with what the main structure is. But they, but we, we can't limit the, that size, height setbacks any, you know, any differently.
Right, okay.
It would only be, it would only be because it's been designated locally that we would want to make sure that the materials and.
Glenn did.
Were in line.
Right, and what if, and that's, I mean, I'm primarily thinking of R1, because especially in the avenues, there are a lot of, yeah, a lot of avenues, there are a lot of Mills Act houses, but if there's any non-conforming Mills Act plays, I'm probably not, I wouldn't assume, but okay.
Well, they might be non-conforming setbacks or something like that, but they, but it's just because of when they were built, right? It was probably before zoning was in place, if they got the Mills Act.
Okay, okay, I don't see any more hands up. I, I'm happy with the stuff I see here, my questions I've gotten, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Anyone opposed? Okay, any more public comments?
No, there.
Okay, so ordered.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Just the ordinances, there's also. Just the ordinances, there's also, or are you going to do the resolution separate?
And and the, excuse me, and the resolutions that are uh that are attached to the ordinances as well, the staff recommendation.
There's a a resolution um requesting certification by Coastal Commission, so it's, yeah.
Uh yeah, approve that as well. You want me to say the name for it or no? You want me to to say the name?
My understanding, you want to introduce ordinance 3206-20 and 3207-20 by title only and adopt resolution number CC 2010-072 by title.
By title only, yes.
Okay, great. And there's a second?
Todd, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narin.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember MD.
Aye.
You have to read this uh element?
Yes. Uh introduced by title only ordinance number 3206-20 and ordinance of the City Council of Redondo Beach, California, amending Title 10, Chapter 2 of the Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units in residential zones consistent with state law for introduction first reading. Introduction by title only ordinance number 3207-20 and ordinance of the City Council of Redondo Beach, California, amending Title 10, Chapter 5 of the Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units in residential zones in the coastal zone, consistent with the state law for introduction and first reading. Adopt by title only resolution number CC-2010-072, a resolution of City Council of Redondo Beach, California, requesting certification by the coastal, California Coastal Commission of amendments to the Coastal Land Use Plan Implementation Ordinance Title 10, Chapter 5 of the Municipal Code and requesting review of the amendments by the State Department of Housing and Urban Development pertaining to accessory dwelling units consistent with state law, which is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the Coastal Act and providing that the amendments to the city's local coastal program will take effect automatically upon Coastal Commission approval pursuant to Public Resources Code Section 30514 and Title 14, Section 13551 of the California Code of Regulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Eleanor. Next up is a public hearing to consider the draft Artesia Aviation Corridors Area Plan. Let's first take Exparte Communications. Councilmember Narin.
Yeah, I've talked to uh I watch or talked to planning commission and staff, I've talked to member uh the public and actually that's it. I don't think I've talked to city staff. I, yeah, no.
Uh Councilmember Lowenstein.
Uh I have talked to the public and I have talked to the mayor.
Councilmember Horvath.
Staff and public.
And Councilmember Grant.
Talked to the public, I've talked to the staff, I've talked to planning commissioners and pretty much anybody else who wants to talk about aviation and Artesia corridor. So just about anybody.
Okay, Councilmember MD.
I did a blast uh through my email, talked to a lot of residents when on the emails with those. Um also did a mailing to tell everybody about this uh Artesia plan. I've talked to staff. I've um and that's it.
Okay, I've um certainly talked to staff. I've talked to numerous members of the public about this. I attended uh one of the workshops of the G-PAC. I've talked with Councilmember Lowenstein and I believe I spoke with Councilmember Grant and Councilmember um Narinheim. Um yeah, so um a lot of people in the public and um those staff people, staff and those particular elected officials. And it was just general discussion about what to do about the the area and and how to approach it. And so that was it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember MD. Any objections? Okay, so ordered. So uh Brandon, you get a busy night.
Actually, I'm going to turn this one over to Sean Scully and just so you're um aware, we um we're already starting to collaborate uh staff-wise, so um you know, we have the waterfront economic development, the um the assistant city manager, um the public works director, we've all been uh really working together. So there may be times when we might have different questions that would go to them, but I'm going to turn over the presentation to Sean. He's he's been living and breathing the the ACAP plan for the last few months, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Brandy, Mayor, members of the City Council, Sean Scully. Uh let me go ahead and cue this up. I apologize in advance, there is a lot of information in here, but we'll try to make it interesting and uh and uh stay at a little bit higher level. Oh, hang on a sec here. Hang on a second. Okay, all right. So here we are tonight, this is the Artesia Aviation Corridors Area Plan. It's been a long time in the making. Um we're happy to be here tonight to present this to you. Uh it also goes by ACAP and or the area plan. So real quick, this is a kind of a a script for how we're going to do the presentation tonight. We'll keep the background really pretty brief, run through a few slides about how we got here and the work that went into the to the ACAP. Then we're going to dive right into the, you know, the meat of the document, the key concepts and recommendations within the ACAP. Uh they're within Chapter 3, placemaking, Chapter 4, mobility, then a little bit in the implementation, Chapter 6. And then we'll close out with some of the implementation measures uh and how it's used, uh the documents used. And particularly, we're going to walk the council through a couple of case studies that'll really drive home some of the impediments to uh to why the corridors haven't maybe turned over and and revitalized the way we've been hoping. Uh and then we'll close with our recommendations, some immediate next steps that we're going to ask for the council's direction on. So real quick, here's our project area. It's all of aviation through the through the city, Aviation Boulevard through the city and then the majority of Artesia Boulevard running from Aviation in the west and it ends at the railroad uh overpass on Artesia Boulevard. Um here's the background. We started this uh back in 2017 when the council expanded GPACs and uh placework scope to include the development of the ACAP. Uh we amended the contract. Original budget was $224,100 and as we went through the process and honed the document down, we were able to shave 20,000 off of that and re-rework those monies into some of the other GPAC efforts. So why study the corridors? Well, Artesia and Aviation Corridors are North Redondo's most prof prominent commercial hubs and they really haven't kept pace with the commercial transformations that we've seen, let's say in Riviera Village and what's planned for the Galleria. And they they don't reflect the community's contemporary vision and uh activity that we want to see on the in the corridors. The purpose of the area plan is really to provide that roadmap to activate, energize, revitalize the corridors, um really putting all the ideas that have come over time and been brought up for many years into one place uh so we can reference those going forward. And we do have two, let's say, identities. We've got Artesia, which is really North Redondo Beach's main street, and then we have Aviation, which is smaller scale, more local, serving the adjacent residential neighborhoods. How to use the area plan? So this is going to be a companion document to the general plan and the city zoning ordinance. Think of it a lot like our residential design guidelines. The zoning ordinance will reference the in the future with an amendment to the zoning ordinance, it would reference the area plan and then future developments would be required to be consistent with the intent of the recommendations and design guidelines in the area plan. It's also serves a purpose as a tool and a guide for future strategic planning and prioritizing and budgeting by the City Council as well as uh department heads and city staff. Um I kind of alluded to it before, but there's been a lot of prior efforts to revitalize uh the the Artesia and Aviation Corridors. Um you know, we we took this plan to the North Redondo Beach Business Association and when we were preparing for that, we were looking at minutes and uh you know, agendas from uh NRBBA meetings back in the late 70s and early 80s and we saw some of the some of the things they were talking about were some of the things that we were talking about. So a lot of those prior efforts, they've been folded into this plan. Uh a little more recently than than that, uh the specific Artesia revitalization uh strategy back in 2013. And then the city manager's office headed up a Artesia and Aviation Revitalization Committee just a, you know, a year ago or so and those recommendations are folded into the plan. And then, of course, the general plan update process has really informed uh this document. Um kind of staying on this theme, community engagement, there's been a lot. Uh the General Plan Advisory Committee had dedicated focused meetings, three of them on the ACAP. Again, uh North Redondo Beach Business Association, we took it to them in November of last year. There was a community meeting in February, early this year, approximately 50 attendees came out for that. And as part of that, we launched a survey and we took the implementation measures that are in the plan out to the public and asked for them to prioritize those implementation programs. And uh attached to the agenda administrative report was the results of that survey. And then just recently, we had three planning commission public hearings uh working through the ACAP. Uh another really critical element to the background were all the technical studies that were performed to inform it. One was the citywide market analysis and it it confirmed what we had suspected about retail demand and that's declining over time and consistent with national trends. And then one of the kind of aha's of that was of that market analysis was there was a large amount of unmet need for new and improved office space in the city. Then we did some specific studies within the scope and budget for the ACAP, uh targeted studies. One was a parking utilization analysis, another was a development performa analysis. And then we did an existing land use analysis lot by lot of all the properties in the corridor. Um this slide tells us, you know, as far as parking goes, uh we're underutilized across the corridors. Efficient parking would be 85% utilized. On-street parking in the ACAP area is only 68% utilized and and the off-street private lots are only 50% utilized. So we have, we have available parking to work with. Development perform analysis, this really what we what we came came away from after this was that it would take some pretty intense development to turn over the properties on uh in the corridor. Uh three, four-story development, uh much greater FARs than that are currently allowed. The existing land use, we just, we learned about what we really have on the Boulevard and got a really high ratio of service-oriented and auto-related uses that really don't support pedestrian activity or uh generate a lot of sales tax revenue. So the challenge is really for the corridor, and we learned from all this background analysis and these studies, we had a existing mix uh of uses that was really fairly disorganized and it really, the target of a lot of the uses really was the commuter. It wasn't the adjacent residential neighborhoods as much. Um and then also, we learned about the service and automotive uses, service, commercial and automotive use uh that are frankly about half of all the businesses on the in the corridor. We also learned the very high land values, which really limit the feasibility of redeveloping, redeveloping property. There's a fairly low, historically low vacancy rate uh for the businesses, so that doesn't create a lot of incentive to turn the property over. And then we have some pretty restrictive uh regulations and conservative development standards and and parking regulations and inefficient parking. Uh you know, so we've got some larger buildings on small lots and it really prohibits utilizing those businesses for more parking intense uses, which in many cases are preferred uses. So um so you get an excess of parking in some areas and a real shortage in others. Then we we learn we have really shallow lots in the corridor, so it really limits the size of building and buildings and it's really difficult to park. So GPAC looked at all this information and they, you know, they came up with these recommendations. They were, they were looking for pedestrian-focused environment, you know, support the adjacent residential neighborhoods rather, you know, than focusing as much on the commuter. Another thing uh that we talked about with GPAC and worked on and is in the plan is trying to create physical connections. So more connections between the adjacent businesses, the parking lots, open up those parking lots, having pass-throughs between the commercial uses and between the adjacent residential uses and the commercial uses. GPAC was really looking at small-scale targeted revitalization strategies rather than, you know, the short-term, larger-scale developer developer-driven changes um along the Boulevard. Um looking to target really small areas uh that we're calling activity nodes and then organically grow those. Um another recommendation was create these temporary gathering spaces along the corridor. And we'll have, I'll have more in a couple of slides later, but you know, about the streetlet and parklet opportunities at cross streets at Artesia Corridor. It's a really interesting story about how that came about. And consider alternative streetscape and street section designs, design options on Artesia. So we look, you know, we've got 100-foot a right-of-way, what can we do in that 100 feet? What are the options? Can we put a bike lane there? Can we, a bike lane and still have parking, you know? What fits? So we just ran through some concepts and we'll show some of those in the slides tonight. The the plan doesn't recommend any of those, but it does show us what we have opportunities to pursue. And then another key point for GPAC was wait for the Galleria Revitalization Project to mature and see how some of that uh spills over and impacts the the corridors in the future before considering, you know, going with really intense development incentives. Uh planning commission recommendations, so these uh they had a number of specific recommendations that that they are asking the council to consider in addition to, you know, the considering the the overall area plan. So they had uh uh these are, and these are all in the resolutions, the resolution that's attached to the uh to the administrative report tonight. But the planning commission recommends consider restoring the name of Arte- Artesia Boulevard to Redondo Beach Boulevard. Again, not, you know, some of these are not new ideas. Consider FAR increases to something above what GPAC recommended, which is a change from point five to point six. They're saying, let's look at even more, a little bit more. They looked at the bike lane issue on Artesia or option and they thought, they were a little concerned about safety. They thought, well, what, we should really look more to Matthews and Vanderbilt as parallel bike traffic uh options. And then um they they, as far as relaxing parking standards, which is a real, you'll see that theme coming up quite a bit uh in the plan, uh they were looking at, before we do that, let's, let's, you know, make sure we can, we can handle it. Let's have some parking structures in place, let's say, uh before we eliminate uh parking on the street and reduce parking standards. The plan has sidewalk dining as an as an option or. The streetlets were at a couple of locations, we'll go through those later, but they said, you know, let's avoid putting them at signalized lights. And then they wanted to consider an empty storefront or blight fee for owners with empty vacant sites for 12 months or 18 months. They wanted to uh the plan to prioritize the implementation items and they were looking for some visual aid to illustrate some funding sources and amounts. And then make sure they they want the council to consider to make sure the plan's flex uh has flexibility to adapt to this post-pandemic environment. And then uh consider regulations to encourage local businesses in favor of large national chains. So we're going to start getting in. So we're going to start getting into the actual ACAP now, but you know, the ACAP with these chapters, placemaking, mobility, funding, implementation, starts to pull together the opportunities we have at the corridor. So improve the mix of, and, and location of uses, encourage reinvestment, improve the pedestrian environment, establish an identity, enhance gateways, improve that neighborhood connectivity, establish more efficient parking, improve mobility and enable implementation. So here's what the, what the ACAP does. Placemaking mobility, that's where we're gonna, that's really where the meat of the document is. Establish desired role of each corridor, strategies, best practices, recommendations and actions. It contains specific design standards and particularly design guidelines. Then Chapter Five has funding, how to maintain the improvements and fund some of these. And then implementation is really, that's the resource for city staff and officials and the council to use as we prioritize and budget and plan for the future. So we're going to just walk through these next handful of slides are the placemaking, key concepts, activity nodes, and we have a slide for each one of these going forward. So we kind of define it. Preferred uses, there's no slide for that. The preferred uses are, as deter, you know, G-PAC's recommendation and Planning Commission confirmed, professional office and restaurant would be the preferred uses. Improve development feasibility, that's with the slight increase in FAR, coupled with relaxing parking requirements. Activate sidewalks, engaging storefronts, that's with design guidelines. Identity and streetscape enhancements, establish a bid. And this is where we have a lot of branding, wayfinding, signage, and other branding elements are, are all identified in placemaking. And then another concept is public open space. And that's where a private development will dedicate a certain portion of the property for more public use. So we have some incentives, incentives for that. Maybe relax parking standards if they provide some public open space. And then improve connectivity. And that's where we open, you know, we create more access, pedestrian access mid-block from residential to commercial and then between commercial uses. So this, this is just kind of sets us up for the, the corridor and how it lays out with respect to the ACAP. We've got our gateways at the ends and at the entry points to the corridor, both ends of Aviation and both ends of, of Artesia. Here's the activity nodes. These are, and we'll have a couple of slides on it, but think about these as, these are these like test case areas where we really try to create activity and stimulate growth. And each one of them has these streetlet components as well. They have a different orientation and we'll go through that when we get into the, into those activity nodes. So here's activity nodes, they create a localized destination. So they break down the corridor into these pedestrian-friendly nodes. Clustering of complementary and preferred uses. Building energy around these streetlets that are located in these activity nodes and prioritizing some of these recommendations in the E-CAP, ACAP into the, in these activity nodes. And then establishing a bid to promote development within the activity nodes and promote the desired brand in the corridor. So you don't try to roll everything out in the entire corridor, you, you target it and, and pilot it in these activity nodes, see if it works. Here's a little blow-up of these activity nodes. We've got one that's more civic oriented. Let's say it's anchored by the library, senior services, community services department up at Green Lane in Artesia. It's got a, you know, recommended street location at Green Lane. Then we have, that's on the west end. Then on the east end, we've got the, the McKay Lane area bounded by McKay and Felton. And it includes the, the new parking lot up at the SCE right-of-way. And this is a more of a clustering of smaller restaurants that already exist. So it's got a little bit more of a commercial orientation. Improve development feasibility. So, you know, this is, these are some of the incentives that we can use and they're recommended in the document to create these, you know, this growth, this activity. Increase FAR along Artesia Corridor, reduce onsite parking requirements. This is for preferred uses in activity nodes. Facilitate a low-cost loan, loan program for preferred uses. Reduce permitting fees, you could expedite permitting, permit processing for preferred uses in activity, in activity nodes. We talk, the document has a lot of recommendations about how to activate the sidewalk. Outdoor dining. You can also pilot outdoor retail display in the activity nodes. Prioritize incentives for projects with outdoor dining in the activity nodes. Public open space. So this is, you know, establishing a public open space requirement. And a lot of these are going to require follow-up amendments to the zoning ordinance to activate these concepts. So for public open space, you require, you know, with an amendment to the zoning ordinance, you could require new commercial projects that meets specific criteria to provide public open space onsite. It could be, you know, purchase of land, consider purchasing land from property owners to establish public open spaces and pedestrian pass-throughs on the corridor. Incentivize public open space adjacent to pedestrian pass-throughs. And then again, as another incentive to get public open space, consider reducing the amount of onsite parking required for, required for properties that formerly preserved land for these pass-throughs or for some, some public open space. Engaging storefronts and frontages, there's a lot in the design guidelines in the document that, that just really talk about facade articulation and canopies and awnings, shading devices, how we want to screen parking lots. So, you know, just really, the storefront improvement program is a great example of, engaging storefronts that we would do through the ACAP with the design guidelines. And here it is, storefront improvement program. And this is an existing city-sponsored program. And we've got varying grants for different types of projects, but we could now look at prioritizing the issuance of these in businesses that are in the activity nodes. And if they bring in other elements of the ACAP that the ACAP recommends, they're a priority project for the storefront improvement program. Here's some of the identity and streetscape enhancements that, that really create the brand. Within this, we've got the, the gateways, banners, wayfinding, public art, unifying business signage, kind of a signage program. So here's gateways, we just wanted to throw up an example, it kind of struck us. We found an existing example of some wall in, in another community and, you know, we've got the, almost the exact same template to work off of right at one of our gateways over on Aviation Boulevard at the very west end.
Sean, that's technically from Osage Beach though, by the way.
Oh, is that really?
It is.
Oh, wow, okay.
But, it's okay. Don't let us panic, right?
Yeah. So here's public art, another one of the, you know, elements that we can bring and really enhance the experience at the, within the area plan. We've gotten quite a bit from the Galleria funds that we'll be spending on, on some of these, you know, public art projects along the corridor. Okay, so, so that's kind of, that's our placemaking. We're going to move into the key concepts for mobility. This is more of the public space. So we have streetlets, convert street segments to temporary or permanent open space. And this was really a, this came from a survey back in the early G-PAC days, just one comment from a resident. And they floated this, this response to one of our surveys and this thing just kind of caught fire. And we spent a lot of time working with a lot of, as Brandy was alluding to, a lot of the other departments piled into the conference room. And we spent, you know, a better part of a whole day looking at every single intersection along the corridor to see if we could really propose the, this streetlet concept. And the G-PAC was really in support of it as well as Planning Commission. Improve connectivity, you know, this is where we're trying to improve walking conditions and safety, improve bicycle and other mobility device access, improve transit, high-quality bus stops, future trolley service, you know, depending on what happens with the Galleria, we could run a trolley between the Galleria all up and down the corridor. And then parking, relax parking requirements, there's a lot of that in this plan as an incentive. And that's what our case studies are about. We're going to walk you guys through, the council through, how parking is really big impediment to the development of the corridor. Shared parking, which we don't have much of there, and a Park One strategy. So streetlets, we'll just run through these real quick. You know, we, we ident, you know, they're in the activity nodes, there's one at Green Lane, these are just recommended locations. There'd be a lot of additional study to actually roll one of these out. And then there's another one at McKay Lane, the McCain Lane Streetlet. These are the, the, kind of the exercise we went through, we looked at topography, existing driveway access, we didn't want to shut off an access driveway to the commercial businesses. We looked at if it would impact transit, any approved development projects we needed to be mindful of, and, and we wanted to make sure we got them in the activity nodes. Improve connectivity, this was really, this really could open up the pedestrian component that we're trying to, to, the dynamic we're trying to achieve, the change we're trying to see in the corridor. Full-block pass-throughs, we've got parking lots that run the whole way between Artesia and the adjacent, let's say Matthews or Vanderbilt. You know, if we could take part of that parking lot and create something more interesting than just a parking lot for that pass-through and make it safe pass-through to the corridor. Remove barriers between parking areas. So between businesses, we have, all these lots are shut off from one another. So if you park in one, you, you can't get to the, you know, you can't come, you know, just go directly through to the adjacent commercial business, you got to walk out and around. And so that's, that's a really important concept with a lot of recommendations in the plan. Improve the walking conditions. Reduce the frequency of curb cuts. So as you're walking along the corridor, there's, we're trying to consolidate some of these curb cuts, so it's safer to walk across. And if you open up the parking behind these lots, you can kind of create, not everybody has to have their own access. Combine crosswalks with bulbouts, enhance crosswalks. Improve bicycle and other mobility access. So install more bicycle parking, you know, bicycle facilities at a lot of the businesses. We need to bring those bicycle facilities in. Convert nearby residential streets to bike boulevards, consider installation of bike lanes along the corridors. So here's, we'll just run through a couple of slides. I, I went through this earlier, but this is Artesia Boulevard. And in, as part of this effort, we had the consultant run these conceptual plans for Artesia, just to see, could we even do some of the things we were envisioning? And we've got 100-foot right-of-way, this is how it is today. Two through lanes, a parking lane, 10-foot sidewalk and a 16-foot median. So here's, here's an illustration, just conceptual with a bike lane and keeping the parking. We can actually keep the same number of through lanes, we lose some of the median and we, we still have parking and we have a bike lane. So it is possible. A lot of expensive costs for something like this. Here's, here's a real transformation concept. This is kind of the, you know, this is losing the parking, creating a bike lane, really increasing the width of the sidewalk. This is a, you know, really extensive change and, you know, multimillion-dollar project, but we wanted to see if we could even do it and still maintain the, the same capacity of Artesia Boulevard. And the answer is, it is possible. So improve transit and parking, these are some other mobility concepts and recommendations. Again, relaxing parking, encourage shared parking on private lots. Establish ride share pickup and drop-off areas. Establish public shared parking, kind of the Park One strategy. And we've, we've got now, we've got a parking field in the SCE right-of-way. And that's in, on, within one of our activity nodes. So let's see, this, this is just key strategies for funding, public improvements and incentives. So for funding, there's a whole chapter on this. Chapter Five, special assessment districts, business improvement district, a bid, parking benefit district, and that could be funded by in-lu parking fees and parking meter fees. There's impact fees for public art. The Galleria had a large impact fee assessed for, for utilization on Artesia. There's grant programs. So in-lu fees should be allowed in areas within, this is just a recommendation, within a quarter mile of shared parking. Shared parking should be within or near activity nodes. So, so moving from funding to incentives, we've got, you know, for, for changing the corridor, city-sponsored grant programs, the storefront improvement program, low-cost financing programs could be considered, expedited, expedited permits, reducing permitting fees, relaxed parking standards. So, okay, so these next handful of slides, we, we wanted to walk the council through what we deal with every day when we were open at the planning counter and now what we do when we get phone calls and emails. And how we deal with development on the corridor today and why, why aren't some things happening today? So we've got, our first case study is McKay and Artesia. And we, this is the southwest corner. And this, what this is, is tells us the square footage of the, of the building and the current parking, and this is all related to parking. And then these are our different uses. Retail, pedestrian-oriented, the generation rate and how many parking space would be required. And then you have office, medical, and then, then restaurants, which is one of our preferred uses. And if you look at this, real quick note, the asterisk for office and medical is, in this zone on the corridor, and this will be in one of our recommendations that we, that we changed this, we don't permit ground floor office on, in the C2PD zone, which is the majority of, of the, of the Artesia corridor. So we can't even have those uses, which actually the general office could be parked at this location. But, so if we look at it, we've got current parking is 27. So we could turn over, you know, we, we couldn't even, all we can do is if it's retail now, that's all it can be going forward with legal not-conforming privileges. But if we want a sit-down restaurant, we need 75 parking spaces. We've only got 27, we, we can't allow it. So this, this table just demonstrates that. And we've blown that up and we took a look at it and these are, these actual businesses, their square footage, the parking field. And now if we look at, for a, for a restaurant, we look at how much area we really need for actually, you know, developing this as a restaurant. And it, you know, it would take up an additional 20, 22,000 square feet of, of land or actually 26,500 square feet of land we would need to accommodate all the parking required per our current standard. So moving on to case study number two, similar circumstance, and we're dealing with this property right now a lot. This is at Ringe or just a little bit east of Ringe in Artesia Boulevard. It's two buildings, the, you know, the old beauty college. the, you know, the old Beauty College and the use that we can allow, other than what the legal non-conforming privileges allow us to do. So, it's essentially retail-only, so we have these large buildings on these smaller lots, and if it's retail now, that's basically all we can do going forward. So we can't, you know, a restaurant, if you look at the restaurant column, that's going to require way more parking than either one of these sites can accommodate. So we, you know, we're, we're saying no to the preferred use that we know the community would like to see here. So we just did a little exercise of, you know, kind of redesigning the structure, you'd actually, essentially, you'd be cutting off, you know, close to, you know, 1,500, 1,600 square feet, or, excuse me, 600 square feet of the building to accommodate a retail use there, which really isn't even what we want to see, as much as some of the preferred uses, so. And again, this is another, this is the building right next door, same scenario. Just to get enough parking for retail, we'd have to, conforming parking, we'd have to chop off a portion of the building. If we want to get in other use, we have no way to do it now. So, that, we're winding down the, the presentation here, and we've got a couple of recommendations for immediate next steps that we wanted to get the council's direction on. Direct staff to bring back proposals, inclusive of necessary environmental review documents and funding sources, or an amendment to the Redondo Beach zoning ordinance that would serve to activate the ACAP and require future development within ACAP area to be consistent with the intent, so similar to how we've activated the residential design guidelines, we'd be bringing that back. And then, an amendment to the Redondo Beach zoning ordinance, these are kind of low-hanging fruit that we saw that, hey, we should really look at this now, and we're asking for the council to direct us to do so. An amendment to the ordinance, specifically in the C2PD zone, removing the restriction that limits office and medic, that includes medical office, to only the second floor or the rear of the ground floor. So we'd be asking for direction on that. And then asking for council to direct us to bring back a parking implementation study that would inform the best options and strategies for necessary amendments to the parking regulations to allow us to utilize some of our underutilized parking, come up with shared parking strategies, and other mechanisms that we could bring back that would get the parking out of the way of the revitalization we're trying to see. So, with that, staff's recommendation is, consider my title-only resolution number, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach adopting the Artesian Aviation Corridor Area Plan, and finding that the ACAP is not subject to CEQA. Discuss, discussion and direction to staff regarding the preparation of priority code amendments needed to begin implementing the elements of the ACAP, that was the previous slide, or continue the public hearing to October 13 to further consider and/or edit the draft ACAP. That, we're available for questions.
Great, thank you, Sean, for that comprehensive report, you did a good job condensing it, because you could've just wrote the whole report, right? It would've been very fun. That's what we're supposed to do. I got the report Friday, so I'm about halfway through it, and there's a lot of great information in there. I found the chapter on place-making particularly useful, because it, it kind of encapsulated everything. I got a few questions and a few statements, I'll just let other people talk, but I do want to say, I think we should continue this item, it's complex, I think we need to give it some thought, we need to pass it around, and give it another meeting to really flush it out and dedicate more time to it. This is so important, we spent so much time on it. Two different public groups getting together to give input, now the GPACs had, had dedicated meetings to it, and I think we've been a mistake for us to just adopt it the first time it comes through, but we could get a lot done the next time. Just real briefly, I think we need a, you know, some sort of theme for Artesia Boulevard, you know, it just needs a theme, you know, like art, for example, might, might be a great theme, as an example. It needs a bid, where is the bid? I don't understand, what is, what is, what do you hear back when you talk to the North Redondo Beach Business Association about forming, forming a bid? That's a great funding mechanism, it's a great way, they already have an organization for them to impart what they want to get done and work together, and, I mean, it's worked in River Village, it's worked all over, everywhere, I, I just don't understand, we've been talking about this for 10 years.
Yeah, well, we have, Stephen Proud is here, he, his team has worked closely with the businesses along the corridor, he might be able to-
Yeah, I don't want to get too into it, Stephen, but what is the answer you get back about why there's no bid?
Well, to be honest with you, Mayor, you know, there, there hasn't been a big move within, in my time with the city, which is coming up on five years now, there really hasn't been a big push as an organization to just create the bid itself. They've been focused on some other efforts, they put a lot of energy into the-
Yeah, like renaming the-
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly what I was going to say. And so, you know, I have only attended one meeting that, and it was when Councilman San Marco was here, he called a, a small meeting together to try to see if there was any interest, and beyond that, there hasn't really been a champion to go out and really promote the bid as a, as an opportunity for the Boulevard to realize some of the benefits that they could realize. And, and I think it's, you know, I, I can't speak to why the NRBBA hasn't taken up that mantle and decided that that's something that they want to take on, or, or a group of businesses haven't decided to form another organization themselves, it just doesn't seem like it's risen up to the level where someone's been really willing to take it on, and I think it really needs to be a business-led effort, a community-led effort, as opposed to a city-led effort, so you get the buy-in of the businesses and they understand the true benefit, rather than something that's kind of being imposed on them by the city, or feeling like it might be imposed on them by the city.
Um, Mayor, in addition to that, you know, one thing that we've looked at to, to Stephen's point about, it's, they have to have some ownership in it, but there's also that, well, how do you even get started, right? So what we've been, just in the, the last few months, we've been trying to explore if there are technical, technical assistance grants or programs out there that, you know, where they can help with that, you know, what are those process, processes for incorporating and such, that they could help them? So, we're, we haven't found anything specifically yet, but that is something that we're keeping our eyes out, it wouldn't be something that we're taking on as a municipality, because we're not the ones that would, that would create that bid, but rather, where we can kind of help foster that along and, and, you know, get them some tools to help to get to that next step.
Well, it would be great to get a bid, but if we don't get a bid, we, we've got to move forward anyway, so-
Correct.
But I think some of the things the city can do, you know, this is simple stuff we've been doing, you know, the benches and landscaping, crosswalks, lighting, art projects, signage, the storefront improvement program, we can, you know, expand that. I love the idea to walk through areas from the neighborhoods, you know, and open, open gathering spaces, and people need to have a reason to go there and have, you know, maybe an open area, area where, you know, you can have music periodically, or whatever you have, activities for kids, but yeah, that's, that's, that definitely seems like that, that's missing. The other thing, you know, is your, well, land values are so high, and then you hear that most of the owners kind of like already own their buildings, and so they're happy to accept lower rates just for the general cash flow, and, and that's not a situation that ignites redevelopment and reinvestment. So I, I don't know what the city can do about that, except to make the place more attractive and, and, yeah, hopefully get, get, get some turnover and get people willing to, to make some changes, I-
I think that, that's where-
Land values are so high, I go, well, but it's fully occupied, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, that's where some of those other recommendations of increasing the FAR, you know, the GPAC was just slightly, planning commissions, like maybe a little bit more than slightly, and then as well adjusting those parking standards so that it's something that, that turnover is a little more fluid and available to them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, you know, adjusting the parking standards, certainly, since there's such low utilization. But in terms of upzoning to ignite investment, I mean, that's, to me, it's, it's like, make it bigger. And I don't think the community's going to support that, and you saw that in the GPAC, and really take great deference to the GPAC, because you've got 20-some members from all over the city, having multiple meetings, and who've been immersed in, in this land use stuff, and, and to, to think, you know, residential always comes up, and whatever the council decides to do, that ought to be a clause in a resolution, there's not going to be residential development on Artesia Boulevard. So the property owners aren't sitting around thinking, well, when they give us residential, we'll make a move, or when they upzone it, we'll make a move. I mean, it's kind of like, you know, rewarding somebody who may have overpaid for a property, if somebody overpays for a property, it's not the city's responsibility to upzone it for them so that he or she makes money. You have a zoning, you buy it, that's what it is. And I, I don't think we should incentivize people to, to wait for an upzone, you're going to see the same thing at the AES side, I mean, he's, you know, bought it and speculating that, you know, we're going to give him something, we owe them absolutely nothing. They've had a zoning when he bought it, when the people bought these buildings, they had a zoning, and we can make some adjustments and maybe increase some FAR a little bit, but to, you know, bring in mixed use, or what have you, to initiate action, oh, you'll get action, but it won't be the kind of action that, that the community would like to see. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of dramatically upzoning the area, you know, by increasing FAR, maybe a little bit, but, yeah, I've just seen that so many times, where property owners just sit and let their properties run down, and we had a former city manager made the comment, you let the property run down and the public will let you have anything. And that is a tactic, it's like Chapter Four in community development, you know, let the property run down and then they'll give you whatever you want, and they have time often. So, I like the idea-
Mayor, if I could add to that, completely agree, and our takeaway in evaluating the GPAC's advice on this and the input from the Planning Commission is that we need to focus on more organic improvements in the corridor, and that's why you'll see in our next steps, as, as Sean has laid out, that we really want to look at parking regulations, we want to look at uses, and we want to look at public place-making, because we think those are the areas where we have agreement across the board, both residents, GPAC and commission, we think that's ultimately something the full council can agree on as well, and that's where we want to spend our time and energy. So, you're not going to hear us endorse or really propose strong FAR changes, I think one of the key takeaways in the Planning Commission recommendation, and I believe the GPAC's commentary, is wait for the Galleria's development to fully realize before we really evaluate square footages, because we're adding a lot of, we're adding a lot of project just down the street, so it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to try to crowd the corridor, I think, at this juncture. So we would rather focus on underutilization of parking, tweaking our regulations to reflect, really, you know, you, you mentioned earlier that the value of the properties, one of the biggest struggles isn't so much the ownership, it's what prospective tenants can do with the building when they come in for leasing, right? You, you saw Sean lay out those case studies, we wanted to show you those, because you can't really support anything but a grandfathered use, given our parking requirements and the size of the lots and the size of the square footage of the buildings versus those lots. But the problem is, is, as you all have noted in other discussions, retail is not what is going to turn these sites over, there is not demand for new retail space. Retail is changing, right? The entire nature of the industry is changing. So what do people want to do when they come to the counter and ask about prospective new uses? They want to do, they want to do restaurant, and they want to do office. They can't do either in our current code. Office is flat-out prohibited under the uses, so that's something we got to evaluate. And restaurant, you can never fit the amount of necessary parking unless we rethink how we want to park the Boulevard through shared parking models, or just flat-out changes to the, our level of requirements in recognition of modern transit approaches, and the fact that we do have significant neighborhood and residential demand just beyond the corridor, right? We've got people, we've got residents that want to come to these businesses, but they don't want to go to an old mattress store, they don't want to go to an auto body, they don't want, certainly don't want to go to a vacant building or an old preschool that's been boarded up for 10 years. They want to go to something that provides life and energy that's pedestrian-oriented. And until we really look at how we park the Boulevard and allow those uses to revitalize the space, we're going to be stuck with the exact same corridor you see today. We've done a great job changing and improving the things we can control, our public spaces, we've thrown money at businesses, the storefronts look better, but at the end of the day, we need to allow the right uses, and we need to match the uses to what our community ultimately wants to see occur along the Boulevard. And that's, I think, where we want to focus our efforts with this plan.
Well, exactly, and I totally agree with everything, Mike, I think, allowing for office space, I think relaxing the parking requirements, and finding, this is the kind of things the city can do to help, help the process along. You know, and I, I'm sensitive to Aviation Boulevard, but I think it might be too much to bite off to do Artesia and Aviation, we may, we may want to start with Artesia and see how we go, I don't, I don't mean to exclude Aviation, but it's a lot to bite off, both, both those corridors, and, and the other thing, as far as it goes with the Galleria, I just don't see people going to the Galleria and being done with whatever they're doing and go, hey, now let's go over to Artesia Boulevard. I really see Artesia Boulevard as being an opportunity to be something extremely unique and wholly different than people who are going to more of a mall-like atmosphere. And there's tremendous amount of opportunity there, and I've been, I've been living this since I've been on this council, and it's just stall, 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 and a bunch of time spent on changing the name, it's very frustrating. So, but I'm excited about this, this is a great report, I think it's a great process that we're now embarked on, and, and we have a great opportunity to, to make, make another huge next step. And to throw cold water on the entire thing, there was a bill up in Sacramento this last session, luckily it died in the Assembly Local Government Committee, to require, not just allow, to require cities to rezone commercial districts for 15 residential units per acre. Require it. Now, it was passing, our state senator, Ben Allen, voted for it. People need to get with Ben Allen and Almert Succi and tell him to stop voting for these bills to undo all this work we're doing to better our communities, and it just goes along with everything, there were 10 bills up there, and this is one of them, and we had to pay attention to them, it was part of the, the resolution we passed and we sent up there, and it wasn't a choice, it wasn't that it allows, like one of the other bills, but SB, SB 1185 required it. And it's, it's just no joke, I, I pulled it up while I was listening to you guys, and summary, enact the Neighborhood Homes Act. And in that is, housing development meets or exceeds the minimum default, where does it say? 15 units per acre for an incorporated city within a non-metropolitan county, and for an unincorporated area, non-metropolitan, 20 units per acre for suburban jurisdictions, and 30 units per acre for jurisdiction in a metropolitan county. These are all very complex bills, they can just be changed with one amendment at the, at the last three days of the session, so, you know, they could, they, they could undermine everything we're doing here with a bill next year. So, just so everybody knows, what's going on in Sacramento could undermine, just like they undermined our work with the ADUs, it could undermine all this work we're doing with the Artesia Boulevard corridor and, and Aviation Plan. So, you know, I, I just can't stress enough that people need to contact their state reps, which is State Senator Ben Allen and State Assembly Member Almert Succi, tell them, stop already, that, you know, we, we're embarked on these huge planning efforts and the state's funding some of the planning efforts we're doing. And then they undo them. So Sacramento needs, needs to give it a rest and all that. So, the other thing I did notice, there was no traffic study, but maybe there isn't one required, but I am curious how many car trips there are down Artesia Boulevard in Aviation a day, you know, do we know that even, the total number of car trips?
I do. It's about, it's about 25,000 a day.
Down Artesia?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Hawthorne, Hawthorne has about 40 to 45,000, Artesia is about 20 to 25.
Is Aviation about the same?
Aviation's a lot less than that, I think that's in there like the 17, 18,000.
Okay.
There was, there was a study that was done in the Golden Hills area that did look at both the, that corner there, the Aviation and Artesia corner, they did counts there, so they, they were able to project that, so, I'm giving you rough numbers, I don't have those right up there.
Yeah. Yeah. Does that sound about right, Sean?
Yeah, I was looking at the circulation element for late, at least back then, probably not a whole lot different. But that sounds about right.
Close enough. I was just, you know, I know we don't need a full blown traffic study. Good to know those volumes. Given comparison, it's eighty thousand cars a day both ways. Some PCH around Arondo and PCH. You can pull those up on Caltrans. Anyway, yeah, I turn it over and just say, we should probably continue this to the next meeting, continue to discuss it, that everything before we send, send them off. And I think any resolution we do should include in there, there will be no residential development. At least it's just a resolution, just to set the tone. I mean, you know, that's the feelings of the G-PAC, and I think that's the feeling of the community, that this should be our commercial area, where people go, they have their local services met, and people come from outside, enjoy the area, and we generate some, some revenue for the city, as opposed to residential, which is, which is a revenue drain. So with that, let me look at my panelist, council member Grant.
Thank you. So first and foremost, I want to say thank you to this council. This was monies that we set aside to put through the G-PAC and then come up with this, to specifically look at the corridor. And I think that was a wise thing for us to do back in 2017. Sean and Brandy, your teams have done a fantastic job leading this whole charge and working with our consultants. And I think our staff's just done a fantastic job. Very impressed. I've only read this document probably four times as it's gone through its iterations. And I have to say, I'm probably going to read it five more times before we're all done with all of this. But it's been a lot of work from those folks. You then have the G-PAC taking a look at it and bringing in recommendations, and then the planning commission as well. Plus, we had quite a few folks in the area and residents that wanted to chime in. So this has been a very much of a collaborative effort. It has been something where we are way beyond where we've been before. And this is, I think, the first real document that we've had to, to put some planning and effort and thinking into what we can actually do. When we start to look at what Mike Wazansky was talking about, as far as the frustration of these businesses or the buildings not being able to generate enough revenue to pay the price for it. For instance, the four point one million dollar price tag that was put on the, the two four oh one and twenty-four hundred and twenty-four oh, whatever, the true value hardware area. You have to have a business that can absorb that, plus the tenant improvements, and be able to pay that back over five years, or over thirty plus years, and pay their salaries. Which means it drives a lot of cars. And you just, you certainly can't do that. And that's been the frustration this whole time, is that with these high prices, the business or the developer that needs to come in there, they do need to make that investment back. They're not doing this for charity. And again, it is a problem. And that is why you start to have that. But you also start to find about in the texture, the, I guess, the flavor of the, the Artesia and Aviation corridors, is that the businesses themselves, the owners of the property, but also the businesses themselves are disjointed. There is no center. There is no, hey, boy, the boy, you know, there's a couple of businesses that can band together. When you compare them to the Riviera Village, it's not fair. And I'll just say it's not fair because that bid was an association for eight to ten years before the bid actually came. And they still fight. They still go through, and they're very intimate with each other. And it's a, it's a very tight circle. It doesn't have people driving thirty-five to fifty-five miles an hour through it. It's not stretched out one point eight miles from, from Inglewood all the way to Aviation, and then another mile or so down to Aviation. You don't have all these businesses struck around. To say that to just put in a bid, why don't we just do that? That's a tough thing because you have to get people to buy in. You have to take a look at it, and you have to have leadership that goes there. And it needs to be, as Stephen said, needs to be led by the businesses. There was a preliminary study done on the business, on the bid. And what we did is with the calculation that was done by the city, was you take all of the businesses that are there with the same formula that the RVA uses, which is essentially equal to your, your business license, plus a little bit of an extra that goes in with the, the number of employees that you have. And that was how much you pay into a bid, if that were to be the case. Did the work, they did the calculation. It generates eighty thousand dollars a year. That's still not a lot, because the businesses are small. They have small footprints. They don't generate a lot of money. The RVA generates about eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Okay, that's their budget that they have to put into marketing to do all those things. And they've been doing that over and over, and they've been able to actually fanned on the money that they've generated. They've been able to save and then start to use the bigger pools. That's what you're talking about, is trying to now look at, hey, what can we actually do for a stretch of road that's about one point eight miles long? Plus Aviation, if you even, that's with Aviation getting that eighty thousand dollars. Not a lot of money to spend from a bid standpoint. You have two problems with this bid. You have to have leadership and someone who is going to be able to lead that, and you have, you have the amount of money that you're going to be able to spend once you get there. And what you're going to find with a bid is that once you start paying into it, once these businesses start doing that, they want their business, they want their business prominent, they want something solid that they can see, is a whole lot different. Lastly, the NRVBA is mostly, and I'll say mostly, their members are not folks that actually own a business on Redonda Beach, the people that go to the meetings and participate. And one of the stipulations in a bid, you have to have a business inside of the area, which means you have to have a brick and mortar business and be there. And that's not who the NRVBA has been, okay? Might be something where it can expand, or we can actually start to get people to do that. But that's, these are some of the issues that are going on. These are not by any means excuses as to why it's not happening, but this is just the reality that we have when we're starting to look at bids down there. So when you start to look at those kind of things, you can kind of say, hell, it's a simple solution, let's just create a bid. But you have to look at the area, what you're really talking about. The best example that we can think about of Artesia Boulevard is what's happening down in, in Long Beach on Second Street. And Second Street actually has a number of wonderful restaurants. They've got bars, they've got retail, they've got all these things, and a kind of a lively livelihood down there that's attractive. That's kind of what Bill was talking about when you're saying, look, we have the Galleria, we don't need to have the Galleria just kind of spill out onto Artesia Boulevard. It needs to be something different. But if we start to look at second, or second, Second Street on, in Long Beach, start to realize, most of the parking is inside of the streets. There's not a lot of parking there. I mean, and it is not a place that is just, you know, there's, there's one or two parking structures around. But for the most part, it's a tough, tough place to get. But that would be the example that we would have to look at. And I have to say that that's something that you can actually start to look at as far as what do they do for parking? How do, what do their ordinances look like? Have they just said, hey, park wherever you can from the businesses and go for it? Maybe that's something that we need to look at. But start to look at those things. And that's the, that's the real issue that we look at. I've walked the Boulevard a number of times with some of our parking consultants. There's some identifications where, hey, maybe we can put in some parking, some larger parking spots. We've actually looked at some of the parking structures so that if we were to put in a parking structure, we could have restaurants that want to come in, they can actually rent spaces in that, so that they are meeting their requirements and things like that. That also costs a lot. It's a lot of investment inside of being able to buy that, and how do you pay that back? A while back, we even looked at putting in parking meters all the way up and down Artesia Boulevard to try to pay for some of this. Again, does that solve it? Well, it sounds like, you know, Sean basically says that we're not even using all the parking that we have. The last part about parking is, a lot of these folks, they've been neighbors for a long time, these businesses, and they do not want people parking behind their store that are not going to their store, restaurant, or business. Okay? So you have to start to really change that culture. And those are the issues that we're dealing with on Artesia Boulevard. Now, I want to see those things. I want to do all these things. But the idea is, we have to, we have to be very clear about what Artesia Boulevard is. And that's what we have. One of the things that I would say, and I'll just kind of say this from, from the last part, is Aviation and Artesia Boulevard, as, as we said, it's a prominent hub, is something that's going to be there. I do think, and I think it's been said a couple of times here, I think the game changer is the overflow and spill of what the Galleria does. Now, means that we can plan, we can do some of the things that Mike Wazansky was talking about as far as, hey, maybe we change the parking requirements to enable folks to want to be able to do that. They can go and buy these businesses and start to look at that, and then we can change them at another time. Look at Culver City, how they did it at one point. They used the, the set of fees to be able to say, look, we're going to allow any restaurant that wants to come in, they can actually have X, Y, Z parking, parking issues not have to be part of it. And they basically did that for a five-year period. They brought in the restaurants, and then they started to be able to generate that traffic and all that. And then they built their parking lots using the funds that they had. I know that those funds aren't available to us right now, but the idea is, maybe we look at something like that. And those are the, those are the things that I'd like to really talk about as far as, how do we allow businesses like restaurants and the offices that we want to go in, how do we get them there? And it's about parking. It really is. So, anyway, I'm very, very impressed with the work that has been done. And I think we've got a lot to do. This is just one step. This, this document here is a great blueprint, but it's got some real work to be done. So I'll just say, I, I agree, there's not a lot we're going to be able to do tonight. I know we're going to talk about things, have some questions. I do think we bring this back next, next week, and talk about it a little bit more, and see if we can get some more folks to come in and talk about it at a, a different level as well. But I think we're, we're, we're getting towards the final stage of this document, and now the real work starts to begin. So thanks. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Council member MD.
So, a couple of questions. Is office demand really still the same now that we've had the pandemic? Because that office demand was, was done before the pandemic. And I know that a lot of companies are saying that they don't plan on going back to their offices at all, that, that doing, doing telecommuting has been actually great. So what, I don't even know how you could even answer that question, because we don't know until the pandemic's over.
I think you're right. When it comes to just office in general, we have, you know, still seeing the interest in the medical office, which is kind of a subset of office. And, you know, so I think that that's, you're right. It's gonna, it may change, shift and change in what office looks like in the future. But definitely, you know, medical office has not been slowing down the interest for that.
If you, and, and the problem with that is if you start focusing on medical office, or just say office in there, you've got to be careful, because just like we have a lot of auto retailers, before it used to be, when, when Matt Kilroy was here, everybody was upset about there being so many discount stores, you know, the Goodwills and the Salvation Armies were there. And so we had, we put in something that said they weren't allowed to be within a certain amount of feet of each other. You got to be careful that you don't start aggregating a bunch of, of one use that isn't going to produce sales tax or the goals that we want to, to get people to be there. So I'm, I'm not quite sold on, on office, just to put in office. Now, if it's strategically put in between restaurants or public spaces together, so that it's a synergy, that's much more interesting to me than just saying, oh, we're going to allow offices. So when you're, when you're looking at what the uses are, we have to discuss, so maybe some kind of parameters in which you, you say, just like you did with other uses, that it can't be within, you know, certain storefronts of each other. If there's a combined use, you could do it. So for example, the, the twenty-five hundred, the Goodnight mattress and the other sort that's empty. You know, what I, I would see is that, are those two different owners, or are they the same owner?
Two different owners.
Yeah.
So I would go to them in this, in this context and say, if you guys are willing to share parking, and the uses are opposite, for example, a restaurant with medical might, might work as a, as, as an offset for each other, you know, then we'd be willing to, you know, look at other opportunities. Something like that. Does that even make sense? Is that even possible?
Yeah. Council member MD, I mean, that's, to be quite honest, our office is exactly doing that. Elizabeth has been working with both the Beauty College and the Goodnight Mattress folks to see if there's an opportunity to do a parking share agreement between those two properties. They really have to cooperate, because like you said, they have to be opposite uses in terms of the times. But also, when you look at the case studies, even if you were to combine those spaces, we still end up being short in terms of parking, even if we are able to get those parking areas combined. And I think that's why you're hearing so much focus on the relaxation of the parking standard. Because even though we are working with them and have been actively working with them to see if there's a way to figure that out, even when you combine those, we still don't achieve the levels we need to allow some of the uses to occur. But we are doing those things. So, and in fact, for that very property, we're actually engaged in conversations with both of those businesses and property owners.
And, and just to make sure we're understanding, releasing, reducing parking requirements will work if we're trying to market to the neighborhood around it, so that we encourage them to go walk to it. If you're, if you're inviting people in from out of town, that won't work, because then you're just putting in a burden to the neighborhood. But as long as we're focused on trying to market to the actual neighborhood, there's plenty of demand there, correct? If I'm understanding the way this, this, the presentation was. So one of the first premises was that the lots were too shallow and too expensive. But yet, you want the owners to provide public space. And we don't want them to go too high and far. So has anyone done the math to see if this is a pie in the sky calculation, or is this actually feasible?
Well, with the public open face, for example, we, we'd have to couple that with a reduction in parking required. So we.
That's a given. That's a given. But just, but bar, plus, plus the amount of space, the reduced parking, and public space now. So the parking, you were, you were making them do parking before, and they weren't able to make it work. And so now you want them to do public space and make it work. How, how does that math work?
Well, it really hinges on how much parking we're going to require. And are we going to start, let's say, you know, look, we, we know we have available parking in the street right in front of it, you know, right, right on the Boulevard. But none of those spaces are allowed, are allocated towards that use. So, you know, there's, there's opportunities to, to capitalize on the underutilized parking. There's available, there's, there's a, there's a, a pool of parking that we can credit these businesses for, that would help offset, plus relaxing the parking standard itself for it. So you, you won't have as much need for as much square footage of land for parking areas for that same square footage of business.
If I could add a phrase to that, the answer is, we're looking at studying, and, and one thing we need to make very clear, we don't, next steps require us to do some additional environmental analysis. We can't just come back to you with five code amendment changes that say, we want to take parking requirements for retail uses from, you know, whatever it is, one per two hundred and fifty square feet to one per five hundred. We can't do that without study. So please understand that all of the next steps require further environmental analysis before we can implement. And we have to study cumulative impacts of all of the things we're contemplating as well. We, we should put that on the record. But when we talk about parking changes or regulation changes, we're talking about flexibility, and not just potentially reduction, but flexibility. How can we get to the spaces in front of the businesses that are public parking, right? How can we get to shared parking models that allow businesses within certain proximities of one another to trade or share spaces, right? How do we utilize whatever excess parking we've provided along the corridor to advantage certain businesses? Whether maybe they're, maybe they're paying into a parking pool, and they're parking their employees there, and thereby freeing up whatever is onsite for their customers. So how do we account for the fact that a lot of our, our patrons are walking or ride sharing to these locations? Our standards don't really account for any of those concepts today. So it's not just, I wouldn't, I, I, reduction might be warranted, but it's really flexibility that I think we want to. but it's really flexibility that I think we want to study more so than anything else. Um, because we've got to be more creative in how we, uh, ultimately park these new uses. Because whether it's medical office or more desirably, uh, sit-down restaurant, uh, we, we just, we have to find a way to, to, to get them to success.
I, I agree. And I, I, so far I haven't heard anybody really dispute the whole parking flexibility type, type of, um, argument. I, I think we're okay with that. My question is, is it, I think it's, it, it, I, without seeing the math of it, if, okay. If you, one of the problems you're telling me is that the lots are small, then they require too much parking. So if you require a hundred square feet of parking and you take that away because we're going to do flexible or do some other kind of thing, how is telling them to put in a public open space, a hundred square feet of open space, going to solve their problem if you don't give them more FAR?
Yeah, I don't think-
Do that math?
Yeah, no, totally understand your question. I don't think, uh, it, to put that in some context, when we talk about creating additional public open space, we don't necessarily mean, uh, lot commitments to public open space. We mean using parklets, streetlets, uh, perhaps projects that have some shared frontage for synergies. I don't think we're looking at a, a forced standard of allocation. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean or Brandy, but I, I, when we talk public open space, I think we're not talking about dedic, land dedication necessarily. We're talking about sort of activity nodes and more creatively using our own right of way.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's certainly like what those, those streetlets are about. It's, it's about creating that space, the, the municipality creating that space that the businesses are going to benefit from rather than the businesses having to provide it on their properties.
Well, we actually, actually, we have that standard already in our mixed use zone, the public usable open space. Um, and that's, we're looking at, at also adding that to these commercial zones in certain areas of the, of the, uh, of the corridor. Now, how we implement it, um, it, it could be, you know, it, it could be an opportunity for an incentive. You know, it becomes an incentive. If they do it, they get a bigger break on something else. And it's small scale. You know, if you look at our mixed use zone, you're talking about areas that are just additional frontage being added that's 10 feet wide, let's say. Um, and, and there's no other dimension to it. Just that we just increase that, that actives, that potentially active space, add that to the sidewalk width, for example. That could be, that's the kind of private, public, open space.
As a, but as a trade, right, Sean?
But yeah, it's as a trade.
As an in lieu, or not as a forced dedication. I mean, that's the key phrase here.
Yes.
Not demanding it necessarily, but we're looking to trade it.
And it would be, and it, and it would be, you know, under certain criteria, it would have to be larger lots, right? So we would put a threshold that's similar to what we do in the mixed use zone. It's a, it's a minimum lot size, you know, kick in as a, as maybe a requirement or maybe just, uh, and, you know, A, if you do it, if you're over this size of lot and you add, you know, you provide so many square feet or area of public usable open space will reduce your parking requirement by a couple of spaces, something to that effect. You know, however, we start to play those, use those tools to create some of these spaces that'll activate, give more activation to the corridor and energy.
Um, okay, thank you. I agree with, uh, the blight fee. I think that's a good idea. Um, I do know, well, I should say, the word on the street is that, uh, that, um, that nursery that's been shut down for so long and the owners just use it as storage, they're waiting for the glass store next door to decide to retire, go out of business. And so, because they're, they're hoping that they will combine their lots and, and sell it to something bigger and better. And so they're just sitting on it and they've been sitting on it for years. Ten, at least 10 years that they've been sitting on it. I, yeah, I have no problem with, with a blight fee on that. Um, and then I, I do understand that, um, we're running out of time and I, and I do think this needs to have, be discussed, but I don't want to keep delaying it. What, what could we give you? And you said you're coming back with studies anyway. What could we direct you to do now to, to kind of move things forward as we're, but we still want to kind of tweak it and be able to discuss it further and, and more in depth?
Well, well, maybe I'll answer that.
Yeah.
We have to come back to you with proposals on, uh, subsequent analysis, both for the environmental components of any potential municipal code amendment we want to study and perhaps consider. Uh, this parking application is going to require some subsequent work, but we've got to come back to you with cost estimates and proposed service contracts, um, at least conceptually before we can actually engage in that work. So we've got to give you a, I think, a, a sense of scale, uh, from a fiscal standpoint, uh, before we can execute that. So really the direction we need, whether you, whether you approve the plan tonight or want to talk about it at a subsequent hearing, and we're, we're certainly, we certainly agree that this deserves full due deference. And that's why we wanted to give you that option to continue the hearing because this is a, an important item. But you, if you, as a part of the motion, continue the hearing and give us direction to come back with some of, uh, at least that evaluative work, we can better inform what it's going to take for us, uh, both staff resource-wise and, uh, budgetarily to really begin to study these proposed, uh, code amendment concepts.
Could I also then, um, in that proposals, so be cost estimates, sense of scale and perhaps stages? Something we could do, something we could do to, to kind of get the whole plan done, but do it in stages, uh, to provide us flexibility as, as markets change. I want to be able to change things up. So for example, before the pandemic, we thought office was the, was the way to go, but now it might not be. So I want to, I want to see what we could be doing in stages to kind of react to the market as well.
Yeah, we can, we could try to give you some flexibility. I, I can tell you that might be easier said than done in the notion that we do have an environmental duty under what to, to study cumulative impacts, right? As we evaluate these changes. So what we, we have to be careful in, in what that quote project scope entails. Um, we can't build in ultimate flexibility from an environmental standpoint. So we, we can, we can come back to you and, and we can tell you, we'd like to focus our work effort on the following items. We can study those collectively, maybe implement those. And we could start nodding towards the future as it relates to what we might want to do after that, um, as a next item. But, um, we, we've got to be sensitive to that CEQA requirement.
The streetlets, um, thank you. The streetlets on the maps were on streets that had streetlights. And I'm pretty sure that the G-PAC said, don't put the streetlets where the streetlights are. And so I just want to point that out, that we need to change that map and figure out other places to put those streetlets.
Well, G-PAC, G-PAC didn't say that, that was a planning-
Planning commission, yeah.
Right.
But we're, we're that-
God has always said it.
Yeah, right, but we, we're that, you know, we went through and, and, and we pointed out that these are just examples of locations and what we took in, like, it is not set in stone that those are the intersections. I think it was because of those, you know, what was selected that, that, you know, as, as examples that, um, that they, uh, said, well, let's not put it where there are the streetlights. So, um, you know, it, it could be just like, start evaluating which intersections would be best while taking into consideration the planning commission's recommendation.
Um, right, and, and also what's around that area. So for example, McKay might be great, but there's a school right there. There's already kind of an open space thing, um, as opposed to other places it might be, uh, a better use of it. And, um, I definitely don't want to wait for the Galleria. That could be four, five years. I haven't heard from them at all. Who knows when they're going to be coming along? And in the meantime, we, we can't keep waiting. Um, and, and, and in respect to FAR, I don't want to just blanket give, increase FAR. It's, it's gotta be, it, because all the, the only person that's going to benefit from that is the, those owners that have been sitting there on this property and doing nothing anyway. Um, is, is there a way to do, to, to only give FAR if they get it approved? Is there some kind of mechanism we can use that it actually benefits the real owner that's actually doing the improvements?
Um-
That's a good question.
Yeah, you'd have to look at it, again, this is part of CEQA. You'd have to study perhaps the trade-off component, right? Back to Sean's point about open space dedications or if maybe they were to build, um, shared parking facilities that could be used by other businesses. You, you could, you could study the incentive program, but you can't, you can't selectively go out the incentive. You, you're going to have to create a set of objective criteria-
Right.
Standardize that approval consideration as you evaluate that. And then, um, you, you could perhaps contemplate it, but, um, yeah, that's-
And-
It's going to take some subsequent analysis.
And, and to address the, the FAR and, and why G-PAC went from the point five to point six is we'd actually received some feedback from a broker saying, that's where that threshold is of getting a tenant, not getting a tenant. So it, I think that's why they were looking at that, just a slight increase. It's not going to like make, you know, make it blow up. And now the property owner that's held on their property is going to go, oh, I'm going to make, you know, bank on this. But it's more about being able to bring in the tenancy that you need, um, you know, to, to keep it, the area active. And so that was where that point six recommendation came from.
Okay.
And to be clear, just if I could add one more, one more comment on that. The FAR right now, I mean, when we evaluate these case studies, when Stephen and Elizabeth and, and Brandy and Sean and, and our counterstaff are talking to prospective tenants of these spaces, it, it, square footage isn't usually the problem. It's, it's just the way the square footage drives the parking obligations. That's the problem. And it's, nobody's coming in saying, I, I want to build, you know, there are some, right? You know, you've got some Montecito concepts, you've got some, I want to do second floor office, I want to do something bigger. You've got some of that, but, you know, we're, we're, we've had a lot of interest from more organic customers or, or concepts, but we can't get them over the hurdle almost exclusively because of parking. And that's why I don't, I don't think we need to have the big FAR conversation just yet. We have lower hanging fruit. That, that's why you keep hearing me drill that point.
Yeah, and I think that, that the FAR will come back when you get that general plan update and the recommendations on that, you know, bigger, uh, recommendations on that land use. Um, that'll be, you know, that's why in here it was more like, this is where the, what the G-PAC was interested in, but it's not saying do one thing or another. Um, I think that you're going to, like, that's where you're going to make that decision is going to be in that general plan update.
It's good to know that that's what the Realtor said that you needed a point five to point six. That's good to know, number one. Number two, I much prefer to work on the parking and keep the FAR low. And, um, number three, I, when I say, what can we do to not incentiv, to not just incentivize sell-offs? Um, I guess I was envisioning the same way we have the residential guidelines. This is the FAR and if you do X, Y, Z, we will allow the FAR to go up. And then that way we get what we want. And we don't have anybody coming in and, and buying stuff up, just calculating point six right away. No, 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 you only get that if you do X. And, um, and so I, I would, I would like to, if that's possible, that's what I would like to see because then we can truly drive what we want to be in there. Um, and then, and then I, I would like to have, make sure there's some focus on whether it's in the parklets or area is on, is definitely on art, on making sure there's public art of some kind. There's a, there's, there's examples all over the place of, um, like, uh, New Mexico has the Neon District. There's, there's different areas that they call themselves a certain district. And, and so I would like to see Artesia Boulevard do that. You could, you know, like Orhan Tanner said, you know, make it, you know, Art-Eja. And, or, you know, something that encourages monthly art fairs or something along those lines. I love that idea. Um, and then you're, when you're looking at your uses, also maybe not necessarily just focus on sales tax revenue, although you should for a lot of it. Um, but instead of office, I'd like to see maybe encouragement of galleries or something along those lines that give people something to go do and see and, and, and participate in as well. So, and I know we have a lot of service on there already. I think there's yoga for kids and there's all kinds of, there's Pilates, there's, there's, uh, karate all up and down that, that, that place, but something that might be kind of a good mix on that. And that, and I think that's it. So I'd love to hear, uh, from the public and I'd love to hear from our other people, but if we, but I don't mind continuing as long as we give them some direction to move forward. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath.
Yeah, um, I, I will try to make my comments and questions as quickly as possible. Um, so, uh, let me just quickly piggyback off of something that, uh, Councilwoman Embiid was just saying there. And I, and I agree, actually, I think there ha, and I think Mike was also saying this as well. There has to be an enormous amount of flexibility built into whatever it is we put forward. Because as John mentioned earlier, this is a blueprint that's hopefully going to serve us over the next 20 years. And, uh, and Sean made a comment earlier tonight, you know, about, uh, reading some old NRBBA comments from the seventies or the eighties, uh, and not much has changed, right? So they were clearly expressing concerns back then that we're expressing now, but not much has changed since then. And that's my biggest fear is that, uh, and, and my, while, while I think this is an awesome start and a great foundation, I think it's a little bit weak and doesn't go far enough. And that's just my perspective and I'll, I'll, I'll try to explain that, uh, a little bit. Um, but I, I, I don't want this to, uh, to, to just kind of sit here and, and never see anything happen. So I, I do agree with, with Mike, you know, this is a great way to start organically and focus on fixing things that we realize, uh, are impeding us from being able to generatively create, um, change, uh, that, that we can actually do in, in the short term. Uh, but in the, in the longer term perspective, um, and when I say I don't think it goes far enough, this is where I'll, I'll actually disagree with the mayor. Um, you know, we, uh, I'm on the AES Subcommittee with him and Councilmember Lowenstein. We did these, these breakout sessions about the, the AES site. And, uh, it was extremely educational, informative. And, and one of the things that, you know, we learned is that when people want to make, you know, big investments, uh, you, you look at all the numbers of all the different types of uses of things they could do or build or create, and, uh, and they all come with, uh, with, you know, different returns on investment. And, uh, and clearly housing is, is one of those things that, that changes the, you know, the game for, for anybody willing to make larger investments. What we have here on Artesian Aviation, right, is an extremely piecemeal scenario. And that, that's one of our, our challenges, right? It, it's, it's piecemeal properties, they're not all, um, the same size. They're all different, different, uh, different lengths, uh, uh, depths. Um, and, and I think it, it creates a situation, you know, aside from the economics and the, the absentee landlords and, and all the other things that we can talk about, uh, it, it creates a, a scenario where we're, we're hoping that individual property owners might do something transformative with their property. And I think that's, that's a challenge. I, I don't know that they can actually do that. And, and I think where there's more opportunity, and maybe it's in these, um, you know, the zones that have been identified by, uh, by staff and, and the G-PAC, uh, you know, uh, maybe, maybe it's, you know, really focusing on those zones, uh, in, you know, in, in the short term. And when I say short term, I mean like the next, you know, two to 10 years, uh, where, where something transformative can happen. But I think to do that, you need to aggregate properties and you need to allow somebody to come in and be able to do something that's a bit more generative. Now, to the, to the mayor's comment earlier, does that have to be big? Not necessarily, but, um, but I think limiting ourselves to just Artesia and the properties on Artesia versus going out to Vanderbilt and going out to Matthews and looking at, uh, at this area as being a full block, you know? Uh, from Artesia to Matthews, Artesia to Vanderbilt, uh, and allowing there to be, whether it's horizontal mixed use, which I know is something that, you know, is thrown about as a positive, uh, usually. Is thrown about as a positive, usually, the Riviera is horizontal mixed use. And if you were to allow somebody to, to aggregate properties and do something that includes. Densifying, I guess, existing residential. But that, that, that actually going back to a comment, I can't remember if it was John or Laura that made it, you know, how do you create open space? It was Laura that said it, right? How do you, you can't, I, I don't know how you create open space on these tiny fragmented parcels, right? But if somebody aggregated. Multiple parcels or an entire block and was able to densify, not necessarily, go up a little bit higher. And, and create more open space, you know, there's something where you can actually create parks or parklets, not just public plazas or. Or whatnot, you know, and, and then you could have the, the appropriate mixes for restaurants or, or office or whatever it is that, that is actually going to, to work. You know, I don't know that we can ever really make that determination. What I can say, and Laura kind of alluded to, is that residents. This is supposed to be for the residents. And when you look at the diagram of the, what can be done from a complete streets perspective. It shows that Artesia really can be a main street. It'll have a totally different charm than Riviera Village, and it, and it definitely won't be the Galleria. We don't want it to be the Galleria. But it is our main street. And, and I think there's, there's an enormous amount of charm. In creating that, and the residents do want to interact with Artesia. And aviation in a way that the, the people in District One get to interact with the village. I've heard it, I mean, I don't know if my, my colleagues in District Four and Five hear it, but I hear it from District Three, and we're actually. Blocks off, you know, you have to cross Grant and then, you know, another six blocks to get to Artesia, but they want to walk there. They want to engage with, they want to, you know, push the stroller and go out to eat, you know, and people in my neighborhood, where do they go? They go to Hermosa. Because it's, it's the same distance, right? Like to get the pure app. So. So I, I, I think we, you know, and I know that this is, you know, the things I'm bringing up, and we can explore that further in, in maybe a continued conversation. But in the, I do have a question, in the funding aspects, you know, we talk about a bid and. And I, and I just want to say, you know, from a historical perspective, when I served on the NRBBA back in. You know, in, in the early part of this, this past decade. Bill Workman came and met with the executive board to talk about. You know, he was kind of already thinking about, hey, we're, we've got the waterfront moving forward, and that's going to be the next thing. We want to focus on Artesia. And, and there, there was some movement, and then it just kind of died because Bill ended up moving on, you know, for lack of a better way to. Describe that situation. And, and, and so things just kind of died, and, and a bid was discussed. Just so everybody understands, back then, it was, it was, but it was kind of the latter phase. It was like, let's focus on the branding. Let's focus on, you know, changing the name. And, and then let's focus on, on, on trying to create a bid, but it wasn't creating a bid, as John mentioned, for the entire corridor. It was trying to focus on maybe one area. Like, let's see if we can get, you know, a few blocks to, to come together and do that. And, and back then, you know, when Clark was running the NRBBA, he was actually a property owner and a business owner on Artesia, and, and he was kind of that. That driving force behind that. And I think something could have happened, but, you know, think, a lot of things have changed since then. But in the funding stuff, we, we don't talk about. An EIFD, and I was just wondering, you know, so we, we've talked about an EIFD in, you know, for the AES site. And when we look at what EIFDs can do, I'm just, you know, this is to Mike or Stephen. Could, could an area like Artesia become an EIFD? And would that even be something we would want to pursue as a, one, one of many funding strategies?
Well, maybe I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Stephen, but I think if. If the goal was to, back to your earlier comment, Councilman, regarding possibly changing the right of way. Skinny up the median, installing bike lanes, relocating parking to broader structured locations, you know, by node. If that were the ultimate goal, then you have the public infrastructure that you're really targeting. To finance, right? You, you've got the identified expenditure and, and then you're going out and using the EIFD to help you get there. If. As a longer term concept, I think that's an option. But as a shorter term concept, it doesn't do much for us, right? It, it takes, it sequesters money, there's not necessarily a clear use for it. I think we might be better served to, to look at a more specific parking district. That has a very clear focus. Then to, to broaden that. I don't know, Stephen, if you've got some other thoughts on that.
No, I, I, I mean, look, the, the reality is, is you can form an EIFD over any district you so choose. It's just what are the challenges and what are the benefits to forming the district, right? So, you know, initially, when you form the district, you're sequestering those general fund proceeds to be used just in that location. So you sort of have a, a short term hit to the general fund because of the way the property taxes would be, would sort of be set up. But the whole idea behind it, just like old redevelopment is, as properties turn, as value increases. You know, you're capturing that tax increment over that base year, that's not flowing to the general fund anymore, it's flowing into this particular district. Probably the biggest challenge is, is you would have to deal with some kind of a vote of all the property owners within that district. And so it would be, you know, the political challenge in my mind would be just as equally as large. I mean, you've got property owners today who don't seem to want to do anything or invest money into their property. And while this doesn't require a new tax, you're really just capturing increment above a base. You still have to fight that notion that somehow they're being separated apart and something different than what's happening in the rest of the city. But, I mean, as a pure technical matter, there's, you can form a district in, in an area like this. As Mike was saying, you'd have to define what the improvements are and, and kind of come up with. You know, an infrastructure improvement plan like we were, we were pursuing with AES, with the EIFD there. Is you have to put some kind of a plan together so you understand what those proceeds are going to be used for. But there's, you know, it, it has its challenges, but you certainly can do it. It's just probably not the easiest tool in the toolbox to maybe implement. We may be better served with some things that are a little more focused than, you know, sort of a wide EIFD, but.
Well, to Mike's point, I think Mike said, you know, if you start with a parking district, it could be a longer term strategy. I just, you know, when I look at the idea of doing a complete street, you know, like I realized that's going to come with multimillion dollar investment from an infrastructure standpoint. Would it, would it have a dramatic difference on the corridor? Absolutely, but, you know, it's, it's how do you get to that? And, and, and when that, you know, when there at least is some type of stepped plan saying that's maybe where we're headed to. You know, that, that could generate investment from people seeing that this is where we're headed. You know, we're not just going to still kind of be the Artesia Boulevard that it's been for the past forty, fifty years.
And, and to that point, I, I mean, that, that particular concept, that, that active transportation. Sort of model, there are funding sources out there, there are grant sources, there are. You know, transportation restricted tax sources that we could pursue for things like that, if that is the broader, longer term vision. We might not even have to self finance that, per se, there could be ways to supplement that. But back to your comment about the bid and the frustration over the years, and we've all felt it. I, I think it's, it's the nature of this very diverse. Quarter with extremely. Different focuses and priorities, right? You've got almost competing. Property owners there, your service and gas stations have a completely different interest in a bid. Than do your restaurants and pop, and some of your more successful retail spaces. It's such a, it, it's so eclectic, it's difficult to, I think. Get that sort of bid synergy you need to get over the hump on a vote basis. However, I think the focus, if we do target activity nodes, would be maybe bids. Much like we talked about years ago, bids by region, right, within the block. Or within the quarter, because there could be enough shared use and interest. Within a couple of blocks of Artesia where you could get over the electoral hurdle. On a 1.8 mile end to end, as, as, as Councilman Grant pointed out earlier, I, I think we're tilted at windmills there.
Correct, and I, and that's why I brought up the activity nodes, because I think that's, those are the, the main focal points. You, you know, even from an infrastructure standpoint, if, if we focused on, on those in the, in the more immediate sense, right? Then you can kind of, you can almost show people what the vision could be for the remainder of the corridor, you know, and you do it in a step process, but. So, you know, I, I'll just end with this, you know, to, to make it quick here, I think the Kurt Hardware. Location really is, is emblematic of the problem we face, right? And, and so, and it's all spelled out in the document here, but. But, you know, the fact that that has been for sale now, I think it's just over two years and. And multiple people have looked at it, and they, they've gone by the wayside, and it's all because of our stringent parking requirements. And, and, and I know sometimes we get hung up on parking, but I, I really think that that's going to be the primary focus for us is to. Solve that equation, to lessen the requirements, and to figure out how do we create some, some more public parking, you know, situations. And, and try to make things a little bit easier and do some of the things that were brought up by Sean and Brandy. In terms of, you know, things where we can change the CPD, what was it CP2 or? You know, what, some of the allowances that, that we have right now, I mean, those are, those are kind of the baby step incremental things, so. I, I, again, I, I agree with a lot of the things we're, we're talking about here, but I, I think in the, the longer term picture, we definitely. I, I want to document that's flexible enough to allow us to. Not go bigger, but just be bolder in terms of what could possibly be. That the Artesia Corridor is, is unique. And, and it has, you know, in, in many ways, it is already horizontal mixed use. There is tons of density out to the sides of it. If there's a way to incorporate that into it somehow, I think, you know, we, we may be able to see some, some. Broader transformation. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Horvath. Councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Mike, in terms of the interest of the different people, in terms of, you know, a car shop is not going to want to get a bid. They just want to get cars in and out, and that's how they make their money. They don't care if people are strolling or whatever. There's, there is no similarity between that and a restaurant. I would agree, we need to focus in on a theme. I like the idea of Art Asia, I think that's cute, I think it's a great idea. There's nothing around here like that. If you look at a place like, has anybody here been to Miami recently? You look at Windwood, what they did, they took it a very beat down industrial area and made it very hip, it's the cool place to go. I'm not sure that's going to work here, but something like that would make it really neat to draw people in. But I think the winning formula right here is restaurants. Retail is just not going to come back to where it was. Office may or may not come back. If it doesn't come back, that's not the worst thing, because you're still going to have people at home, they're going to want to get out and get lunch. So, you know, you have a lot of residential around there, that's, it's not the worst thing to do that, if you think about it. But, you know, some short term stuff, we can do, you know, things that improve in the physical, like adding banners, like that was mentioned, I believe. We did, we added new streetlights, we can do some more things, whether it's art, we've got a, you know, the John Parsons Public Art Fund to work with. But, you know, as John Grant said, the problem is everything's very disjointed. You have a lot of strip malls with big parking lots. You have parking lots, I'm a little mystified here, I know we have very strict parking. Requirements, but I see a lot of those parking lots are empty, a lot of times. And that, those are areas that I think we can use as, as those streetlets. We could figure out a way to either lease them or something from the owners, because they're sitting empty a lot of times. And I think if we could find a way to have a restaurant district down there. And make it so that there's outdoor dining, we're blessed with five to six months of very nice weather here. And if we could find a way to do that, and where people can go and drop their kids to play and other things like that, that, to me, is a winner. That will bring a lot of people down and strolling. You know, long term, you know, the big physical infrastructure. Changes that we're talking about, one of the things that we haven't discussed tonight, and I don't know if it will impact it or not. Is Prop 15 is on the ballot. And Prop 15 will change the valuation of a lot of resident, of commercial properties. I think it's, the cutoff's three million and higher. But we may be able to take advantage of that if Prop 15 passes, and right now it's leading in the polls. So you're going to see a lot of reassessments on, on commercial properties. We may be able to take advantage of that in what Christian was saying in an EIFD. So I don't, I don't know what will or will not work in terms of, of financing mechanism. But we have to think about this, and, and, you know, what I want us to do is also, as an exercise going forward, is. To not reinvent the wheel. We tend to, you know, look at these studies and say, okay, we're unique. We're really not that unique. John mentioned Second Street in Long Beach. One place that I think about is Brand Avenue in Glendale. And it is a big street, there's, there's, there's. A lot of office buildings run there, but there's a two or three block section that is booming. And one of the reasons it's booming is because of Portos, and Portos, this brings in so much traffic. You know, if we could, if we could attract some type of a anchor type tenant. To, to deal with that and deal with the parking, that would be a real winner and would really revitalize the area. I don't know if it's Portos or not, there's no Portos around here, but I would love to find a way to, to, to bring them here. That, you're talking about sales tax, that place is a mint. That place, every place, Downey, West Covina, every place that Portos is, they make so much money. Off of, off of that. And I'm not sure, you know, on Artesia it'll work or not. But they're in a lot of places, they're on brand, they're in a lot of places, and it's not a big storefront, they have some indoor seating. But you could have a Portos to go, you know, something like that. And I have a contact who knows the Porto family, so we could work on that. So what I, I would think we need to bring back when we come and talk about this is look at other areas and what they've done with similar traffic patterns. Similar landscaping. Sorry, not landscaping, but building types. You know, how they deal with things like car shops versus, you know, dollery versus, you know, laundries. And, and other things, and how they, how they mesh those all in. Culver Boulevard in Culver City is another area, they bring, they have a lot of studio traffic from Sony. But that's a main thoroughfare, and they've managed to make that a really, really great street that people go to. And it's a busy street, and it's big and wide. And they've managed to make it seem smaller than it is. So I think we should look at, you know, places not only in, in Los Angeles, but around the country that have similar setups. So that we can figure out how we can not necessarily reinvent the wheel, we can figure out what they've done right. And what they've done wrong, and, and bring that to Artesia. And I think we can do that in, you know, whatever, however, whatever period of time we can do that in. It would take you guys a couple of months to look at different places, I think we should do that. But I don't want to lose momentum here. And, you know, we've done everything we can so far in terms of improving the, the look of it. But I think, you know, we need to come up with a theme, we need to come up with what's worked in other places. And, and, you know, there's no, imitation's the sincerest form of flattery, let's, let's imitate what other people are doing and figure it out. You know, I think now is the time to do that, and so that's, those are my two cents.
Yeah, and, and to, to add on to that, Councilman, if, if you all wanted to. To, to Laura's point earlier, if you wanted us to continue this hearing to a. Outer date certain to give us more time to package up some of that material, we can do that. And if ideally you, as a companion item, direct us to come back as also part of that. The costing for some of the subsequent environmental and municipal code amendment considerations we need to make. Perhaps we can have, we can, we could stay focused on the more immediate, so we don't lose momentum, and then come back with some of the more. Kind of holistic questions that you just raised as, as part of that subsequent hearing.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. And remember, the pandemic is not going to go on forever, obviously. You know, now's a good time to start planning these types of things, so in a couple of years. We can start maybe implementing some of the things that, that will really make a difference on that street. And then if, you know, the Galleria comes along, great, but I think the Galleria is so far away from it, I don't think, I think they're two separate areas. And I, I would actually agree, aviation is, is too, you know, aviation in Artesia is just too big. Of a bite to chew. We just need to focus in on a few blocks of, of Artesia. And, and if it works, great, then we just keep expanding it. The other thing that I don't know if we can do, and I, I'm pretty sure we can't, but. It would be great to figure out a way to encourage restaurants, whether through tax breaks or something. You know, to encourage those type of uses versus other type of uses. We don't know the properties, but I, I would figure that there's got to be a way to make some type of. And art, art galleries, you know, even some small retails like a T-Mobile or something like that. You know, something that people will stop. Um, you know, something that people will stop because, you know, what what will happen is you'll have, you know, you'll have a uh. A chicken de Jean and then, you know, down the street, you know, and you'll have menchis next to it, but usually you'll have, uh, you know, either a fast food place or you'll have some type of restaurant or bruschettinos. And then there's nowhere to go to for for um, for dessert afterwards. So you got to jump in your car, which doesn't really. Create a really nice feeling for people. You've, you know, what you want is, you know, restaurant after restaurant after restaurant or. You know, dessert place and restaurant and all those type of things. That's what you really, a wine bar or something like that. You know, that, that, one of the problems is everything is so far apart on that street and we got to encourage. You know, like minded businesses to be next to one another. So I don't know how we do that. I really don't.
Well, and and obviously I think some of that would happen organically. Uh, uh, most of these suitors. Hardware space, they they are restaurants. There, there are a lot of restaurateurs that have come to us. This is pre-COVID. Uh, with concepts and they, there's just no way to fit them in. And that's, and that's who we turn away most of the time. So. It, I think it would happen more organically than we might even think, so long as we had more flexible parking requirements.
So do you think that if we did, if we put a lot of public art down there, would that attract people?
Oh, I absolut- absolutely think that would help. I mean, anything, even the placemaking we've done with the median improvements, you mentioned the streetlights earlier. Uh, just those improvements have have created more synergy. The storefront improvement program, while it's very pedestrian. And it's, you know, painting and just some basic cosmetic stuff, that's made a difference in the level of interest along the Boulevard. You know, pre-COVID, there was momentum. We just couldn't get anybody over the, over the hurdle, uh, because we have very stringent requirements. So. Um, you know, I, it's not unreasonable for us, I think, to think about the Boulevard is 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 becoming a bit of a, an attractive restaurant row. That would work with the neighborhood. It it's just that one major impediment.
So why not look at, I mean, there's money in the Public Art Fund, correct?
There is, yeah.
Why don't we look at at, you know, uh, public artworks in the medians? I mean, if nothing else, it improves that when you come into town. People, when they come in and they go to Hermosa or come back and go the other way, they're going to see and they're going to go, wow, this is kind of nice, you know? This is nicer than my drive home.
Well, I think, yeah, what we could add to that follow up hearing and 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 John can fill in some of the details later. You know, we had talked about putting a nice sculpture piece in between the greenbelt areas on Artesia, right? There's a great spot for some, some public art there. There's. There's a num- numerous, numerous opportunities along the Boulevard. So. I think that is a focus that's in the plan. I think we could even give you more. Uh, illustrative examples that are are specific to Artesia concepts uh, as part of the conversation. Um, definitely, I I think everybody here agrees is a good next step for us. But bear in mind, the development funds that we. Um, were approved and the donation to that fund as part of the Galleria project are not yet in the bank.
No, I know that.
Not receive that funding until they actually start to pull permits. So. I I I want everybody to understand what's in that bank is not from the Galleria project yet.
Well, it might be a good time to look at, you know, an accounting of what's in, I don't know what the balances of the uh, the Parsons Art Public Art Fund. But I think that would be a good step in the right direction. You know, one of the things about the decorative lights is, yeah, some people may not even notice, but some people did notice. And, you know, when you start doing little things like that, it starts to create a mindset in people. Instead of just having your, your typical industrial style uh, things and then, then people are like, eh, whatever, you know, it's a highway. When you start uh, doing things where people slow down, they look at art and and look at nice things. They go. Okay, I get it. I start to get it. This is where I want to come and 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 this is where I want to eat. You know, those are the kind of things. And I think Hermosa's done a good job with it on on Pier Avenue. So, um, we should look at the the same type of thing. So, anyway.
You mentioned, you mentioned examples. I think about the, I forget the name of the street and the name of the district, but south of the river there in Austin, there's a great example of that where they've kind of got this weird. Sort of art restaurant row.
Yep.
There's a name for it. I've forgotten it now, but.
Congress.
Cool kitchen, yeah. And it's south, south of the river. It's, it's a kitschy little place that really has its own sense of identity. So.
When you're, when you're looking at places, look at college towns, look at Boulder, look at Ann Arbor, look at these places that are college towns. They do a really good job. Of doing, mixing public art with uh, streetscapes and everything like that. Um, those are the type of places you want to look at. And, you know, Santa Fe, and I mean, I'm not saying we want to do a southwestern theme, but places like that, they do a really good job, these small to medium sized towns. Um, you know, don't look at a big city. Don't look at, you know, don't look at Louisville, for example. That's not Redondo Beach, but look at a, a small. You know, college town and see how they do it. And I think that's a good way of looking. They have thoroughfares that go through and they have done a pretty good job of that. You know, so anyway, that's my two thoughts on it. Two cents on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Nairn.
Thank you, Mayor Rand. Um, yeah, so I mean, you know, if we're going to rename Redondo Beach Boulevard, like the. Number one item here says we should rename it to Manhattan Beach Boulevard, Rodeo, Rodeo View. So that everyone thinks it's Manhattan Beach with a Rodeo Drive. Um, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna upgrade it, let's upgrade it to a really big fantastic name. And then somebody can say, they go, oh, look, it's, it's a great idea. But if you don't think it's a great idea, then why we, why would we ever rename? The street to something else. I mean, it it's like, we're spending a lot of time, money increasing it here. And we need to focus really on what's important. Um, and on that, you know, we have the signage, we have expedited. Expedited permitting, uh, you know, things that I've heard from multiple businesses on on Artesia Boulevard, I've heard complaints from who contacted me is. Permit's taking forever to get approved. And uh, so I I'd be in favor of getting expedited permitting. And not a reduction fees, but just get expedited permitting. And one of the solutions that we have, it is the private permitting that we have moving forward. Um, I I don't think for the signage, you know, let that be business driven. We shouldn't have, we are signage from the city side. The banners and flyers, absolutely, I agree with, have it consistent all the way through. Um, you know, if you look at revitalization all the way through. In different areas, if you, the number one thing that's going to lead revitalization is creating an arts district and the arts. Whether it's street art, it's uh, wall art, it's. Uh, murals, I mean, look at Venice Beach, look at Santa Monica, look at a lot of these places that have revitalized themselves. They start off with an arts district. New York, a lot of these areas are arts districts. Um, it's not going to be adding residential. We have phenomenal density directly around Artesia Boulevard with density. I mean, look what we just did on one night. We just destroyed over a hundred jobs on Fisk Lane to put in thirty six units of residential. And if we add residential to Artesia Boulevard, we're only going to be making. The outflux of traffic in the morning and the influx of traffic in the evening and always be left to stick around during the day. So the parklets is a great idea to activate, um, and moving that forward. So, um, you know, when it comes to far, if you, if you increase the far, you have to increase the parking requirements. So, uh, you're, you have to increase more parking. So. Uh, I, i- if if people along the Artesia Boulevard are okay with. Less parking requirements, then hey, you know what? That that's fine. Go for it. I hear that complaint a lot from businesses. Um, these, uh, let's see, um, I think we need to start with. Small and minor in uh, upgrades and incremental changes that can have large effects. Uh, experiential retail, that's the big verbiage. I mean, retail isn't dead. By no means is, is retail dead. It's, it's changing to experiential uh, activities like REI stores and things like that. I mean, look at. Uh, The Point in El Segundo. Everyone loves that as a great, as a great place. Uh, so it's placemaking and it's place changing and it's place creation. So we need to look at that. Going back to the parklets is, I think is huge. You know, one thing I want to see in this report is we have, I only mentioned it, saw in there one time that we got two million dollars coming to Artesia Boulevard. We got a million dollars for Parsons Fund and a million dollars for general upgrades. And yeah, we don't have it yet, but we should be including that in in the report. One of the things that we, we could use the general million dollars for is, what I'd like to see a report coming back on. Is uh, the different types of zones and districts that we can open up. It is completely absurd to say we can't create something like the Business Improvement District, like Riviera Village. Or a zone or a retail only zone. If you go to Sacramento. If you go to Santa Monica, they have multiple zones and multiple districts and they overlay each other. And we, uh, Santa Monica has one just for retails, retail, retailers. So I'd love to see a report on zones and districts and different types because we're, we're naming all these business improvement districts. They how impossible they are to to open up. But other cities have done it and we can do it as well. We have one here in in South Redondo. It's a great opportunity. So when we come back with this, I think if you guys come back to us. Uh, with the different types of zones and districts that we can open up, focusing just on retailers, if you want to bring those out. Um, you know, parking districts, i- if, if we're going to relax on the parking requirements. Uh, you know, we, we have current parking there. How does that, uh, how do we monetize that? We're going to be bringing money in. So, um, you know, that brings to the leadership aspect of it and and that is, you know, one thing I've heard is. Just to get the city out of the way, let the businesses move things forward in a, in a positive way. Um, you know, business owners just want to be, when they file a permit or want to move something forward, they just want to move that forward. So the less restrictions we have on them, the easier it makes for them to move forward, the less work it is for us. So, uh, whatever that takes to to move that process forward is is what we need to concentrate on 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 these reports. So. Um, I would say when we come back with these reports here, and I'm definitely not in favor tonight of passing this. Uh, is to come back with a greater parking flexibility report, the different zones and districts that we can, we have options. Um, that the businesses can can move forward on. We have seed money that we could use. Um, uh, different types of art districts or art, uh, what Councilmember Lowenstein was talking about. Uh, that we can really move forward on. I I will forward in a Sacramento uh, improvement. Plan that they have that that I found was excellent, which includes heat maps and corners and arts and things like that. That's. They've been leading the way and of course, the Business Improvement District paid for that and has moved that forward. So those are the things that I would be moving, uh, I would want to see moving forward. But I mean, otherwise, um, Brandy, I watched the. Uh, the Planning Commission meeting back in September at eleven thirty, eleven forty five at night. It was quite painful and I want to thank you for taking the planning commissioners. Long thoughts and ideas and boiling down into a sentence or two that they couldn't figure out. You did a fantastic job on that. So.
Thank you.
It was late. I saw it. It was, it was impressive. Um, so good work on that. So I, I mean, I think we still got a long way to go on this document. And, but I definitely do not think we should wait until Galleria is finished. That's a long time from now. The gallery is a completely, as Councilman Horace said, a completely different animal. People that go to the South Bay Galleria is going to be for a, a whole different world. Versus Artesia Boulevard, which is a neighborhood style. We need to focus in on the neighborhood. On walking, on bike ability to to get there, not, not street parking. And if we're going to. Uh, relax our parking standards, we should have uh, more uh, bike parking and uh, you know, mobility like like that. Uh, installed. So those are my comments on 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 that.
Okay, Joe, you had a comment? City Manager Joe Hafkin?
You're on mute, Joe. There you go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of comments, a lot of direction to staff in terms of items to bring back. What we had identified was as an option, and clearly that's not going to work, to continue the public hearing and bring it back next week. We can't make meaningful progress on these items next week. About the only thing we could do next week would be to continue the public hearing. And bring back a list of the items for some future date for a public hearing. And I know you haven't heard from the public yet, but I just wanted to throw that out there as. Possibly an option that we will come back next week, uh, having taken into account the direction you've given us tonight. And bring back kind of a menu of items for follow up reports and uh, follow up uh, public hearing.
Okay, well then let's, um, it sounds like a good idea. And speaking of the public, why don't we go to the public now? Um, Eleanor, do we have uh, anybody left to comment on this?
Yeah, we have two, uh, let's see, two people from the public. Okay, so.
Great.
Is Zane Obaji Junior and I think you're on.
All right. Uh, thank you. Um, I was, I was sitting here a little aggravated until I heard Councilmember Lowenstein speak and then I. Sit up and yelled hallelujah because he's spot on relative to, um, this being more like Bran-. Brand Avenue in Glendale. By the way, if we're going to rename it, we should name it Bill Brand Avenue because obviously he's the greatest mayor ever. But, um, so. Looking at the activity nodes that we see on page, uh, forty seven of the PDF. That's where I'd say we, if we want restaurants and we do want restaurants, I live a few blocks uh, from here on Rockefeller. Um, we'd love good outdoor restaurants here that we could eat at during the COVID era. But we should really concentrate on getting restaurants into clusters. And once we get them into clusters, I agree exactly, um, restaurant after restaurant after restaurant. Everything else will come. Um, I'm a lawyer. I've got a law firm down in downtown LA. I would love to have my law firm right here on Artesia. Why can't I bring them here? Well, there's no suitable office, right? That's professional. Second, where am I going to take my team for lunch if we do convene back in an office? Where can we go for happy hour? Nowhere here. All right. And certainly not during COVID. And we don't have to wait for this plan to come back. For example, there's Yanagi here on McKay in Artesia. That's a great restaurant. But they're not open for outdoor dining. Yet everybody down in the village is. Why haven't we gotten Yanagi to have outdoor seating? Tell them, hey, we'll work with you. We'll help you. We'll help you expand that totally empty parking lot you've got outside your place so that you can, you can be a restaurant that's thriving here. Let's start there. I agree. Art will bring people to this area. Art will make the place. Um, so, yeah, let's really target restaurants however we can. If it's a, it's a holiday on sales tax for a year. Let's do it. Uh, and and then let's think about this parking issue. I totally agree. We don't need more parking there. Um, I I saw that parking lot, that new parking lot you guys built for seven hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, it had some cars in it, but guess what? Didn't. Artesia Boulevard, all those meters were empty. Okay, Saxon City, if I ever want to stop there to go on my way out to downtown to pick up something. There's all this parking on the street. Y'all, y'all got to smack yourselves on the hand for building that seven hundred thousand dollar parking lot. Totally unnecessary. All right? Um, but I I think there's some good ideas here. Also, if we want walkability, don't just think about storefronts. You know, these palm trees provide absolutely no shade value. The city of LA recognized it. Give the property owners some incentive. If they're going to be doing redevelopment, replace those trees with something that actually reduce heat island effect. So the streets are more walkable. The pavement on a hot day is not shooting up heat. All right, um, that's about it. But they, obviously the ideas with the bike lane, a little buffer between the street and the pedestrians. Sounds great, especially because the cars fly down there. Um, but uh, staff, keep up, do great work on this.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Mr. Obaji. Next, Eleanor.
Okay, Christopher Maloney. Okay, there you go, Christopher.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Chris Maloney. I uh, live in the North Carolina area. Um, I see this as a, as a corridor. Most of my experience on Artesia is driving through the area to get to the four or five and get to where I'm going. Um, but one on the opposite end is the beach and a lot of people. Uh, would love to ride their bike to and from uh, the beach, uh, including. Areas that are east of here in Longdale and Torrance and those areas. They, um, so one of my big things is to. Uh, increase the bike lane and bike accessibility on the thoroughfare. And by doing so, uh, you'll get a couple uh, benefits. One is you'll, you'll have people going through slower. I think a lot of people that go through the Artesia corridor. Are getting to wherever they're going and they're not slowing down. The restaurants are great. Um. They just need to have a little bit like slower traffic going through to try them. I feel like. Um, all, all the parking issues that you guys are working on are are good ideas. Um, but a, a lot of this is. Getting people to slow down on Artesia and realize what is there because there's a lot of good businesses and good. Restaurants. And I think the best way to do that is to increase uh, bike accessibility with bike lanes. And I think the best way to do that is to increase, uh, bike accessibility with bike lanes. One idea, um, that they've done in other cities is to, you wouldn't have to change the median, is to. Take out the parking on one side and you, um, have at least, uh, ten feet, I think is the minimum. To have a two-way bike lane on one side. And then you'd have safe, uh, you have a plastic barrier or some kind of barrier. Um, that wouldn't require any big infrastructure construction. It's called a cyclocross and you'd be able to have two-way. Bike lane on one area with, without having any major construction. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, Osborne. Kay Holly?
Yeah, I, I just had to jump in because I heard somebody criticize you for your parking lot. Um, this isn't a good time to evaluate the parking lot because of COVID. And I'm just gonna tell you that Ben Allen has his office across the street. And before all COVID started and I would go down there and chew him out for whatever awful things he voted on or chew his staff out. The parking lot behind his building is jammed, jammed, jammed. Okay, during the day and I would have to add an extra five minutes just to drive up and down the streets. Like behind his office to find a space. If the parking lot had been there. I could have just parked and walked across the street to chew him out. And we're all going to be going over to Ben Allen to chew him out. As soon as this pandemic, um, stops, um. Anyway, so I just had to make that point. But that other guy you said about the, the trees, that's, uh, providing shade. Um, I don't, I, that's really, really important. So I just agree with that. And I have one more three wild idea. You guys keep talking about art. If you have any empty stores there right now where maybe the owner would rent it for really cheap, could you get? Different kind of cutesy, crafty artists in there or maybe three months at a time? That, that really do unique stuff. Cause I'm thinking of the kind of stores I go to when I go to a place. Like Solvang or San Antonio or something like that. That's just a wild idea. I'm gonna shut up.
You don't have to shut up, Paulie.
You don't have to shut up. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Any more public comments, Eleanor?
Uh, not on Zoom, but we have, um, a couple, public comment on, um. Uh, e-comment, excuse me. Go ahead, Vicki.
Thank you. Uh, Peter Aziz, uh, submits, I think this is a phenomenal idea moving forward and commend the planning director for doing a great job. I would encourage the council and staff to consider rezoning laws, particularly so that we should encourage pedestrian culture. A restaurant shouldn't have any need to consider fifty-seven parking spots, especially if we are producing a move forward for a pally. Furthermore, to the mayor's point for a BID, a great idea, but we don't have the affluence in North Redondo that South Redondo has. Namely, the quality of restaurants is mainly because of the number of restaurants that are there. Hence why reconsidering changing the zoning charter to bypass the parking requirements for it. We can certainly have the BID, but the pay threshold doesn't hold out. Because that burden is placed on the business that cannot afford to buy in. Or afford the, the buy-in. Expand the opportunity for restaurants by rezoning, similarly to the beauty colleges, et cetera. I can assist in the art and culture by providing writing grants for the council for arts. But as mentioned, it's ultimately expanding the businesses. It comes back to how we pay for it or how, how to do. We pay for it, is how it reads. But totally in support, now after thirty years of living here. I'm glad to see the focus on North Redondo. Vote no on Prop fifteen and encourage blight fees. And that concludes the comments. I'm gonna refresh my screen really quick because it's been this way for a bit. And no, no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Vicki. Um, uh, Councilmember MD.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, continue the public hearing with, wait a minute, let me get this. I've got it. With, uh, cost estimates, sense of scale, and what I would like to see is I'd like the idea of. As little as just doing a couple blocks at a time or doing the entire Boulevard, kind of in that range. And, um, with the idea that, yeah, with the activity nodes and then, um. Possibly stages, but I think I got cocked out, talked out of that. So that's, uh, and that. Timeframe would be when you guys can get that all together, but not too long.
And just to be clear, do you mean the, Sean, maybe if you could put up the. Recommendations that we had the next steps or are those three points what you want us to come back with cost estimates on?
I'm waiting for Sean to put it up.
Yeah, Sean, are you able to put that up?
Yeah, let me pull that up.
Second to last, second to last slide.
This one here, right?
Yeah. So are those, those three things?
Right.
Okay.
And, uh, but in, in then, in addition to, you know, the, well, you've got the cost estimates, but, uh. And, and, and the, and when we talk about sense of scale, as little as just doing the blocks and activity nodes to the entire block.
Okay.
And I think you have a lot of comments to go off of. I think we were all in agreement with a lot of them, so.
And we also, we also look at bringing, you know, back ideas about what other cities have done and. Ideas for art and things like that as well too, or should that just be part of whatever the staffs could present?
Well, I think it should be part of it. I think that was kind of presented in the, I'm willing to add it. It, it's just I think they've already kind of done that, but.
I, I didn't see any examples of, of what other cities have done. Where, where was that in the presentation?
Well, I know that when we first started doing these meetings, people, they showed examples to everybody that was there on that, but. I don't know, staff, what do you guys think?
Yeah, if you wanna add that to the motion, it would be helpful. I'd add it and we'll, we'll try to bring some examples back that we think might be relative. Um. And, and to Joe's point earlier, it, I think we, we will need you to, as part of the motion, continue the public hearing to a specific date. So we, we don't have to renotice everything. So I'm, I'm.
Well, what, 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 uh, how much time do you need?
Um, Sean, Brandy, in terms of cost estimation for the environmental products, that's gonna take several weeks to obtain, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I.
I mean, the scope is the tricky part. Uh. Yeah, to your point, Mike.
Yeah.
So, so, so is it maybe the mid-month meeting in November, November tenth? Is that a good date to continue the public hearing too?
I, I, I was kinda thinking, Joe, maybe the second meeting in December, the eighth.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
All right, I will, uh, so the, make a motion to continue the public hearing to December eighth with staff coming back with all that we just listed.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Anybody listening in? Okay, oh, oh, uh, Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember MD.
Aye. And, uh, you know, I'm the timekeeper. It's, uh, it's ten, uh.
Well, I was gonna do that. So what are we gonna cover? We got a lot of stuff we're not gonna get to. So maybe we should ask Joe what'll go fast or whatever you wanna cover. I don't know.
Well, from a, from a standpoint of things that we really would like to get some direction and action on tonight, I would say, uh, N-one for sure. Your discussion of the CDBG CARES Act is something we would like to deal with tonight. P-one is important from a standpoint of identifying an item that has some urgency. It was a quick referral for tonight. Um, it would really be council's call on your other items, whether you really wanna put the time in tonight. The remaining items, we don't have any, uh, specific action asked for as part of the COVID update. Um.
So you wanna get direction on N-one and P-one?
N-one and P-one at a minimum, yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, there are, there are people attending, uh, here for P-three, just so you know. I've been there for most of the night.
Very well. Uh, that could take a while. I don't know. It's up to you guys. What do you wanna do?
I, I'd be good with just doing N-one and P-one.
Well, somebody make a motion so we can get a.
I'll make a motion to, uh, go, uh, move forward with items, uh, uh, N, uh, N-one. Uh, city manager items and, uh, P-one and mayor recount, mayor and council referral to staff. And to, uh, yeah, that's it.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Um, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember MD.
I'll say aye with an apology to all the people that are, been waiting for P-three. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I have to apologize too. Um, I didn't know this was gonna go this late. But, um, we could see a lot of discussion for P-three as well, so.
And that'll be moved to the October thirteenth, just so that the public knows.
Okay. Well, there you have it. So next up then is N-one discussion and possible action regarding a CDBG CARES Act. Entitlement for Redondo Beach in the amount of four hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars. John LaRocque.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council of John LaRocque Community Services Department. Uh, as noted at your September twenty-second meeting, the Office of Housing and Urban Development transmitted a notice to the city. Notifying us of an allocation as part of the CDBG CV Round Three CARES Act. The city is authorized for up to four hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars for pandemic response allocations. That are eligible under the CDBG guidelines. This funding is in addition to the one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars. That the city council allocated to local agencies and the city's efforts to prepare for and respond to the coronavirus in June. Eligible expenses for the CDBG funding include health and medical services and facilities to test, treat. And in the future, hopefully provide inoculation services to the public. Emergency housing or shelters for people experiencing homelessness, including the conversion of existing commercial structures. Economic support to small businesses impacted by the pandemic. And up to twenty percent available to support administrative expenses in allocating the funding. And performing all the required HUD audits and monitoring. Um, staff is recommending that at least ten percent of the grant funds be allocated for administrative funding. Uh, which would largely be carried out by community services staff and our CDBG consultant. Uh, as a reminder, we annually allocate fifteen percent of the normal CDBG funding for administrative costs. The round three CDBG funding can cover eligible pandemic-related costs. That were incurred as of January twenty-first of this year. Therefore, staff recommends allocating at least a minimum of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. To offset an equal allocation made from the city's coronavirus relief funds for small business relief. Thereby allowing the full sum of the city's eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-four CRF funding. Available to defray the city's direct expenses responding to the pandemic. And as was noted at your September twenty-second meeting, the city is due to well exceed, uh, that funding reimbursement amount from the, from the government. Based on its costs. Following directions from city council tonight regarding the allocation of the round three funding. A public hearing would be held at an upcoming meeting to update the city's CDBG annual action plan and our consolidated plan. So we can add the CARES funding allocation plan and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Well, my first question, John, is are you looking for a specific recommendation on how to spend this money tonight?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, um. I'll let, uh, City Attorney Webb, uh, Assistant City Manager Wazansky and perhaps Councilmember Horvath chime in. We've been doing some background work with LA County specific to the opportunity presented for the concept of a shelter facility in the city. Um, as we've costed that project out, uh, the, the county has made it clear that they are looking for some level of cash, uh, investment from the city. And as, as an eligible expense, up to three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, of this funding could be allocated to that shelter program to make it move forward if that was the council's direction. Um, you would then, as I've mentioned earlier, be able to allocate up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars to support small business activities. And then we would have roughly forty to forty-five thousand dollars remaining for administrative cost support or another allocation should you direct that.
Okay, got it. Um, so, um, hmm, okay, um. First hand up, I guess, is John Grant, Councilmember Grant.
Sure. So I just wanted to, to point out that when we originally looked at the, the funds to fund the grants that we were talking about. Um, we were using the funds that were supposed to go back and kind of pay back the city's general fund and, and things that were, were COVID related. What we saw then is that through these funds, I think Mike Wazansky, we were talking about this, looking at. Potentially having this fund be able to support that hundred and ten thousand dollars we've allocated for those grant programs. It sounds like it's indeed exactly what we can use it for. I think that's a.
Ability of small businesses under the CDBG guidelines is more strict than the PPE or the city CRE funding. So there's some equivalence to the amount of money allocated to a small business and a low-income. Salary basis if the, if they choose to do that route or materials related to COVID. So. There is a, a, a more stringent qualifications beyond the existing. Application set that you have attached to your staff report tonight, provided by Financial Services Department. So we would have to revise those. And it may be that some businesses that were originally eligible under the CRE funding. May through duplication of benefits reason or the lack of low-income employees may not be eligible under the CDBG. But we can certainly bring that back on a case-by-case basis if there becomes a preponderance of people or businesses who are ineligible.
Yeah, and, and to add on to that, consistent with the commentary we had at the last discussion. I think any, any of the hundred and ten thousand dollars that has been spent per prior direction that does meet the CDBG eligibility criteria, we would ask. That on a policy basis, you, you direct those funds to this source. Where we fall short of that, of course, we would. Make and meet our commitments to the businesses through our prior source of funds. And then clearly whatever is left over in the CDBG program is yours to, uh, decide what to do with. Palette is now clearly under the evaluation and eligible expense if that is, uh, the desire of the council.
Well, it'd certainly be nice to get some money to some low-income employees who have been impacted by this, that's for sure. Through, uh, through the businesses. Um, okay, uh, Councilmember Horvath.
Um, yeah, I, I, I would, uh, make a motion that we do exactly what Mike just said is that we, uh, we provide direction to. Uh, where possible, uh, allocate the funds that we have set aside already for, uh, business. Businesses as a part of the CARES Act to the CDBG funds. And, uh, and that we set aside, uh, three hundred thousand dollars from, uh, those funds as well, uh. For, uh, potential use with the palette, uh, program depending on, uh, the conversation that we have at a future meeting.
I'll second.
Uh, if that money for some reason does not get used, is there a timeframe on this that we have to use it by?
We actually have the, the period of five years, uh, to allocate the funding. You have to have eighty percent of it allocated after the third, which is the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal cycle. So you have some time.
Okay, Councilmember Narenheim.
Right, okay, so. We are just basically staying right now. We're doing a stopgap for now. Uh, we're not a stopgap. We are. Doing a straw, we're not a straw poll. We're just saying, hey, listen, we're gonna take certain amount of money. Uh, for the palette housing, which could change. Uh, we don't know how much we need for that right now, but that's the maximum amount we, we wanna put in there. I'm not comfortable with that full three hundred thousand. That's a lot of money. Uh, basically it's a one-time deal, right? I mean, this is, this is not, uh, it's three hundred thousand dollars per year we'd have moving forward. Or is it just one?
Senator Narenheim, we are currently, uh, speaking to the county on a one-year budget or rather a thirteen-month. Budget for a start and stop of the palette shelter program. If it's to continue, that is obviously first a policy decision and then a subsequent funding decision, whether that's future measure H. Future CDBG or a number of combination of fund sources.
Okay, um. So that, that's, we're just doing a, uh, overall thought process as to how we wanna, might, might wanna divvy these things up. We're just kinda. Setting things aside. Um, and then the remaining money, uh, cause. It, the hundred and nineteen, hundred and ten thousand dollars that we've already put. Allocated, we're gonna direct those to these CDBG funds, correct?
You are buying that allocation from the city's general fund relief monies. Buying that back by using the CDBG funds for small businesses, yes.
Which still gives us the ability from the other fund to continue to, to reinvest into some of these small businesses that, um, if we, if we want to and need to. For instance. Um. um, you know, the, the Riviera Village, they, they, uh, with these garden dining, uh, parklets, uh, they're gonna need to do a lot of work to get them up to speed for the winter session. So, uh, they're gonna need some help on, on that, and that's all COVID-related. So, uh, we're gonna look, I'm, I'd like to, so we could use the original funding for that, or we could use this funding as well, correct?
Correct. And, and remember, one of the, the goals with this transfer, if you will, of sources is to try to create flexibility for potential general fund, uh, naturally reimbursed expenses to alleviate any pressures in our own budget. But you're, to answer your question more directly, yes, how you choose to spend that money once relieved and transferred to this fund, uh, could be redirected to supplemental works in the village, or you could spend more of theoretically the CDBG money, um, uh, in that, in that fashion.
Okay. And I also see here, um, using existing facilities such as coronavirus vaccine distribution location, that's gonna be huge. Once we get a vaccine, we're gonna wanna be able to get um, these out there as fast as possible. I think it's the Beach Cities Health District responsibility, but they're, they're looking for us for leadership versus the other way around, so, um. And, and we're not spending this money, we're just kinda partitioning things up right now. Okay, uh, I'm fine for that for now.
Okay. Well, there's a motion in a second. Um, I'll do a roll call, or any public comment, sorry.
We may wanna restate the motion, just so we're all clear.
Mayor, can you restate it, Chris?
Yeah, the motion was, uh, to, uh, to do exactly what Mike had, uh, had recommended, which was, uh, take the hundred and ten thousand or whatever the amount was, uh, and see specifically what was, uh, um, what was available to shift over to the CDBG funding, uh, and, and allot it as such, and then set aside three hundred thousand dollars for the future pallet shelter conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, that still leaves us with, uh, was it hun- three hundred, it's four hundred and ten, that still leaves us with roughly forty-three thousand dollars left.
Correct, Councilmember, as well as you have forty thousand dollars of unallocated business assistance of that one hundred and ten figure. Because you had allocated fifty to the RBA, twenty to Artigia Aviation, and then forty was citywide.
Right, but that's hundred and ten, so hundred and ten plus three hundred is, is, is four ten, right? And then, but that, the, the total we have is four fifty-three.
Yeah, you have, you have forty-three thousand, four eighty-one unallocated in the current motion. And that is just, that is just under the ten percent servicing percentage that staff is recommending for our auditing of this, which is going to be extensive across potentially dozens of businesses and other service providers in the city.
Which in effect is a, is a backup to the general fund, or, or, or paying back to the general fund.
Well, it's two separate things, so, so.
Really, we're paying for administration of it.
Yeah, right. These specific CDBG funds allow for, uh, up to, I think it's actually, don't the guidelines allow for up as much as twenty percent, John?
It is twenty percent, but we lowered that because that's.
We lowered that. John's done an assessment of what, how, how much money he thinks would be appropriate to reimburse our time and energy in administering the program. You don't have to spend it that way. It does not have to support administrative staff time as a reimbursement to the division. You could spend it for other more direct programmatic elements. The motion clearly uh, has left that money, uh, at least on a broad policy basis, uh, unencumbered.
And I will add to Assistant City Manager's comments that the funding, the, the ten percent is not largely to reimburse the city's administrative costs. It is to fund the addition by the CDBG consultant, who will be doing all of the onsite audit work with these businesses. That will be billed to us regardless of whether we set aside money for it or not. So we will have to pay for it somehow.
Right, that's key.
Percentage to pay for it.
All right, that's key. So we should probably throw that in the motion, right?
I mean, that would be our recommendation. That would be our preference.
Let, let's, let's amend the current motion to have, uh, the remainder of the money uh, set aside for administrative costs to cover, um, uh, the administrative work.
That would be a friendly amendment.
Accepted.
And Mayor, I know I was muted, so there are no, um, Zoom for public or ecomments for the record.
Okay, so there's an amendment with an accepted friendly amendment by the motion maker. Is there an acceptance from the second? Todd, seconders.
I was the second or was Laura the second?
I gave it to you.
And then, yes, if, if I was the second, yes, I will accept that, uh, amendment. Thank you.
All right, well, then we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Longstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember MD.
Aye.
Okay, um, we don't need to read anything, right, Eleanor?
No, Mayor, not on this one.
Great, um. So next up is P one, discussion and direction to staff, staff regarding it's, excuse me, consideration of an amendment to, uh, Article seventeen, Chapter seven, Title III, municipal code to streamline the process and waiver fees for the preferential parking application of permits if needed in response to a nearby nuisance. So, uh, I guess this is, uh, gonna be led by, uh, Councilmember Grant or Joe or who?
Well, it, it would be me, but I, I would, um, this may be the surest report ever. Uh, I'll turn it over to Councilman Grant. Um, it's in essence dealing with the, um, uh, the, uh, church, the, the pot church, um, and the, um, impact on the neighborhoods because the criminal courts have basically shut down. So the city received its first anonymous complaint, I believe, in October. Last year, we filed a criminal case in November of last year. But with COVID, it essentially shut the courts down, and the impacts on the community have been great. With courts getting back a little more to normal, we had our first, um, hearing that, uh, Councilmember Grant referenced earlier, uh, and Joy Abakin, who's joining us now, um, appeared. And we've been trying a lot of different strategies while criminal court wasn't functioning to try and address the impacts on the community, most of which I can't mention to you now because they're still ongoing. Uh, and they're, um, not a topic for, uh, discussion at the council meeting, although we'll let you know when they conclude. Uh, but we received a message from one of the, um, um, leaders of the neighborhood group that we've been dealing with, and, uh, he said that they decided not to, uh, uh, pursue this any further. There's always been a dispute between the, or, or disagreement whether the neighbors wanted it. And they believe that now the criminal court, and many of them were in court along with Councilmember Grant, watching, um, Joy argue the motion. We got four conditions of, of, uh, OR release, and the judge is considering two more. So I don't know, Councilmember Grant, since you made the referral, if, if you want to take this off calendar and revisit it as things.
Actually, I would say this. So, um, there's a, um, an issue in one of the neighborhoods that's on Clark and Stanford, and it's right, right off of our, uh, Aviation Boulevard. And because of this issue, the neighbors have been looking at ways to, to try to make the, the the entity that we're dealing with, um, as uncomfortable as possible. And so they were, they do call, uh, the police and code enforcement and parking enforcement as much as possible. And what we, we offered them is to, if we can, be able to put in another block worth of parking permits on the, I think it's the fourteen-hundred block. And there's already a parking permit on the thirteen-hundred block. They didn't wanna pay for that, they didn't feel like they should pay for it, but they wanted to have that in their, their hands. When we went out and talked with them, they were kind of, well, let's just see if this goes along. Here's what I would suggest. This actually is a pretty good change to our municipal code, so that if this happens in other places in our city, we can enact this and, and have this ability to, uh, to, to essentially waive fees for this parking fee. And it's fifteen, fifteen dollars per household per, per year. It's pretty much what it is. It's more of a, a administrative fee that we pay. But it's the principle of it, that we wanted to be able to say, look, we've got this issue, it's deemed a nuisance, or it's deemed a whatever it is, that we can then deal with this. And this is a nice tool that I think we as a city council member, but especially Joy being able to do and use, and at least bring up as something that, uh, something we can use. Um, I, I was a little shocked, you know, we kinda went through a number of hoops and spoke with them a number of times. They were very out of and about that this is what they want. When we finally get it to that point and they say they don't want it, it's like, okay, well, it kinda said, we kinda don't want it right now, we wanna see what Joy can do. I'm, I'm confident Joy's gonna be able to, to deal with this issue. But I do think that this is probably gonna come back at some point. So I, I would say, suggest, and, and I, I would make the motion to say, I think that we should accept this municipal code change, uh, per recommendation, have it go through, and we, we put it in place for right now. And that, that would be my motion.
Well, wait, before you make the motion, we need a little direction. Uh, there are many different ways you could do it. Um, uh, I, what I was thinking, but it could be different, would be that you would authorize, and I haven't spoken to him, so, but you'd authorize the city manager or designee uh, to issue, um, both the permit and the, um, waiver fees for up to a year. Um, and that any subsequent, um, extension without, uh, with a fee waiver would have to go to the council. And that way it would enable this, if it, I, I don't envision this happening again, cause I don't envision criminal court shutting down. But it could, you know, i- if we have, as you mentioned earlier, as Councilman Longstein mentioned, if we have, as we go into the winter months, we start seeing, you know, the instance of COVID increasing, it could happen again. And the quickest way would be if the city manager, designee, if, uh, there's a nearby nuisance causing the need for the parking, could issue parking for up to a year with a fee waiver, and then any subsequent fee waiver would have to go to the council. Uh, that.
You're tired of sunsetting it, basically, Mike, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's different from, cause you, you, you don't wanna treat it different from everybody who pays for the fees. And it means the city isn't getting reimbursed for the process of the fees, but if it's being caused by a nuisance somewhere else, uh, this is the quickest way without the neighbors having to pay for something they might, may not need in the long run. Um, so it gives us more flexibility. So I just throw that out there, but however you wanna set it up, whether you want the council always have to do it, whether you don't wanna have a fee waiver, um, the quickest way would be city manager, his designee, he'll know because someone who works for him, the police or the code enforcement, has determined there is an active nuisance, and there appears to be, um, um, your resident complaints, and that would give him the ability to issue that permit, um, without going through the, the full process, without going through the commission. Um, I wouldn't suggest we, we get rid of the, uh, petition because if there is part of this, you, you need to know if, if it's just a couple people want it, or if it's the majority of neighbors before you put in permit parking.
And we'll find out when some neighbors get some tickets, cause they don't have permits.
Yeah, you know, one of the things we did, we put out a full-time, um, camera out there to observe the, the parking in addition to the increased, uh, uh, traffic enforcement. And some of the neighbors were the people who
Right.
got parking tickets.
Yep.
I would make.
And they're afraid of that. Well.
I, I would make the motion for the simple version of that, what, uh, Mike just described, uh, is a, a one-year um, thing at, at, uh, the city manager's discretion, and an agent of the, the city manager would be able to do so.
Yeah, it would be front-ended, and only you would be, the council would be able to extend it.
And I, I, I appreciate that we would still have the petition process, so we're not in a position of forcing something uh, on the residents that they may or may not want. So thank you, Mike, for saying keep the petition process in place.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Uh, no public comment, no e-comment.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I second, I second it.
Oh, okay. All right, let's see, hands up, there's a motion in a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Narenheim.
Aye.
Councilmember Longstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath.
Aye.
Councilmember Grant.
Aye.
And Councilmember MD.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And, uh, Joy, this will be, at least we can say we got this done for him, right? Thank you very much for all your hard work. It's really great to watch you work, so, thanks.
Do you have to, uh, read anything, Eleanor?
No, not on this one, Mayor.
Uh, any referrals to staff from the mayor and council, or any other, uh, items, Joe, that you wanted to cover with us?
No, I think we're covered the items that were in your motion.
Okay. Any, um, directions to staff? Councilmember Narenheim.
I do not, no.
Councilmember Longstein.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Horvath.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
No, thank you.
Councilmember MD.
No, thank you.
I have, uh, uh, one quick thing. I get a complaint from a couple of neighbors, actually, about the darkness of the stairs coming up from the, the walk path at Espinon, uh, really from Nob Hill. So there's some stairs that go down from Nob Hill down to that little walk path. It's city property, and it's very dark, and people go down there in the morning and they can't see. And uh, I was just wondering if we could put some reflective tape down there, Joe, or have the city go down there and look at it, see what they could do. It's very, very dark there, and people walk down the stairs, and I guess some people have tripped, and, and they just wanna have something, you know, lighting, which I don't think is gonna work, but maybe even just some reflective, uh, tape or something on those stairs.
Yeah, let, let us look at it. We'll have the Public Works City Engineer go check it out and do what we can.
Yeah, it's the stairs dri- straight down from Nob Hill going down to our beach walk path. And the last thing, is the Reed apron coming back to us next meeting?
I didn't hear, you broke up.
I'm sorry, is, is the apron, uh, replacing the apron for the Reed, is that coming back soon?
Oh, uh, I don't know if Mike Webb, if he, uh, knows the answer to that, if we're looking at, if we've got that calendared yet, I, I'm not sure myself when that's coming back.
Mike's still there? Mike Webb, is that, is that Reed, uh, apron coming back to us anytime soon? I hope.
Well, I'll have my, I'll have my staff meeting tomorrow, and we'll, uh, sort through that.
Okay, it's been a long time, and they're asking. Anyway, um, since there's, uh, I guess that's it, hang on one second, let me get back to my agenda here. Uh, important that we adjourn properly tonight, because we have some important memory of adjourn, adjournments, excuse me, some reason I lost my agenda. I'm gonna have to load up again. Vanished.
I'm gonna read it.
Um, no, I get it, it's taking a second, just give me one second, it's hard. Hold it up right now. There it is. So, um, tonight we're adjourning, um, in memory of, um, excuse me. Gone already, amazing. Gone already. Let me see. Yeah, it sure is. City council agenda for tonight is off the, uh, well, anyway, um, can you read it then, Todd? Uh, we're, we're adjourning in memory of Pete Syracuse, who was a longtime vendor at our Thursday Farmer's Market down at, um, Veterans Park in George Frees Way. When I say longtime vendor, I mean thirty-five years since it opened. He passed suddenly. And also in honor of our, uh, executive, uh, assistant, Renee Chavez, her mom passed away. What's her first name, uh?
Carrie Chavez.
Carrie.
Carrie.
All right?
Carrie, yeah.
Carrie.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in honor of Carrie Chavez, so, uh, condolences to, to her family and to Pete Syracuse's family. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, the motion is second. Any objections? Okay, so ordered.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm done.
Good, good night, everybody.